It is 6:00 PM. This is the Londonderry Town Council meeting for Monday, December 8th, 2025. Everyone please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I won't public comment.
Good evening, Megan Donovan, 45 Chase Road. I'm here just to talk about the library real quickly. I realized that at the presentation of the budget for the library, Paul had some comments and questions, and so I just thought I'd share some information about libraries in general and what goes into some of the things that we do, just because I am a subject matter expert in this area. So, RSAs are how the library function. So, it's a statute-based organization. So, RSA 202-A is the chapter on public libraries. The declaration of policy, the very first thing, states, "Mindful that as the Constitution declares, knowledge and learning generally diffused through community are essential to the preservation of a free government." The legislation recognizes its duty to encourage the people of New Hampshire to extend their education during and beyond the years of formal education. To this end, it hereby declares that the public library is a valuable supplement to the formal education of, the formal system of free public education, and as such deserves adequate financial support from the government at all levels. Further, it's under 202-A colon five, under status, "Every public library shall remain forever free to the use of every resident of the town wherein it is located." Then, Leach Library specifically, the mission is, Leach Library's mission is to provide materials, information, and services for community residents of all ages to meet their personal education and recreational needs. This mission statement has been in effect for at least the last 20 years. That's the first time I've seen it in print anywhere, so I'm not sure where it really developed, but at least the last 20 years. So, that just being said, is the library is there to provide information and services to patrons of every level. I know Councilor Paul mentioned that there were some overlap between the Recreation Department and the Senior Center. I did a nice deep dive into that, and I didn't really see very many programs that did overlap, but there are a lot of collaboration between the two departments, the three departments in different levels, because we all serve a similar population, but different. In particular, programming, when professional librarians such as myself plan programming, it may look like a craft, a story, something fun, but what we're really doing is introducing fine motor skills, color theory, computational thinking, critical thinking, socialization, collaboration, pattern identification, spatial reasoning, gamification. We do community analysis before we even decide to do a program, to see what we're looking for. These are things that we do every day, every time we do a program. That is something that is taken into consideration. They are well thought out, and they are detail-oriented. And these are things we share, we communicate, we communicate with departments, we communicate with other librarians, and that's just really one of the reasons why our programs are such a success at Leach Library, because we do take those details into consideration. And just to sum, that basically is the fundamental reasoning behind the library is free service for all, for the public library. So, it wouldn't necessarily be appropriate to charge for attending a program. It's not a fee-based service, like other departments maybe. It is free, it's educational, recreational, but it sparks creativity, it sparks learning, sparks interest. I am the teen librarian, as well as head of Circulation Services, and I spark interest with teens, which is very, very difficult. Any day you walk into the library after school, you'll see different groups playing chess, reading the newspaper, playing other games like Shut the Box, which deals a lot with on-the-spot math, very quick thinking, and these are things that the teens have free access to. You have seniors reading papers next to other students doing their homework. The library is thriving as a community place, but we can only do that if it's fully funded. And I just want to share just some of those vital things that the library does offer and the reasoning behind that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan.
Anybody else have a public comment?
Good evening, sir.
Hello.
I have a little bit of a statement. You know, here in Londonderry, we've always been considered a leader in the state. We'd always say things like, "Londonderry leads the way." In recent times, the nature of public comment has shifted noticeably. What was once a space for constructive dialogue has become an outlet for repeat grievances rather than collaborative problem solving. Public comment now appears to be a format for the same group of individuals to complain while offering no ideas or solutions. This change in atmosphere not only dampens the spirit of collaboration, but also risks alienating those who genuinely wish to contribute positively. When participation is dominated by criticism without constructive input, it becomes challenging to maintain an innovative and forward-thinking culture, which is what Londonderry is known for. The public may now discuss unverified information about local residents and citizens. Being, myself being well-networked in the state, now others are questioning Londonderry's ability to continue to lead in new innovative solutions. One must ask themselves, what's changed? We have a great community. I have served for 26 years, and it has been an honor of a lifetime. In New Hampshire, we have a state motto, it's called "Live Free or Die." In the United States of America, we are afforded many rights of freedom. Many served and died protecting these rights. Sort of changing topics, seems that church, seems to be a discussion here, it keeps coming up at different times, and it's been mentioned multiple times. As someone who attended parochial school, I must remind some of the Ten Commandments. Specifically, I'd like to focus on the Eighth Commandment. You shall not bear false witness against your neighbor. So, what does that mean? When you look it up and when you see what it means is, it has broader moral ideas. Not lying about others, not spreading rumors or slander, not twisting facts to harm someone, being honest, fair in judgment. Do not harm others with falsehoods. Have truthfulness, justice, and trust in relationships. Chairman Dunn, I'd like to ask Councilor Bouchard a question, if you would allow me.
You can say it, but he doesn't have to respond.
Please share with me, who stated that I had committed a crime and signed an illegal land use change document for Woodmont Commons? Who told you I committed a crime, Dan? You accused me of it. Answer the question. So, you slandered me and defamed me in public, and you have no response and no information. You slandered me and defamed me in public, and this isn't the first time. You have nothing to say for yourself. You had plenty to say last week when I wasn't here. What do you got to say for yourself? Nothing. Maybe you should think about that when you're in church. Perhaps maybe what you need to do is really listen to the teachings of the church. Always remember, just because they're the loudest, doesn't mean they're the most. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a public comment?
Good evening. Christine Perez, 5 Wasley Drive. I'd like to take this opportunity to announce my intention to run for Town Council in the March 2026 election. I have kept abreast of the workings and changes in Londonderry for many years, and as you know, I have attended many Town Council meetings, Planning Board meetings, School Board meetings, and more. I have heard the very loud concerns of residents on multiple issues, as expressed in surveys, on social media, at Town Council meetings, and on the ballot. I will run this campaign like others, my others, with honesty and transparency. You will always know exactly where I stand on issues and why, as I will continue to do my research. I have no personal, professional, political, or financial agenda. I only hope to gain the trust of my constituents by listening and hearing exactly what they are saying and working with them for this great town. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Anybody else have a public comment?
Good evening, sir.
Hey, Glenn Douglas, 6 Little Gav. Two things, quick. I know there's an agenda item tonight to talk about ethics complaints. I had sent an email after the last ethics complaint against two councilors were read, and I basically said I thought it was very unprofessional that the subject of one complaint was read out loud in public, but the subject of the other complaint wasn't read out loud in public. And once you say something in public, you really can't take it back. I got the agenda, and I read the subject of the complaint against Councilor Paul, and the anonymous complaint system that the town put in when it first came in, I thought, this is bad. This is just going to open it for all kinds of anonymous posters, which we have incessantly on social media in Londonderry, pretending to be whoever. I don't really understand why the town spent more than about a minute and a half on that complaint, which you'll find out the subject later. That should have been dismissed right away, but it was allowed to stand. The complaint against Dan is out there and said he was being investigated by, I guess, DOJ or something, but there's been complaints filed against Councilor Paul, and now everyone that's out there in anonymous land gets, say, oh, there's another complaint filed against Councilor Paul. It wasn't an ethics complaint, it was anonymous. I think these complaints are now turning into retaliation against certain individuals who stand up, and in my opinion, are actually standing up for the voters in this town. That's the first one. Second one, Planning Board. You can't speak at a Planning Board meeting unless it's a public meeting, but certain Planning Board members like to say constantly that you're allowed to speak at a Planning Board meeting, but you really can't. I didn't go to the last Planning Board meeting, but apparently a lot of residents did. They were concerned about Woodmont. And bottom line in that one is, I think they can build whatever they can build based on the zoning, and we hear that constantly from certain Planning Board members and town councilors. But what those people don't say as a follow-up is, when you folks that are complaining 25 years ago moved into Londonderry and the buildable acre was one acre per house, you went away, you did your, you raised your kids, this and that, you didn't pay any attention to what's going on in town, you don't realize that over the past 15 or 20 years, all of those rules changed. Now you can jam 250 small houses in 64 acres, where 20 years ago, you could put 64 houses. Maybe if you were lucky, assuming there was no wetlands, so you probably could only do 50. So, I think it's a little bit disingenuous to say, they can do what they have, they have rights, which I absolutely agree they do, and they can do it. The problem is, the rules changed, and some people don't want to change the rules, as was brought up with several legislative items a couple of months ago, myself being one of them. The Town Council had zero interest in looking on what's going on in Concord. The Planning Board had zero interest in looking into what was going on in Concord. Quote, "We'll deal with it when it becomes law." So, that's all I have to say. You know, the rules changed, and most people don't have a clue until they get a notice from the Planning Board that says, hey, by the way, the rules kind of changed, and we can build a super Walmart next to what you thought was conservation land. Not that that's happening, but that's when people start paying attention, when it comes into their backyard, and they're like, what the heck is this? I just got a notice. Most people probably don't even know that these meetings happen on Monday night, but what happens here, changes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a public comment?
Good evening. How are you today?
Very good, thanks. Jan McLaughlin, 38 Rainbow Drive. I've been a resident in Londonderry for a long time, back when it was over an acre for house lots, and the climate in the town has changed. When we first came, the town was excited about the one traffic light that was on 102 just by Apple Tree Mall, and that was the only traffic light that you encountered getting off the highway. And now we come off, and there's eight lanes, and there's, you have to have direction as to which lane to be in, and all that other things. So, things change, and I understand we have growing, we have grown and things like that, and that's going to change. But what shouldn't change is how we treat each other. Back in the early days of our living in Londonderry, we went to town meeting, of course, town meeting was not, we weren't, there wasn't an SB2 option. We actually came and went to the meeting, and so it was whoever could last to the end maybe got their warrant articles through, but you came to the meetings and you talked. And we went to meetings and we talked. And we didn't always agree, but we were able to be kind to one another, to treat people with honor, to just fix on what we're talking about, not trying to make it personal, or make it hurt, or trying to disrupt the regular order of things. And I think that, especially in this time of the year, when many of us think of kindness, goodwill, peace toward men and women, that we should embrace that in how we treat one another. And I just look forward to that part of the Londonderry that seems to have gotten lost coming back. My kids, my son lives here, my daughter is off in Seattle and says, I'll never come back to Londonderry. She comes back to visit, but she's never going to live here. But my son lives here, and my grandkids are growing up here, and I want them to grow up in a town where people respect one another. We do a big thing about bullying in the schools. Well, forget about bullying in the schools, you get out of the schools and you get bullied. So, we need to change how we work with one another, honor each other. Everybody has an opinion, that's okay, but you can still be friends even if you disagree. The purpose is to drive Londonderry forward, to be an arrow pointing forward, not to be a whole bunch of arrows running around in different directions. So, please, I encourage everyone, not just, not just the folks here at this meeting, but I encourage everyone to think about what they're saying, or what they're planning on saying, and say, am I really honoring the people who I'm saying this against? Am I really honoring myself and my ideas by getting down and getting the mud out? I don't think we are. So, we have many houses and less green stuff, but we still have honor, and we still can treat one another with that. So, I hope that folks will consider that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Up next, we have boards and appointments and reappointments, and we have to make a correction from our last meeting. At the last meeting, we overlooked assigning terms to Planning Board alternates, and we need to clarify who was appointed to the one-year term and who's appointed the three-year term. To do that, I will accept a motion to appoint Jason Knights to the three-year term and as alternate to the Planning Board, and Ryan Olet to the one-year term alternate on the Planning Board.
So, moved.
Motion by Sean, second by Ted. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes affirmative. Up next, we have discussion to issue an order to expendable maintenance trust fund for winter maintenance. Mr. Wally.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Okay, so first, we have a request out of the Expendable Maintenance Trust Fund for the first installment of $18,000, and what we do is, in your packet, you should see the average usage for the previous five winter cycles, and so what we do is to pay the bills just a little bit more efficiently. We start off with an average of the allocation, and as the bills come in, we can pay them. And the invoices that you need or whatnot, we can always get them after the fact, but at least this way, it kind of expedites the payment process and doesn't require us coming before you, each time we get a bill. This is just for contracted plowing on the town facilities, that is. This has nothing to do with the street. This is general government request.
Dan has a question for you, sir.
Sure. Is this a seasonal contract that we have, one price for the season, or is it by the storm?
Yeah, it's for the season, it's the annual rate. Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I do.
Oh, good. I believe this is normally a bit earlier than you're used to asking for this money is, we don't usually get snow this year early in quite a while.
Well, yeah, I usually like to get this in place a little bit sooner before snow actually flies, but nonetheless, yeah.
How did we do in this past storm this past week?
Well, we're going to get into that with the presentation on the types of operations, but this is strictly to just pay the bills.
Okay. I guess the question is, what did this past Tuesday set us back for the, at least for the contractual part here?
For, I haven't received any invoices for this storm yet.
Okay.
But for the contractors anyway.
Okay.
So, but yeah, I can have those calculations when we get the bills in. So, this is usually, like you said, to get it in place that when those bills come in, we can. So, they'll provide us with the breakdowns of how many times they went to the sidewalks and treated the sidewalks, and then plowed and treated the parking lot, and so on and so forth. We actually had a black ice event on Monday of last week before we even got into the snow flying, so.
I'm just worried this could be a big winter potentially, so.
Well, yeah, I've been doing this 30 years, and you know, your guess is as good as mine. When we get into the slide, we'll talk a little bit about that, and what I've always liked to try to at least do as winter kicks off, is get the first storm right and the last storm right, because that's going to leave the impression of how the winter actually was, whether it was a success or not. And so far, I think we're off to a good start. We have some challenges, and we'll talk about that in a few minutes, but, and then most importantly, that no one gets hurt along the way, so.
Any other questions for Dave?
So, Dave, just want to clarify, it's the one price for the season, but it's per storm, right?
Well, yeah, it's not, if, it's not a flat rate.
It's not one for the entire season, it's one price per storm, but that price is for the entire season.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I thought it was.
Yeah, it's not like 10,000 whether or not we have a storm or not.
No.
Yeah, I thought it was like 20,000 for the whole season.
No, no.
Okay.
No.
So, you're going to buy the storm.
It's not, it's not a contract.
Basically buy the storm.
Correct. Yeah, it's by the event, per the piece.
Dan, if you look back in the historicals, every year varies, so it's not a consistent price every year.
Right.
Thank you.
A motion to approve Order 2025-17.
A motion from Ted.
Second.
Second from Dan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes affirmative.
All right, thank you. All right, we're going to move into this before we get into the next expendable trust, right? I have paper to hand out, so, sorry. I'm going to make your boss mad right off the bat. Come on.
Don't give it. Wow.
I will take a paper copy.
We do have a PowerPoint, too.
Thank you. Dave, I still like paper, so I'm good.
I appreciate it.
Little light reading.
Thank you.
By the bedlight, you know?
Why don't you give one to the budget chair?
We have the digital. Thank you.
Who's got the bit there?
All right. All right, so, yep, winter's already kicked off, so we're going to get into our winter emergency operation plan for this upcoming season. Just briefly, our organizational chart, you've seen this a few times already through budget presentations and what have you, but basically, the whole right side of that screen is everybody that's involved in the winter activity that we have in the winter months. This is exactly why we're out there right now, is we're trying to prevent this. Our mantra is red and blue follow yellow. I think police and fire have not finally understand that that's not, you know, we're first and we're most important, but as you've heard them, as they sit diligently behind me with a gun on their hip, don't want to make them mad, but no, in all seriousness, you know, this is just to remind our folks, our troops that are out there doing their job and the importance of it. We've heard a lot about police and fire and their response times and, you know, national standards that they have, and how minutes matter when they're responding to somebody having a stroke or a heart attack or whatnot, or in a serious motor vehicle accident, and it's important for us, because for every inch of snow that piles up out there, or ice gets in place before we get it treated, you know, bad things can happen, and their response times are impacted by that. So, it's important for us to have the right amount of resources that we have and use them the most responsible way possible to avoid situations such as the one on the screen here. And it's just a quick reminder that we are one of two states that are recognized as first responders, the public works employees and state workers as well. This started some time ago in 2003, and then through the years, as it went on, more and more recognition of our work came about, and so therefore, in 2019, I believe Governor Sununu, then 2022, rather, Governor Sununu formally recognized us as part of first responders. And so, you know, other than stating the obvious there about public safety, but there's other advantages to that higher level of service. Obviously, the big one, schools getting off. People don't, a lot of these things that I'm just going to kind of whip through real quickly, you know, you just don't give it much thought, but in all seriousness, if you have a good snow removal operation and run it well, you know, there's a lot of things that, if you're not doing it well, does have a huge impact on our town and the people that work here, whether it's commerce, you know, if school doesn't get off, there's a lot of people that that's a big challenge for, they got to quickly hurry up and find somebody to watch the kids, or pay somebody to watch the kids, and that's an expense, right? Or it may even mean that they miss a day of work, because they just don't have anybody to do that, and so that's an impact to them. Obviously, business slows down, deliveries don't arrive on time. This is an important time of year, right? Everybody's on Amazon and ordering everything, and we want to make sure it all gets here and without incident, so. But more importantly, all the other things, the wonderful things that go on in town, like concerts on the Common, excuse me, Christmas on the Common this past weekend, and gatherings, there's a lot of holiday parties, and so we want to make sure that we're doing the best job we can so that there's as least amount of impact to the town in our everyday lives. But really, like I said moments ago, it's really about public safety. That's the importance of why we're out there. We're not plowing to make sure the pizza delivery guy can get around and all those things. It's really all about public safety. And also, you know, a lot of things like people going on wellness checks and hospice care and things of that nature, there's a lot of other types of medical things that go on in town that isn't necessarily dealt with by an ambulance, and there's the pizza guy, so. So, as we get into this year, we're kind of in a tough spot, we've got some challenges, we've had some vacancies, we still currently kind of have two. There's all the boring statistics of what we got, but ideally, we'd like to get those other two positions. We've had some ongoing interviews that, we had some last week, and we had one as recently as today, so we're doing the best we can there to get those slots filled. Ideally, I want to continue to work towards an operation that doesn't have our supervisors in the plow trucks themselves. This previous event, we had, you know, always on the first event of the year is when your mechanical issues with your trucks are going to really be put to the test, because now they're being put under a load, under strain, as well as the employees, and so when we have those breakdowns, our chief mechanic has to come off his route and come back and work on those, and now we have two routes open, and then we don't even have another supervisor to maybe go and cover that route for a while. We do have a couple of backup pieces of equipment that are much smaller in nature, so if we do decide to have to go on that, then it's still, we're still playing catch-up. There's really no safety net there, and that's what we're pushing forward in the years to come. So, but currently, we do have 14 personnel in, that includes me, so really, it's 13. I'm not doing a whole lot out there than just trying to fill those plugs where I can and holes and gaps in the operation, and then our four contracted personnel, and we do have one temporary truck driver that comes in as well. So, here's our worksheet, if you will, each event that we print out, it's got who's, you know, in what routes, and so. And so the two routes there that are in yellow, Route Two and Route Three, those are our chief mechanic and one of our other foremen that are, as I was just discussing, is in a large piece of equipment. We have that vacancy down on Route Ten, I believe it is. And the real area, the criticality area, is that chief mechanic. We're really, hopefully, if we can get some people employed, and it takes a while to get these people on board, you know, even taking time with doing the interviews and whatnot, and we've got to make a decision, we've got to make an offer, we've got to see if the offer holds. And then we even had, successfully, we had a candidate accept, came to work, sent him on on his route to check it out, learn it for two days, and he quit. He came to us from another department, and I said, you know, are you sure you want to do that? Like, what's making you, you know, go back to where you were? And he said, that route's a bear. That's that Route Ten. He said, it's just, it's too much. If you look it up in the books that I just gave out, you'll see how many cul-de-sacs there are and, you know, the mileage. And he just thought it was just too much, and he was a little bit too scared to take on this level of responsibility. And this was a guy that had three years' experience from another DPW. So it is what it is. We'll keep interviewing until we can find some replacements and hopefully provide some ease. And there's other things, I think I'll get through it a little bit later on. There's those numbers again, the amount of cul-de-sacs we have in town, the amount of dead ends, those are all very time consuming. And, but in this first one right here, so right now, one of our employees had to fly down to Florida early this morning. His dad, his elder father, has some medical issues. He had to go down there. He's going to be down there for a couple of days. We have some snow moving in Wednesday. He's likely not going to be here. It doesn't look to be a very large event, but nonetheless, it's a route that we've got to get covered. Saturday, sadly, one of our new employees, his mother passed away. And he was new and he was scared, so he still came in for the, to do the salting operation that we had on Saturday morning. A true testament to the fact that we, it looks like, you know, we got a good one. But nonetheless, you know, he was off today planning services, and he'll be out Thursday and Friday planning, attending the funeral services and whatnot coming up. But if we have a storm, that's another route that's got to be covered. It's kind of hard to ask somebody to come in and deal with the stressfulness of a storm when you're also grieving your mom, the loss of your mother. And we have one gentleman that is deployed out on military leave, so, as well, so that's another challenge. So there's the vacancies that I talked about, and, you know, and we can have people, you know, announce a retirement anytime they want or quit after two days. That was unfortunate. Some good news, we received two large trucks that we had bid out a couple marches ago, and the other one just came in. And the one that we bid out in October, we're actually, this is something that Justin and I have been keeping an eye on, and COVID really impacted, but the lead time on these trucks and whatnot, it's been as much as two years in some accounts, and you've heard that with the fire department, too, on their ladders and engines that they order. But we ordered, we had a bid in late May, and we may be getting it in early as February. So we're gaining ground in that. They're building the trucks a little bit faster now, so I'm not quite sure if that's industry wide, but at least from our particular vendor that that truck came from is coming in quicker, so we may even get the other one by February, so that's good news. And why is that good news? Because it's less breakdowns and then it less complicates the, but even one truck that went down that we lost in this last event was only two years old, actually, excuse me, three years old. And it just had a particular clamp in a part of the truck that it just rotted off down on the engine, and it put the truck down, so ended up damaging another part. But we've got it back up as of now, as of this evening, so that's good news.
Steve, if that truck was being parked inside all the time, would that have happened?
Well, we, if we had been, if we had been washing our fleet more frequently and had a wash bay and whatnot, and then, yes, storing it inside, definitively, those things, I mean, this truck's three years old and the clamp's already rotted and popped off the truck, and then caused other mechanical issues with that truck and puts it down. So that's a great question and a great point, and, you know, we're working with the DPW working group right now, and that's a big part of that, is that, you know, how we take care of this equipment. It's just so costly. You know, we're going to go through, on an average, twenty-plus events, thirty-seven to, you know, forty times of salt applications and plowing throughout the subdivisions and main roads and whatnot, and maybe wash it once. I'm pretty sure that every person in this room is going to wash their personal vehicle more than once this winter to get the salt off of it. So it's just, I don't want to get too far off track from tonight's operation, but thank you. Other things that are time consuming, well, we had four rookies. We're down to two. We're trying to get two more out there, but they've got to learn their routes, and so they obviously go slower, a little bit more time consuming. This event, we did have a few concerns that people didn't like the way the cul-de-sacs were left and what have you. Just for the viewing public, if you're watching, too, we do always go back and revisit our routes later on, and it may not be perfect, you know, at the end of an event. When a guy's been at it for, you know, thirty-six hours or whatnot, we'll return on the next normal workday and make it look all real pretty and perfect. We get it, but that doesn't mean that I'm not asking you to call us in and let us know and make us aware, because the only way these guys are going to really learn it is to hear those things and go ahead and remedy them later on. So we encourage people to let us know if we're not going to get just quite right on some things. So, and we have to be mindful of our staff, you know. If you follow us on our Facebook page, you'll see when I'm saying, okay, we went out, we did our initial application of salt, we've got some, we're going to let it build up a little bit, let that brine, you know, develop out on the roads to prevent, you know, snow pack and ice pack on the roads. And we've got to, you know, kind of take our time and give the guys some downtime, let them get something to eat and get out from behind the wheel for a little bit. We don't have any mutual aid. That's fairly obvious. When it's snowing here, it's pretty much snowing everywhere around us, so there's no one else to call. And then there's always the unpredictable things, the breakdowns, accidents. Last year, unfortunately, right out the gate, first two seasons of the year, we had accidents. Took two of our trucks out for the entire season. Not our fault. One person blew a red light, another person was an Amazon delivery truck coming down the road and took our trucks out for the entire season. Gratefully, those were the smaller trucks. Well, actually, one was a contractor's truck, unfortunately, and the other one was ours. So we just ask people to slow down. You know, as we get into different storms, we can have wires down, trees blown down and the such, so those are things that slow us up as well. What I really wanted to point out here is just that we are, you know, the town winter parking ban is in effect from November first to April first, so please, don't park on the streets after midnight, regardless of whether it's snow or not in the forecast. The police department has a lot better things that they should be doing than going out there and wrapping on your door at two in the morning and asking you to move your car off the street. We just had our own operations meeting today, is a department-wide meeting, to review these books and go over some things that happened on that, on our first event, kickoff event. And, you know, we're, we try and give people breaks when it's, we know the holidays are here and people are having parties and they're out in the street. If you've got something like that, just have everybody on one side of the road so at least we can get by. Or more importantly, if there's an ambulance call up the street and they show up and there's cars on both sides of the street, they're not going to get through, or a fire engine's not going to get through. So at least be mindful of that, and then we pay you back with that mindfulness. And, but, you know, once we get past midnight, you know, time to end the party and, or you'll be dealing with the cops in a different way. So, but, and just, and everything else that you have out there, you know, I'm still seeing, you know, those portable basketball hoops, those are the worst of the ones that are permanently installed, because then they slide and they roll and they may hit the truck and break a window and whatnot, and, you know, you have, things go bump in the night. So make sure everything that you have out there, campers, boat trailers and whatnot, please put them on your property and remove them from the shoulder. So in tune with everything that, you know, we're in right now, a budget season, you know, we have over three million dollars in the, just the twenty-one pieces of snowfighting equipment invested here. You know, on average, we use about thirty-four hundred tons of sand. We still have some room to work on in the budget for that, but we're in good shape with the sand. We brought in quite a bit last year at the end of the season. Problem with the sand is, too, is, you know, it's not stored in a shed. And so, as you can imagine, that sand is very, very heavy with snow and ice and rain that gets in it all season long. We're trying to mix it on the fly, and then we put it on the trucks, and that was some of the problem we had with this first storm, because like I said earlier, you now put all that heavy material on the truck and you're putting it under load, and so a couple of the argos, if you will, broke. And it didn't take it out of commission, at least on one truck. It didn't take it out of commission for the plowing aspect, but we couldn't do any treatment with it, so. Salt, so we were doing very well with salt. As you all know, hopefully, that over the last several years, we've kind of moved that budget number up to where that meets our needs for what we use on average. This year, we saw an increase of almost four dollars a ton in salt, which is very odd. The last several years, it's been pretty flat, never goes down, but sometimes it's flat or just goes up nominally, but this year, it took a big jump. And that's hard for us to adjust to because we get those numbers from the state bid. They come in usually in, you know, late July, August, and, you know, as you know, this budget's already set long before then, so. But we're still within a margin there that we should be okay. And just, you know, a round of salt, just for the material alone, is over nine thousand dollars. So, you know, sometimes we hear the battle cry, people want to salt more and get out more and do more and whatnot, and, you know, it can be harmful to the environment, it's harmful to your vehicles, our trucks, and then also it puts a great strain on the budget if you're not responsible about it. And then other things, you know, the obvious fuel, plowing, cutting edges, parts and things of that nature are all on the rise. But I will say that our operations are not based on money. They're based on, you know, best management practices, and public safety is top of mind always when with what we're doing it. A lot of people ask me all the time when storms are coming in, oh, so Dave, what do you think we're going to get? You know, are we getting six inches, ten inches? The arguments start, you see everybody on Facebook, you know, oh, Channel Seven doesn't know, and this other, this channel knows better, and everybody has their favorite forecaster. My favorite forecaster is the guy or girl that can tell me the time it's going to start. That is what we need to know. We need to know what time is it going to start, and more importantly, what time is it going to end? Because if you get those wrong, then you either over-prepare and now your staff is in earlier than you really want them to, and you'd rather them be resting and getting as much rest in as possible, or on the other end, you're thinking, like this particular one was, if you recall, if you watched this one closely enough, they were really saying that snow was going to end around ten or eleven o'clock at night. And as then, you know, it got longer and longer than they were saying eleven o'clock midnight, and then it moved to two AM. Well, guess when it stops snowing? Four AM, okay? But we were determined to get school in for my friend Katie Sullivan. She loves to make sure that there's no snow days. But at any rate, but in all seriousness, the timing of storms and the duration of storms is really what we're interested in because of when it hits. So we want to time, you know, our salting applications and our plowing operations just right and understand how long it takes to do either of those operations. And here's where we stand, so compared to other communities and whatnot, and you can see that when I say, you know, it takes us about four to five hours to get around the beat once, you know, we hear people saying on Facebook, you know, you said you started out there plowing and I haven't seen a truck in hours, and then sure enough, a couple hours later, it comes by, and it's because it takes just that long to get to, to get all the way through the route. We have over twenty miles until we can improve that number a little bit better, but we're last in where we're at with the size of our routes. And perhaps, you know, the gentleman that quit, maybe he's right. I don't know. You know, he was just worried about the amount of miles that it was and the length it was going to take and his comfortableness in it. And so what you can also see, just looking at some of the annual averages over the years, winters have changed. And when people say, oh, I remember when I was a kid, I used to walk up to school, you know, hill, up the hill both ways, and, you know, it was really, really deep. And if you look at some of those averages, you can definitely see a downward trend. You know, my concern is if we start getting back into those thirty-year trends where we really do typically get sixty-five to eighty inches of snow or dare I say, over a hundred inches of snow, wasn't that long ago. The winter of fourteen, fifteen was a hundred and twenty inches of snow, and we had over fifty-seven, fifty-eight inches of snow just in the month of February. That was a brutal winter. I wasn't here, but I'm sure that was a serious problem for a staff of this size and the ability to move it and then have to go back and go back and go back and push back and high wing. We haven't had the, we have people on our staff right now been with us five, six, seven years, and I said the term "high wing," and they looked at me like, what? They don't even know what it is. We haven't had snowbanks that high yet where you go out and you just use the wing to push the top part of the snowbank back and only to have to come back through again and then try and move it over. And a lot of things get damaged then, fences and other things that are left out there that we don't, that we're not aware of. It's not intentional, it's just we didn't know it was there, it was buried in the snow. But last year, you know, we only had forty-three inches of snow. In our last plowing event was February sixteenth, so you might think, oh, last winter, was it good? Was it not? It was only a two-inch event. You know, it wasn't all that bad of a season last year, but we still had an event that snuck up on us on April twelfth, and it was a salting event, but nonetheless, we had to, you know, that's that tough time of year where we're trying to go between plowing and getting ready for construction and things of that nature, and everybody wants their lawns repaired, and then we go and fix them, and then that comes up, and we hope we don't have to go out and do anymore, anymore. But if we start getting back into a more traditional type style winter, that's of concern, so. So basically, that's how we run our show, from that point on the left to what we're trying to get to there on the right. If there's any questions about the operation?
Of course, Dan.
Feel free.
Dan has a question for you. What is?
Get out of here. And does? Come on.
Dave, I know we're, this is kind of a tough year because you have employees down. Have we looked at increasing maybe subcontractors, trying to get more of them lined up in case we need them?
That's a great question. You know, I come from a community where we had over fifty percent of our plowing fleet was contracted. Here, we're about ninety-five percent. We only have four contracted pieces of equipment. Our rates, I'm grateful for those four that we have. Our rates are extraordinarily low. They're not anywhere near close to. So I did, you know, within the last couple of years, kind of reach out and I kind of got laughed at about our rates. And to increase those rates, then we're going to have to look at increasing our amount of money that we have for contractors. In fact, later on in the evening, we're going to be talking about that very thing. You know, this year, we went up five bucks an hour on, for the equipment that were contracted, and we're still missing the mark by about twenty-five to thirty dollars an hour for what we have. So we can, the other component to that that I don't like is that we just, in any town, we'll tell you this, you just don't end up getting the type of specified plow equipment like we have. So you end up with inferior equipment, paying much higher rates of pay for it, and the level of service, you end up undoubtedly going back every single event, having to redo their route, push it back, the truck wasn't big enough, the corners didn't get wrapped because they don't have wings. So your level of service is less, and then people are like, I'm paying for this? And then the employees get aggravated because it's like, well, my route's good and I got to go plow the contractor's route because, you know. So it is a road we can explore and go down, but there's a cost to it. In my professional opinion, the level of service is much less.
My other point was, have we looked at retirees, whether they're from LFD, because they have, they might have the license to be able to operate that equipment? that equipment? I know we had one at one time, and he's left, Gene.
So.
Maybe even DPW guys?
I'm happy to report that Gino came in for this storm, he called me and said, "Hey, I changed my mind, I'd like to make this event." "Great, we need you, come on down." That really was a load off my chest when I got that call. So, he came in, and after it was over, he talked to his boss and said, "Things have changed a little bit there too," so he'd like to be considered the frontline guy again. But it did, you know, I've had this little worry in the back of my head about having temporary drivers as the frontline personnel, because they can, you know, quit in a minute, and you, I'm not comfortable with finding people like that that just, "Hey, here's the keys to a quarter of a million dollar truck, and good luck." So, it has to be a very specific person, one that's trusted, well-vetted, and whatnot. So, we don't really advertise for it, we do kinda float it out there a little bit, but that's really word of mouth. I did reach out to a former employee of ours. He worked with me in both Salem and Londonderry, and he had considered it, but he's kinda doing private driveways right now, and so it'd be a tough time of year for him to just all of a sudden pack it in on his accounts. But it is something he's considering maybe in the future, too.
I'm not sure if I heard right, but I think Chairman Dunn said he'd be available if you need him. He loves to plow.
The town manager's been tromping it a bit over here to get in, too. It may come to it.
I heard that Dan wanted to help, too. We could both help take a route now. You got a question, Dave?
I do have a question. So, we have a lot of like, you know, 55 pluses that HOA. Now, that has to take off some of the roads, right? Like, you don't play, you don't plow?
No.
Like Woodmont?
No.
Or Technology Hill, or?
No.
What is that farm, you know?
Yeah, Lawson Farm, yeah.
Yeah, like, we're not paving that. How much road is, do you know off the top of your head? I'm sure you probably don't, but you might. I mean, so we say we got 20 acres, right? But we pull all those parcels out, how much is left? Or is that the 20?
Or, well, yeah, I, this book, this, yeah, this book that I just handed you doesn't really handle any of that, because we don't, it's private, it's no different than parking lots and whatnot, we don't, we don't deal with it. My greater concern on those particular things, and gratefully, Londonderry is a testament to the engineering department, they make sure that those roads are built to the town standards anyway. There's gonna come a time in the future, and a lot of us in this industry are talking about it, where, you know,
They're gonna become?
They're gonna run out of 55-plus people, right? Or they're just gonna go bankrupt or whatever, and then who's gonna have to plow? You're gonna have public safety matters that gotta be dealt with, right?
Right.
And that's gonna be a problem. I'll be, I'll be long retired at that point, hopefully. But it is gonna be, it is a concern.
It is a concern, so that's why I wanna know, if that 20 miles is including those roads?
No, it's not. So, the stats that I rolled up there for you, that does not include any of those lane lines.
So would be good, though, I think, to help people a little bit?
Yeah.
To show both?
Yeah.
To say, "They're there, and they could be added on?"
Yeah.
At some point in time.
Yeah, there's a lot, yeah, I get you, it's an important number to know. What is, what is an exposure to us in the future?
A plan.
If they, if they did go under, or whatever, and what have you.
Yeah, it's a plan, I mean, it's important.
It's probably potentially one tragedy away of, you know, the contractor that plows those areas didn't do a good enough job, and then fire department or medics had a problem getting into, fight those structures, or they couldn't get close enough to them, or access and whatnot, and, you know, we're one tragedy away where somebody says, you know, "You had an unreliable contractor that didn't provide the level of service necessary for the response for police and fire, you're not taking it as serious as the Public Works Department does." And then, you know, it literally becomes, "You're plowing those roads." Where I came from, same thing, we just had this conversation. We don't plow the unaccepted roads here in town, whether if they're gonna become public roads or not, whether if they're under construction, when they're, while they're under construction, they are the responsibility of the contractor. And if they don't do it, and there's a death up there, this literally happened where I came from. And so that town, you know, the town I came from, they decided, "Start plowing all the roads regardless."
So, you just made mentions of sizes, but most of those developments are like four feet smaller. Like, I understand it, I believe, and I could be wrong, I'm sure somebody will correct me, I thought we're 28 feet, and these guys are looking for 24 feet, which is smaller.
Well, yeah, the Class 6 stuff and whatever, but, yeah, but like, Woodmont, things like that, they're our width, so, but, it's a future problem that is a future concern, I get it.
It is, and it really is, and it should go to Planning Board to talk about that in the future.
Thank you.
At least certainly the benefit of the 55-plus neighborhoods, we don't have buses, we don't have children there, and those developments are providing quite a bit in taxable revenue, so we're not having a burden of maintaining for the buses and children at that time in those developments.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, it's a much larger discussion and considerations, but but we take care of what we got, and we got plenty of it, so.
Any other questions for Dave?
I find it interesting that the 10-year average is only 54.9 inches, where we had the huge event in 2014, 2015.
Yeah.
That the other years just really bring it farther down.
Brought it down, yeah, there was some, there was some years before and after that were only, in fact, one of those years in that average, I think, was 28 inches.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so, that really knocks the numbers down.
He said it's online.
Yeah. Yeah, and then this, if, you know, for the viewing public, too, this is all on our website, I believe Donna put it on there today. So, anybody that wants to look up and know their route, and, you know, or their driver, and, you know, in closing on this subject, unless we have more questions, I'd just like to thank our staff, they do work hard. They're humans, if I didn't do anything tonight, I wanna illustrate, hopefully I illustrated that, how hard they work. They are people, they have pain and suffering just like anybody else, so, you know, give them a break, give them a wave. We had a lot of nice, really, really nice pictures that were sent my way during this event of kids out there waving at the trucks, and it really, it really was a nice serene moment for Londonderry, and that's, I think that's, gets back to maybe one of the people that spoke earlier about just treating each other with a little bit of kindness, and understanding a little bit about what everybody's going through right now. It's a tough time of year, it's a joyous time of year, but it can also be very, very tough for people, too.
I also wanna add in, everyone, please be safe on the roads, the snow squalls Saturday morning were very dangerous. There were four to five cars off the road on 93 at exit 5, with that a minimum amount of snow squalling.
Yeah.
So please, everyone, stay safe and drive a bit slower.
Any other questions for Dave? He's staying with us, so don't worry. Up next, we have a discussion from the expenditure of the Maintenance Trust Fund for a replacement motor for the rooftop unit at Leach Library. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. So, Leach Library has, you can see it from the fire department side, a real large rooftop unit that is essentially the air handler for about three-quarters of that building, is all forced hot air and cooling. There is some baseboard heating and whatnot in the building, but during the preventative maintenance, and this is really to the point of the preventative maintenance contracts that we've stood up over the last several years, that whole rooftop unit was replaced, I believe I have it in my narrative, 2012, for 30, a little over $32,000, so there's no need to replace the whole unit, but the motor in it, when they were doing some of their preventative maintenance assessment on it, was caused for, to replace it, because if it had just gone down, that particular, that particular part, that motor, is on a rather large lead time. So, we had some discussion about that, whether if we should do it or not. The decision was to obviously replace it, so it was ordered, and we scheduled it to, in the fall, when we didn't have a problem with just taking it offline for a day or two, because, you know, we don't have to worry about too much about heat, or too much about the cold quite yet, and so, we scheduled that to have that done. So there was a crane that had to be brought in, it's a very heavy motor to get to that roof, the way that we accessed the roof, that wasn't possible. So they brought the crane in to bring it up there and take the old one down and replace it, but we didn't replace the entire unit itself. I mean, it's the size of a bus, that unit, so it was just the motor itself.
Any questions for Dave?
Dan, of course.
Dave, do you take that old motor and maybe have it repurposed?
Yeah.
From Fay Electric, you know, in Manchester? They do rewind motors and all that.
We could, it wasn't something that we really discussed doing, it was pretty much at its end of life, and so, I mean, other than taking it all apart and everything like that, you know, the new motor's under warranty for a minimum of a year anyway. Well, the labor and whatnot, the motor itself has a much longer warranty as well, but, but now, the rebuilding of that particular motor, no.
Maybe just look at that in the future?
Okay.
If we can have a motor like that go?
Yeah.
Contact, you know, a company like Fay Electric and say, you know?
Yeah.
What would the cost be to rebuild this motor?
Sure. Yeah.
Because you said they're hard to get, you know?
Yeah, exactly, I mean, this was, you know, you can't take it offline, go rebuild it, come bring it back. But, yeah, I mean, maybe now that it's out, rebuild it, and what have you, but.
Dan, in my experience of property management, a 13-year-old motor, you're not gonna be able to repurpose that and reuse it.
Yeah.
Just a thought.
Any other questions?
Someone had asked this question, and I think I know the answer to it, but I'm gonna ask it just for the public's sake. It's why couldn't fire have helped with the putting that?
Well, I don't, for the acting fire chief, is he in the room? I don't quite think he wants to use his aerial ladder to lift something that heavy. And plus, you know, again, thinking of employee's safety and not getting hurt, and, you know, muscle in a motor like that.
There's a liability issue to it.
Probably not a good idea.
That's a sufficient enough answer, I just wanna ask it because someone had asked me, and I figured I'd pass that along.
I don't wanna be the one calling Primax. Let them know that's why the ladder truck broke.
I mean, the ladder truck is best served for, you know, bringing Santa around town, but I don't know about lifting a motor, but anyway.
Any other questions?
Procedurally, so is this, this is already done?
Yes.
So, don't we usually approve this stuff before it happens? I'm just wondering, like, procedurally?
Yeah, I get it, I usually, you know, come before you after the fact, like, if it's an emergency and things of that nature. When we, when they threw this at me, I said, "Let's have a discussion about this, and let's talk about, you know, ordering of the equipment and what have you." And because of the lead time, I kinda made that call and didn't come before you guys, because I just wanted to get the ball rolling. And then once that's rolling, it's kinda hard to come before you after the fact, so. But I thought in, you know, late August, when it was hot and humid out, that it was worth, you know, to get it going, so.
Kinda think about the lead time on our fire equipment.
Yeah.
A long time.
So.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve order 2025-18.
Second? I have a motion from Ted, second from Sean. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes the affirmative.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Don't go too far, sir.
I know.
All right. Up next, we have discuss and authorize the sale of a tax-deeded property, 22 Gary Lane.
So, as you can see, the town previously had deeded 22 Gary Lane for lack of opinion on property taxes. We reviewed the options of this property with our public safety to see if there would be any benefit, and it was determined that based on the location, as well as where it is topographically, that it wouldn't be. The initial owners have reached out requesting to repurchase the land. Historically, after three years, the first right of refusal goes away. However, back in, I think, 2020, maybe 2021, there was a court settlement that essentially, everything above the back taxes now goes back to the owner, which used to only be the case in the first three years. So where the owner is now looking to repurchase it, it makes sense to sell it back to them since any proceeds that would go over would go back to them anyways, and if they want the property, they can just make a very high bid, knowing that they're gonna be the ones to get the proceeds anyways. So this is just requesting authorization for Sean to enter into the agreement, to resell the property back to them.
Do we know, Justin, what that number's gonna be? Any idea, roughly?
It'll be the back taxes, the interest, and any legal fees that we've incurred.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Is this referring to Vine Street Rentals LLC? They were the prior owners?
Correct.
They had only owned it for about a, what, four years? Maybe five?
I believe so, I believe they sold it between, I think Vine Street LLC, and I don't wanna see.
There's four NH Homes LLC before.
I think there was a name change, I know, he was talking about potentially coming. So, he's here if you have questions regarding that, but I believe it was just a name change?
Gotcha.
Between his operation, but I don't wanna speak on that behalf.
Gotcha, gotcha.
But I've informed him that we would have to sell it back to Vine Street, otherwise it has to go through auction since it's no longer the original owner.
Any other questions for Justin?
All right, I move that the Londonderry Town Council hereby authorizes the town manager to take all steps necessary as justice may require for the sale of the tax-deeded property at 22 Gary Lane, back to its original owner, Vine Street Rental LLC, in Londonderry, New Hampshire, and to execute all documents required in furtherance of the sale of the property.
I have a motion from Sean.
Second?
Second from Ted. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes the affirmative. Up next, we have Budget Workshop. We wanna start us off, sir, or?
Okay.
Yes.
And then I'll go?
We're gonna pull up.
Department by department?
Actually, I'm gonna pull up the updated budget presentation.
All right, perfect.
So, the changes were made to that now that we have a tax rate. So we're just gonna actually scroll down to the slides.
Sure.
The slides with the dollar bill on it there, you'll see that those numbers are different. So that percentage is different from the previous presentation that was made. Be helpful if I bring the mic over here so folks can hear me. All right, and then the tax rate computation, I kept the 2024 table in there, and I just added the 2025 table in there. So you can see that breakdown there of where we are compared to the municipalities, in terms of the municipal portion, and then the total tax rate, you can see over in the far right-hand corner over there. And we're at 353, you can see the towns of Salem and Derry are up in the fives, almost six in case of Salem. Wyndham and Litchfield are slightly below, well, they're below us. And then Hudson's at 557, Merrimack 438, Manchester, the two cities are much higher than that. Then moving along, I just added the 2025, yeah, on that one right there. I don't think this slide's particularly helpful, because as we all know, we have revaluations, it's sort of an apples to, an oranges comparison. Obviously, it shows the tax rate going down, but if you own a house that is increased in value, like our sample house that we've got here, went from $634,000 to $700,000, they're paying more in property taxes, and this shows the tax rate went down, which it did. But again, individual property owners, depending upon how much their value change, are gonna end up paying more. But it's, it's a comparison slide that you normally see in other communities. Budget history, that number, the updated number in there, that's just been updated on that. Tax rate has been updated, this sheet's been operated to show that the tax rate for 2025, previous one showed 24. Next couple of slides have not changed. And then again, the, yeah, that one right there shows the updated numbers for 2027. The tax rate, oh, I haven't changed that sheet in there, obviously that has changed since we put that out originally, but I haven't put the updated numbers on that. And then I, I showed the property taxes that erode on the house that was valued at $634,700, and with the revaluation, is now valued at $770,000 for 2025. And that's probably more commensurate with more of the houses, I mean, I could show you a rate that looks at a $250,000 house, or $300,000 house, but there are far fewer of those unfortunately due to prices. So this, this is more commensurate with the prices of houses in our community. And you can see the changes that have occurred, so from 24 to 25, that's a change of $328. As you can see there, before that, the change was $131, and again, that has a lot to do with the shift in value of this particular house. And then the next sheet, I just, this is a new sheet that I put in there to try to show you those numbers. So the proposed budget, as it stands right now, would represent $192 more for this house, which is a 25% increase, and then proposed tax rate for 2026, I should say estimated tax rate for '26. That equates to basically for every cent that the tax rate goes up, that's an additional $7.70 that would be assessed to this particular house at its value. And then with the $400,000, I just showed that number, so it would have gone from $192 more, down to $146 more, or 17 cents. And the default budget's $100 more, just to kinda give you some comparison with the three that we're looking at presently.
Mr. Town Manager, just wanted to catch you real quick.
Yes.
You had said before, I think you quoted yourself by accident, you said 25%, it was 25 cents.
25 cents, you're correct if I misstated that.
Make sure people at home heard you right.
Yeah, that is, that's a big difference. All right. And then, I just updated the next slide, which shows it's a 25 cent, thank you for correcting that. Cost drivers basically haven't changed, you can see 94% of the cost increases represent these particular items, wage increases, benefits, retirement system payments, the solid waste contract at $432,000, and then IT and software costs. So that represents the wage drivers, that's 94% of the increase, which represents just over $3 million. And the other two slides haven't changed, so I wanted to go over that. And then next, we, I was asked to come up with what would, what $400,000 in cuts look like, and those are detailed on the next page. And I'm just gonna have Justin run down through some of those, and articulate those, I have department heads here that can also further explain some of those. But that's what, that's where we're at right now for the $400,000.
So. So, as you guys requested, these are essentially where we would be able to cut regarding the $400,000. The town council, you're looking at around $2,500. Give me one second here, because I'm operating off the PDF instead of the, my actual helpful sheet. All righty, after that, you have the town manager, where we'd be decreasing overtime, and the associated cost with it. Then, you're looking. Then you're looking at town clerk, where we will decrease the funding request and office supplies. We will assume and hope that the health insurance becomes a buyout rather than the plan that's in there. Essentially, what happens there is that if it does become a two-person, the town has to find the difference somewhere else within the budget. We can't force people to say, you know, you have to take a buyout, you don't get insurance. You, if you have a family, we have to give you the family. We can't say, nope, you only get a single. After that, you'll see machinery and equipment. This is to reduce for the tabulators and pole pads, which are being purchased this year per the town council authorizing it. Then we had a plan to replace 50 voting booths per year. This will reduce it to 25 per year. Within finance, we'll be decreasing banking services further for assessing because the revaluation won't occur until '28, we'll decrease that by 250. The general government, we took a rough three-year average for heat, oil, and gasoline, and decreased it by roughly those with hopes that those prices won't increase and we have to make that money up elsewhere. Decreased furniture by 1,000, so we'll handle that. Remove the firework 25,000 and hope that we receive sponsorships. Drop one of the open positions coverage for health and dental insurance. Right now, we have a $1,000 insurance deductible that gets charged to this line. We'll take that 2,000 out and charge it directly to the department. The next one is police overtime for Old Home Day. Will reduce police and fire overtime by Old Home Day, by the Old Home Day overtime expenses. The next one is to remove the animal control or conservation part-time position. The next one is firefighting overtime, and this is to bring it to the default number of 1.3. This was after discussion with the two chiefs about whether the operating budget was sufficient or if default was sufficient. The next one is to reduce our on-call firefighter usage by 10,000. Currently, it's at 20. Then also remove Old Home Day firefighting overtime. In building, we will decrease the overtime as well. Public works, we'd look to lower the work safety line. And as you guys are aware, that was a new line last year that we're testing out. So this will, essentially, this is where we believe we'll be on track, and it gives us less leeway should there need to be more requests next fiscal year. Then with the removing of snow equipment and the engine purchase, since we will not be requesting the two additional DPW, DPW members or truck drivers, the snow equipment would not be necessary to purchase, so that will be removed out. We're going to decrease snow removals by 23,000. Solid waste, we're decreasing travel and mileage as well as printing and services. So essentially, less for reimbursement, and we'll lower the amount of printed materials, which will make our town manager happy. The next one is cable, where we'll reduce the training, the subscription services that the cable department utilizes. As well as, since we're reducing training, we'll reduce the travel costs. We'll utilize the capital reserve fund heavier for the maintenance and repairs, as well as the machinery and equipment. Recreation, we're decreasing, and again, we'll rely heavier on the capital reserve fund. Senior affairs will decrease the increase in funding requests. Planning and community development, we will decrease the increase request, as well as the travel reimbursement. The library gave me their breakdown. So give me one second. If my computer will load. The library will be reducing the regular salaries for removing the admin time by about $6,668. They're going to reduce management services by about $804,000. This will be specifically the children's programming. They will reduce dues and subs by 300 and limit the museum passes. And they will reduce books and periodicals by approximately $43,227, not renewing various databases, for a total of $51,000.
Any questions? Deb, go ahead.
I don't know how much of a pain this would be to ask for you to do, but the lines that you're taking things from, could it be possible to put next to it, like what's in it? So in other words, just for example, furniture, which happens to be on my thing. How much is in that furniture line total? Like, do you know what I mean? Like, just compare that way? Because I'd like to see how much of it you're actually taking out. Can you do that, or is that impossible?
No, I can do it. It's just if you were to go to the page for.
Well, I'm just, instead of going back and forth to be able to see it right there, I mean, I think it would help a lot, you know, to be able to see right there.
Okay.
How much of a percentage is coming out of each one? If you wouldn't mind. I'm sorry.
Nope. It's that, we can do that.
It's just easier.
Yep.
To see it all in one spot. Anybody else?
Yeah. So, I believe we had asked for this exercise to be done without cutting and reducing down services to the town.
You didn't.
And I'm seeing this as drastically really affecting services being provided to the town from police, fire, protection at Old Home Day, services that protect the town during snow events. These are a lot of items that are really affecting our services that affect the people on a daily basis. I don't think that this was really done in earnest to find the areas that could have been saved. And if these are really the, you know, maybe some areas that could be saved, then really, we're not hitting that $400,000 that we had asked for. And if that's the case, that might be okay. But if we're going to be really affecting our services throughout town, I cannot get behind many of these items.
So I just want to be clear, because I don't remember you saying you want to make cuts that didn't affect services.
And I'm. He did say that.
You wanted to make cuts that didn't affect services. Is that on the video? Because I didn't hear it.
I don't remember.
I thought you had said you would have requested items that would not affect services in town.
I just wanted to see what it looked, because we provide services, period.
Right. Everything we do.
Police, fire, DPW, we weren't going to reduce the services being provided. That was the goal.
I think, I'd have to go back and look at the video. I don't remember saying that exact phrasing of it.
Mm-hmm. I listened to it carefully.
The town manager to recommend what he'd recommend for $400,000 in cuts.
Okay.
So when I looked at this, I tried to minimize the impact on services. But as Vice.
That's probably the way I worded it, actually, when you said it that way. I think I said minimize impact. I didn't say no, because I didn't think there's, there's no possibility to ever cut a dollar out of the budget without, you'd impact the service a dollar.
So that's exactly what I did. I tried to minimize the impact short and long term when I did that. Anytime you're making budget cuts, you're going to be impacting something. If we weren't, then it shouldn't have been the budget in the first place. So an example of that is the, the tabulators for $7,200. That's not a real cut because we're purchasing those this year. So that was removed, and we already talked about that during the budget process. So when we, when you, when you cut a budget, I proposed a budget to provide the services. All of the things that you saw in the budget presentation that I had, all these things that are in here are part of that. So when you're going to make budget cuts, you're going to have impact on services. And the idea is, how do you minimize that impact on services to the people who live here, short and long term?
So I think there is ways to do it without affecting current services, and that's affecting new spending. So if we looked into what was new spending, I think that would be, correct me if I'm wrong, Ted, I think that's more in line with what you were thinking?
Yeah. And I can't imagine cutting our snow removal services. I mean, cutting the whole $25,000 that we've been putting forth for years towards the fireworks for Old Home Day, I think is completely unnecessary. That's one of our biggest items in town that people look forward to every single year. Reducing the amount of money for the police animal control, and I believe they also help with traffic control as well. And then also for overtime for Old Home Day for police and fire, where really, you know, we have anywhere between 3,000 to 10,000 people that show up for Old Home Day. You need those people to be able to be feeling safe and secure and have our men and women to be on the streets protecting them at that time. You know, a lot of these items, I don't think we should be cutting back out.
Which is why I proposed a budget with those things in there, so we could provide those level of services that are necessary to do that. But at some point, when you want to make cuts, they have to come someplace. And where do you make those cuts? I made a judgment call as to what those, what those are, and that's an event we have one time a year. And other communities have done this. The community I was in, they cut that money out of there, and then sponsors came up with that money. Volunteers and businesses put that up because they valued that service in the community. So we just have to make a decision what we want to do at the end of the day. So that's why I proposed that, because I don't want to cut plowing any more than we've already cut it, because we are in here, plowing services. I don't want to cut police protection and fire protection to the extent that I absolutely have to. But when you're talking about an event that costs about $100,000 a year to run, that's what it costs. And is that more important than having an ambulance arrive at somebody's house? Or a patrol car when someone's in domestic assault? Is that more important? And plowing these roads so the first responders can get out there and people can drive safely down the roadway? So that's why I try to prioritize those based on what I have. At the end of the day, no matter what cuts I make, whatever cuts you make, no one's going to be happy with that. That's the fundamental issue with budget cuts. No one's happy. Because right now, people are going to get less and they're going to pay more. That's the scenario that you're in, no matter what you do, unless you make some really dramatic cuts. They're going to pay more next year, and they're going to get less services. That's just the fundamental part of this. Every community that's going through this, Merrimack, Hooksett, they have default budgets right now. They're all seeing the same exact thing, unfortunately. That's the scenario you're in.
Would you be able to explain to the public what could happen if the default budget passes?
Would be $906,000 in budget cuts would have to occur.
Right. So I guess the attempt of this exercise was to try to make some cuts so that the public would get behind the budget and not vote for the default? Because if they vote for the default budget, we've got a lot of issues.
That's double this.
Yeah, so.
This number.
It's double this.
This number didn't come out of thin air. This number came, it was about halfway in between where we are.
That was, yeah.
That'll be the people's choice, and then if they choose that, we'll have twice this.
So right now, we're looking at about $400,000 in cuts, which are hard and they're, they're severe. But if they, if the voters vote for the default budget, we're looking at about $900,000 in cuts. So.
Sorry, and just a.
Yeah, please, right here.
Yeah, if I could just ask a question.
Yeah, please.
Just a point of clarity, though. We were saying, I think I saw on a previous slide, I just want to make sure I'm getting it and that the people at home get it. The difference in that example with the house and the $770,000 house.
We'll bring it up.
In taking these cuts or not was like, wasn't it like $50 in there? Or, it was, it was not, it was not a ton of money, right?
Right. Goes from $192 to $146 for the $400,000 cut, and then you get a $92 reduction if you go to the default budget.
Right. So I'm, so I'm just pointing out that there, that that amount of money is not really significant, you know, to make all, for, you know, is it worth all the cuts? So that's just something to think about, I guess. And do you mind if I ask one other question?
No, that's what we're here for. No.
This is, Justin, you might be the person to answer this, but it was about the library items. Can you tell me, and sorry, I just was listening as you were rattling it off, but the children's, there was something about the children's program or something. Is there an impact to a position in there? I just wanted to understand if.
You should probably have the library answer that question. We have a lot of library folks here that can answer that.
Oh, yeah, if someone from the library wants to.
Aaron, do you want to come up and? Thank you.
I don't know if any of my trustees want to come up. Do you? So, oh, sorry. I'll try that. So we, at our meet, at our last, not the last board meeting, the meeting before that, we present, no, it was the last board meeting. We did have a conversation on where those cuts would come from. We were tasked with the $51,000. I brought forth my thoughts and ideas. Jan had brought forth her thoughts and ideas. And the board voted where those cuts were decided to come from. Jason mentioned the salaries, the management, the dues, the rotate dues and subscriptions, and the books and periodicals. The plan with that is that it will impact a position. So we currently have a vacant part-time children's librarian position open.
From the warrant articles last year?
Yes.
Okay.
We have been able to fill that position. So the plan was to, in order to keep that position in the budget, we would cut from the books and periodicals line, thus being able to overspend that line and keep that children's position in there so that hopefully we can fill that in the next fiscal year. And because we can't fill that position, that's where that children's programming is cut, is coming from. So we can't do more with less.
Yeah, right.
So that's where that's coming from.
Okay. Sorry, can I ask you one more question?
Of course, yeah.
Okay. Because it was like $43,000-ish out of the books and
Yep.
periodicals and stuff. So can you help me understand, like, what's the practical impact of that? In terms of the, you know, what are people not getting?
So we will be canceling Hoopla, which is a downloadable service, which is very popular. I anticipate some upset from the public on that. We have a lot of people using that. It's a very popular service. It will also not be getting a specific database that we were hoping to get, which is called Comics Plus. It's like a graphic novel database, which would be very popular amongst teens and adults, and even children for that matter. So those, those are the major impacts. There could be some smaller impacts with just the general collection, but those are the big hit ones.
Do you have any sense of how many people are using the Hoopla service through, through our library?
I do not right now. I can certainly get back to you with that information. Absolutely.
If it's easy.
Yep, I can, I can share that with the budget and the town council as well. Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Yeah, so I have a list of, oh, wow, actually, these questions don't pertain to the library.
Okay.
So anyone else has.
I was about to add that.
Anyone else has for the library?
I can stay up and hang out, but.
Just in case somebody else has another question.
Thank you. Thank you.
Before we just ask questions, one thing to note is to find this $400,000 was not easy. So it took a lot of time from a lot of staff members to find it. So I don't want anything to seem like it's easy to cut. As the town manager was saying, everything is, affects your service in some way. So to find the $400,000 was not easy if you think about how wages are, you know, collectively bargained, and you have to have them. You can't change them. Same with insurance plans. We can't change what we're offering our employees. So when you go to look at what you can cut, your bucket of what you can cut is not huge. So that's just one area to consider when you're looking at everything in the budget presentation.
Thank you. Because I just, with some of these decisions, I just wanted to understand the rationale. So first, the $26,000, the health insurance benefits to reduce the buyout. Justin, you're saying that this is with the hope that employees will take the buyout versus keeping their insurance. How many employees would have to take this buyout?
This is one position.
One position would have to take the buyout?
This is.
Oh.
So there will be a warrant article to provide full-time benefits to the town clerk.
Okay.
We initially had budgeted the position at a two-person. This is to lower the budgeted amount to a buyout instead. And as I mentioned, should we be wrong, we have to find the overage somewhere else.
Okay. All right. And then, like you said, for the electric service, heat and oil, gasoline, this again, you did your best with the math, but you said with, or I should say, did you say that this is with keeping the prices the same? And we know those prices will increase. So what, so tell us what happens when we hit these limits?
So that's more of an answer for me to provide that. So then we have to make other mid-course corrections, I mean, other cuts during the budget year if we do that? Because if you look at the EIA, the government website, you can see where fuel goes, does this up and down, up and down. And that's a significant risk. It's a gamble that we're going to be able to do that. If we can't do that, I'll have to make other cuts during the year to make this happen.
So then just why was that gamble made?
Because again, I tried to make cuts with minimizing the impact on services to folks as best I could. As you know, we're preparing a budget that has to go through a year and a half from now. And who knows what's going to happen then? So there's a lot of risk when you're doing that. Again, you appreciate that. You've been doing this so. Again, you appreciate that, you've been doing this a while, you understand that. So again, I did the, what I thought is the best I could, but I, some of this will have to change during the year. There's going to be other things that are going to occur that we don't know about, that's going to require shifting of money. As you know, this year, you, you were in here to hear it, we're buying additional, um, machines for the plowing place to allow people to get through more quickly. Uh, we had an opportunity to do that, so we're doing that. That's not budgeted, that has to be taken from someplace else.
So I also, like I said, I took a look at the last three years to see where we've spent, and there was some leeway in that, where we're not cutting to the three-year average, we're cutting to just barely above to allow for, if there is an increase, and hopefully we won't have to absorb too much above that elsewhere.
All right, next is on to the police department. So first for the, uh, the overtime for officers at Old Home Days. So, right, you take away the overtime, what does that do to the officer pool that we have available at Old Home Day?
You know, that's, I think that's the point, that there's, you're, we're cutting all the funds for Old Home Day, so there will be no, you're not going to be able to run that event unless you get donations, uh, and to do that, to run that. That's, that's what it costs to be able to do that, that's the point.
Well, I guess what would the mechanism be for, so, right, so you'd set up a mechanism for donations and we'd be asking the residents to donate for the police officer salaries, overtime's?
Well, to the old home day.
Right, for, okay, so we take out that budget.
So that, that's, that's why the council created the, uh, the nonprofit entity to be able to actually accept those donations to be able to do that.
All right, and then the, the removal of the animal control, uh, conservation part-time position, this is a position, there's a body in there right now, correct?
There is.
All right.
Let me, that's, oh.
But one of the things that was just said, that this would be the halfway point between the proposed budget and the default budget. But at least I know in looking in the police line, these items would not have been, at least, you know, the animal control position, it's still in there. The overtime, I believe that's, am I correct, that that's in the default?
The position of the animal control position is in default.
Right, and the overtime for Old Home Day?
The overtime budget is.
So right now, the budget you have does not reflect these cuts. We need the town council to authorize us to move forward with these cuts.
But in default?
Um, in default, the Old Home Day overtime would remain, the part-time position, if it's being removed, would be removed from both.
So I, you know, all, all, a lot of the other departments had, you know, when they came to us, they did not say, you know, we came in at, um, our only increases were contractual and our increases are federally mandated. The police department did so multiple times, came in and said, these increases that we've, that we're, we're not asking for them, we have to do them, contractionally and federally, um, mandated. Could have there, could there have been some other places to look at to cut versus cutting from a department that came in with no asks? And even within the, you know, some of these other, now let me bring it back up. Just, I understand why you, where you found this money and the, I guess the, the message here is that, you know, when some of these cuts, if we're going to make them, you're now putting the town in trouble. Um, I just, some of these lines, like I said, the ones before the, the buyout, right, that's on a hope. The electric, heat, gas, that is, again, a hope. The, within the police department, right, the, you know, they didn't ask for it, there were no additional asks. In the, uh, DPW, they, right, the safety line, we're going to see what that's, what that actually is, that, those monies were put there, and I believe that was already cut during the budget season, for, during last year's budget season, correct me if I'm wrong? And it was originally one hundred thousand, we brought it down to fifty. So that's already been cut. The snow removal services, that's, that's a need. Um, I guess was there really nowhere else to cut in the budget? I know there are some additional positions that are being.
Do you want Dave to speak on the snow removal services?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. Just to elaborate a little bit, you know, in the spirit of some of the other things I talked about earlier. So that, that reduction right there, what you see is basically putting that line to default. Uh, that, that allocation there that we asked for this year was the amount of money that we went over in last year's snow removal services. That's for your contracted equipment. So it, it comes back full circle to what Dan was asking about, could we get more contracted equipment? Well, clearly, I'm already running over on that line, so I can't add to it, I can't recruit it because we don't pay enough to begin with. And now, with giving them an additional five dollars per hour per equipment, that delta's going to grow even more. And that was on a season that we only got forty-three inches of snow. The other changes we're seeing in the winter, too, is these durations are longer, people want us out there more. May not get a lot of accumulation, but we get a lot of freezing, sleet, rain, ice and snow. So it, and, and then when you have compounding that with, we, we're, we're struggling to stay at full staff or get bodies in, we end up being out there longer. We only got eighteen pieces of equipment out there. So the guys are having to work longer and go cover routes that other guys are out and whatnot. So those are all those challenges. So when, 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 when springtime comes, is it any wonder that we look at and say, well, you know, salt went up four dollars a ton, who knows what it's going to go up this next July? What if it comes out as a ten dollars a ton going into next winter for, uh, twenty-twenty-seven? That money's got to be made up somewhere. That likely means we're not going to pave a road somewhere. It's just not going to happen. So when we're trying to shift gears right now to where we have, James Danus is here, and we're starting to look at the, at the PCI, and we're trying to roll out a five-year program, if we keep managing in this manner, then the, the PCI is a fruitless effort because we're not going to be able to meet the demand of what the program's telling us. Now, if we roll out a program and we say, hey, here's the roads we plan to do in the next five years based on that index and what we have to allocate to it, but we're always robbing from that because we didn't have the right amount of money budgeted for salt, we didn't have the right amount of money budgeted for contracted equipment, we don't have enough employees out on the street, then we have to go find that somewhere, we have to go and find somewhere. We can't tell the labor pool, well, we're not going to pay your contractually obligated rate by the CBAs, we're not going to allow you to have a family plan versus a single plan, which is what Justin was talking about. Those things, they're concrete, we can't do anything with it. So it does mean that we'll pave less, or maybe not go upgrade as many street signs as we wanted to, or what, there are other things that we just won't be able to go and do because we have to make up for those overages that we were looking for.
I, I guess why weren't those things listed there then versus these? Because it sounds like if we cut these, then we'd cut that, and it, it seems like that's not accurate then.
Well, we could cut roadwork, right? We, we've done a lot, we, we've done a lot, we've made a lot of gains in areas where we're trying to push forward. Um, it's been some time since we've gotten those markers where we want for the roads to, if, if we start losing our road now.
I'm not advocating for any of these, I'm just asking for accuracy's sake.
Yeah.
It, it sounds like you're saying, if we cut those, we'd actually cut this, and so I just want to see accurately listed what would be cut.
Well, again, because snow is an unpredictable thing, right? Uh, the easy one up there is the removal of the snow equipment, right? So I came in, I made a push saying, hey, I think we should be providing, you know, sidewalk services for snow, for snow removal efforts. Uh, you know, this isn't the year, that's fine, I respect that decision, but that's the money that was in there to get that, those two pieces of equipment to put on there. So that is an easy real cut, that, that has been vetted out through this whole budget process. So that's an easy removal. Um, a, a, again, snow removal is a little bit of a gamble, we're saying that on other items up in this budget here. It's the roll of the dice on the electric and, and things of that nature, what the rates may or may not do, you know, eighteen months from now. So, um, i- if you go and cut that money from an area of like roadwork, then we definitively, if we have a winter where we don't spend all the money, we're not, then not able to go and say, well, we're going to pave more, uh, you know, we, we wouldn't do that. But if an emergency, town-wide emergency dictates that, well, then so be it.
Deb, I've got a question for you.
No, not for him. Just a question.
Oh, sorry. So I think Joseph was, are you still going, Joseph? You want to, you want to come back to?
I'm going to come back with an ask.
Okay.
At the end of this, um, but.
Did you?
I think just, just too much, but, you know, to my point, because, right, the budget committee did this exercise.
Yeah.
Last budget year, where we were asked, can you come up with four percent, a four percent decrease? And I believe, we didn't hit a four percent decrease without cutting staff.
Yeah.
That was the goal. I think we got three point eight percent, it was, um.
But that also included warrant articles.
That we, that was including warrant articles.
Well, this also could have included warrant articles, too. There was no direction that we couldn't have taken in that. And in all honesty, I think from, from that perspective, that actually takes into account future spending and doesn't affect services as much. So, um, I, I guess I expected this, the whole kind of same instruction, since that wasn't specifically given in that manner.
All right, this is going to sound really crazy.
We, we didn't answer Joe's questions, by the way.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
If we could just finish up on that.
Yeah.
So you asked why the cuts in the police department, if you look at the, the cuts in the police department, the ACO position, that's what was cut from the PD, other than the overtime, which is all directed to Old Home Day. Look down at the fire department, the police department has the largest budget in the town. Look down at the cuts in the fire department and overtime costs for them and, uh, on-call firefighters, it's a much higher number for a smaller budget. So the PD took actually less of a hit than all the other departments. And they have done a good job, as you indicated as well. And the chief had some choices on that, when we were looking at like four hundred and fifty thousand dollar cuts, we were looking at cutting a full-time patrolman's position that presently is not filled. And we consistently have two of those empty all the time. And that's because of normal rotation. For the number of people that you have, you're going to have positions that are filled. He filled four of those recently, as you know, they were in here, and so that's, he did really well with that, which is well above the average of other communities. So when I say I'm, I'm making those cuts, we try to make the, the minimal impact on that. He also made, I thought, a wise choice during the year, because you had three, um, part-time positions, you had an ACL, you had a conservation officer, and your maintenance officer, right? Yeah. So he decided to take one of those positions and combine the ACL with a conservation officer, and because of the traffic issues in the community, he dedicated one of those part-time, that block of hours to traffic enforcement, which has worked out, I guess, very, very well, in terms of enforcement out there, to, to reprioritize the resources he had to deal with an issue that we're all well aware of. And there wasn't additional funds that were appropriated for additional positions, but he used what he already had to do that. So I think, again, cuts are not, you don't want to do cuts unless you absolutely have to, and I've been asked to do that, and we're trying to minimize that impact on services.
You ready for now? Go ahead, yeah, go, yeah, go ahead.
So this is kind of a crazy question. So I would like to know how many non-contractual, non-human, not human, non-union, sorry, um, raises happened or are about to happen in the town this year, and how much is that dollar amount? Like, how much in total are people getting raises this year?
See, you have that, because we emailed that out.
I know. I'm asking for a total publicly. I'd like to know how many people, number one.
Why don't you just read off the sheet that's in front of you?
I don't know exactly where it is. Where is it?
It's probably not in front of you.
Yeah, I don't know where it is, and I don't understand why somebody can't just answer that question and, and have it said publicly.
So you want us to tell them, because you already know?
Yes.
Okay. So can you just read off the numbers for them?
I think, I think you're asking for non-rep employees.
Right, the spreadsheet.
Excuse me?
You're asking for non-rep employees, people who are not part of a union.
Correct, just people in, you know, you know, people who, department heads, who got.
Department heads are part of a union.
Okay.
Um, so your non-rep employees, you don't have that many.
Okay.
You have two of us.
Okay.
You have HR.
Okay.
The two employees in HR.
Yeah, ju- just read, read it off, because we, she wants them to hear that, and I want them to hear it as well. And I'll explain each one, so go ahead and read it off.
Well, that and.
The sheet that you sent out, pull it up and, and just tell these folks.
So while Justin's getting that up, I'll just let you know how many we have. So it's me and Justin who are non-rep.
Okay.
Um, you have Tara and Sherry, our HR department, who's non-rep. Um, Deputy Town Manager Kelly Karen is non-rep, and Tanya, um, the executive assistant, non-rep. And we're non-rep because of the confidential information that we have access to. So we are not part of a bargaining agreement, we are labored or our contract is under the non-rep contract.
So I would like to know that area, how much we spent, or we're spending, about to spend, in raises for that small group of people?
Deb, is there, uh, we also have two attorneys or?
Oh, yes, we have two prosecutors over at, um, the PD who are part non-rep.
So that, how many people and how much money?
Yes, and the library is technically non-rep, but they are under their library personnel contract.
Well, that's separate, I'm not even counting the library, because there's supposed to be a separate government. I'm talking about.
Yep.
The town side of it, so.
Yep, he's pulling, he's doing the math.
That's fine, you guys can ask other questions.
Um, does anyone else have any other questions?
I do. So what is, Justin, you might be able to give a better answer on this, what is the majority of the nine hundred thousand is over default?
Those would be contracts that we've entered into, so they would be wages, so all your bargaining agreements, those have step increases every year. In the back of the union agreements, you can see every year how they move a step, and then the wages move.
So that's not part of the default?
That is part default.
No, I'm saying beyond the default, the nine hundred thousand is beyond the default.
That would be, oh, like new contracts that have been entered into.
That are? Which are those? That are equating to the nine hundred thousand?
You have a couple IT contracts, um, we, we could have to go department by department to see, but default would be anything that you have a contract for.
Right, I know about the default part, I meant about the nine hundred thousand, beyond default. What was the major drivers for that?
Yep. So a lot of it is IT, so contracts that have been entered into.
Do you have a dollar amount on that?
Yep, so I believe on one of the spreadsheets, there's a column that has your proposed over-under default on your, um, in the budget book, so it will show you what the dollar amount for each department is over default.
Right, yep.
So you should have access to that, it should be one.
Right, I, I guess I was hoping that there wouldn't have been a, a summary of our major cost drivers of beyond default. That way it would have been easier for people at home, too.
Yeah, no, it's just in every department spreadsheet, so we can definitely get that.
Dan, go ahead.
I'll wait for that one.
Okay.
When do you want to?
When do you wanna...
Oh, I can get Dave around. Dave's here.
Dave's, Dave's right there.
Dave, can you come up for a second? I'll start with your department. All right, so you said in removing the snow equipment, that pertains to that snow blower attachment that you were talking about.
Right.
Okay, so what's the engine, engine purchase for what?
Engine purchase?
Yeah, it said engine purchase.
That might've been a typo on my part.
Okay, 'cause it said remove snow equipment and engine purchase.
It was the snow blower and the...
It was the snow blower and the V plow, is what that 28,900...
Okay.
Oh, okay, I see where it says, yeah, that's, no, it's a V plow and a snow blower attachment.
So can you explain to me the work safety reduction of $14,000? How is that gonna impact the safety of our employees?
Yeah, excellent. So that line, essentially, that line, we started with last year, or just in July, is when our first experience with that line is. And this is for higher-end, essentially mostly for higher-end detail officers. If something large comes up where we need to set up a temporary lane closure or something to that effect, we can actually use it to rent equipment, like a temporary traffic signal if we had to, you know, do alternating traffic or things of that nature. But essentially, that line, it was derived from how many hours we do with flagging. And then, to Joseph's point, we did then scale that down through the budget process last year. And I started looking at, this is a tough one, but we started looking at how much did we utilize it so far since July? Now, again, we had some retirees that hit and a lot of, you know, we were down people, so we weren't doing as much work out in the roads as we perhaps would like to have. So we were not having the experience that we thought we were gonna have with that line. We're just looking at it a little bit more conservatively and trying to forecast it out, so we figured we could scale that down a little bit more, and that's exactly what that $14,000 represents.
So, to still provide that service of flagging, have you looked at hiring a flagging company, contract that out? I mean, you see a lot of construction crews that do that.
Yes, we do. And they hire them out in a level that, you know, there's three, four, five times sometimes people out there. Again, we are flaggers. In my experience and from what I notice, you know, our crews always feel safest when we have the best out there. And Lanier PD is certainly the best. They provide a good level of service, and they're available to us. And so that's what we would prefer, to make sure that our work zone is the absolute safest possible, as we could. Could we get, you know, some flaggers as well and a flagging service? Maybe on some things, we could certainly explore that. But again, this line is something new to our department, and we're kinda working through it and seeing what. And that's why I felt comfortable with, you know, taking that down a little bit more. And then as we amp up, where we get more geared up with it, that, you know, we'll see where it goes. If we can get to full staff and stay full staff. And again, with some of the things that James is working on, we plan on doing a lot, a little bit more in-house projects and not using contracted services for that, for construction reasons. And so we'll be out in the roads a little bit more, and that's where we use the police officer details.
That's just one line I'd like for you to look at, is, you know, maybe look at contract services for that. What kind of a savings it would be, if you can get back to me on that.
Yeah, I get it. There's, you know, so a lot of the times, you'll see the flaggers from Continental, right? Those are their people.
Yeah.
Those flaggers, excellent. They're their people. You know why they're their people? Because they had problems with contracted flagging services. And they're, you know, we don't wanna replace a problem with a problem, so. But I appreciate that, and I will look into it.
And how can you decrease the snow removal? I'm having a hard time with that one.
Again, why that cut, that specific cut? Again, it was our overage on our line, so just looking at it from a default perspective, we're gonna do what we need to do in order to keep the road safe, all right? If we have a bad winter and we go over that account by that much, then we're gonna look at areas of work that we're not gonna do. Use the fuel illustrations, signs, paving, or whatever that we're gonna have to do to make that up. If you tell me that we're, you know, go ahead and cut $200,000 out of roadwork, can't very well do that roadwork. That's a decision that's made not by a force of nature. So, in my opinion, you know, that's where you make the cut. And if we're forced into that position by what Mother Nature throws at us, even though we know we're not budgeted accurately for what our experiences are, and we're looking at our annual averages, I just looked at it from the default approach. If we're gonna be as a default, we're gonna be there anyway.
And while it's a cut to that line, it is actually still an increase from last year's budgeted amount.
Right.
Not by much, but it's still an increase from the, I believe, $50,000 is what we have budgeted in there this year.
Mm-hmm. That was the, that arranged, that arranged number was the overage of last year's budget.
So it's still an increase of $7,212.
Right.
Just so you know, Justin, where I'm going with this, is that PD was a perfect example, all right? They were trying to play catch-up, because for years, line items were underfunded, underfunded. And I don't wanna see us going back to that, being underfunded. I've seen it, living in this town for a long time, for over 40 years, that you have, all of a sudden, we have a bad winter, or, and it's like, PD, fire, pony up money, we need more salt. Okay, we need more sand. And that's hard.
It is, it's difficult, and I understand the concern. And look at, we, over the last four budget cycles, we made those tough decisions to get the salt budget up to 290. And last year, I was feeling great. I'm like, hey, look at that. You know, our average usage, we're under it. And I think even then, I could be wrong, but I don't think we quite hit the 290. I think we spent 282 or something to that effect. So that was great. This year, $4 ton increase, you know? That's a tough one to make up, and who knows where it's gonna be next year. So our trend is, we're falling behind again. I understand it. You know, people want their smooth roads in the summertime, they want them paved. They also want them black and smooth in the wintertime, too. It's a delicate balance. So, you know, if the trend continues with the way the snow accumulation comes down, but again, like I was saying, you know, the demand to have the roads safer for longer periods of time and the longer duration of events that we're having, you know, these black ice events and squalls and things that hit like that, you know, Saturday, this Saturday is a perfect example, okay? And I had this conversation with a few friends of mine from the, brothers from the Legion, American Legion. And Saturday is an absolute perfect example. Starts flurrying, we're looking at it, we're monitoring it, we're starting to hear about squalls. We know what just happened last week, a little bit north of here, up in Hooks, it's 73 vehicles off the road. Had to make the call, get the equipment in, because if the snow squall hits, it's a Saturday morning. We know a lot of people out there doing their Christmas shopping, people are out looking for their Christmas trees. We had to come in, and unfortunately, we had to do a round of salt. You know, so we were in four, five hours, used $10,000 worth of salt, X amount of dollars thrown in overtime, vehicles, the contracted equipment and whatnot. And by that afternoon, I'm volunteering selling Christmas trees over there for the Legion, and it's 38 degrees out, sunny and warm and beautiful. And it's just a matter of a few hours of people who just drive a little bit more cautiously and go a little bit more slower. We have all-wheel radial tires and all-wheel steering and all this stuff. And we're still trying to go faster and faster and faster, and want the roads black. And, you know, it seems like a waste of money, but imagine if we didn't, and we had accidents everywhere, and that cost, that's, that cost bears out on everybody that doesn't drive reasonable. So, it's one of those things.
Okay.
Good.
I had to get it.
Justin, I got this. So, I can talk to you folks out there, because that's who this is directed to. So, we start at the top, the town manager went from $170,000 to $187,931. That's the change. The assistant town manager is now the deputy town manager, went from 128 to 146. The executive assistant went from 67 to 93. The human resource director went from 133 to 140. The finance director went from 143 to 162, and the controller went from 103 to 120. Those were the changes that they wanted me to tell you about, that they're aware of.
I couldn't hear you at all over here, I'm sorry.
Well, you have it, though, so you know this already, so you have it.
I'm sorry?
You have this, so it's a matter of communicating to them, like you wanted me to do, which I just did.
Yep, and what was that total dollar amount? I couldn't write it down or quick enough.
So I have a total of 120 for those, and it goes to 131 if you include the other two non-rep employees with the police department.
So it was 100 and...
120.
20, and that was for what, five, six people?
Seven.
Seven people.
Do you wanna know why? Because that should be the next question. I know that you do.
No, I'm looking...
So...
Oh, sorry.
He wants to know why.
I'd like to know what the average percentage is. So what was that increase on average for everybody? Well, how much did they get? Like, was it 20%, 5%, 6%?
16.8 on average.
16.8, and then the union guys only got 3 to 8%?
No.
No?
No.
Good, you can help me with this, 'cause I'm not math.
The now director of admin services got a 25% increase. I assume that's related to the change in job title and description. The finance payroll coordinator got an 8.28% increase. And the finance assistant got, again, a change in title, 11.6%.
So personally, I would like to see, maybe within the next day, the job descriptions. I'd like to see the old one and the new one, and what's changed, and what justifies that rate, those increases, at that such high amount, at this point in time, where we sit with, you know, do we get rid of fire, police, and safety? Or do we take care of these guys? Can we do it more incrementally in steps at certain amounts?
You should've.
Over the year, I mean, it seems to me that we're taking a big chunk.
Yes.
You don't have the big chunk, really, 'cause, and no offense, these people do a great job, they're doing a lot of stuff, and they're taking on more responsibility and should be taken care of. But it should've been happening on a more normal kind of increment, year after year, not just a boom, here you go.
Which is why we're doing...
When we have what we're trying to cut. It just, it bothers me to look at, you know, cutting fire, police, DPW, but these are emergency services needed for these people, so that's why I was looking there.
And in order for those emergency services to work, all these support services have to be able to be there to function and be able to provide that support. HR, finance, that has to happen to make that happen, otherwise...
I understand, we're not saying to get rid of them. I'm saying to make it a more palatable steps.
I don't think that's possible, 'cause, correct me if I'm wrong, this money's already spent.
What?
These increases have occurred, yes.
So it's already spent, it's not...
Yeah, we can't just cut that out all of a sudden.
I just don't understand why we didn't have it.
Well, you haven't asked. If you let me finish, you might get an answer to that question.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, sir.
So, let him finish.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah.
So the reason why I did that is, as you know, we're undergoing a wage classification process right now. Because your wages, depending upon what they are, are not, they're not competitive. We have two things that we need to do. We need to retain the good quality people that we have, and we need to recruit new people to fill these jobs. We were forced, as we were walking into this winter, this first storm, with being down four, basically a third of our plow truck workforce. Something needed to be done. I took those steps, and we didn't even talk about those yet. I took those steps to increase those salaries, to make sure that when we brought people in laterally, if you had 10 years of service working for another DPW department, you would start those people out as a one-year employee. You would not credit them for that service, that experience, that ability to do that. We have now done that, and we've been able to fill most of our positions. But even now, we still are short two, and we don't have a whole lot of applicants to be able to fill those, because we are not competitive in the marketplace to do that. And we wanna retain the workers that we have invested time in, we have invested money in, that other people are gonna take advantage of. There are communities in this state, especially when it comes to these two folks over here, where you can't find finance people. Literally, there is nobody to do their books. That is horrifying to me, and should be to you as well. And your folks are way underpaid compared to what they are, when you look at what their other communities are paying these people. And we didn't talk about the DPW director, too, let's not forget that one. So when we looked at what the DPW director is making here, it was $126,000 a year. We hired a deputy DPW director, that engineering position we couldn't fill for three years, at $125,000. So the person running the place is making $1,000 more. If I look at the DPW directors in other communities, they're all making up in the mid-150s. I increased his salary to 148, which is the top of the range we have in the contract. And if you look at his job compared to his job and what the fire chief should be, they're making 160s, but they have the same level of responsibility and duties that the other department heads have. Which is why a wage classification system is presently underway to do that. So the changes I made still are not competitive yet, still are not doing that.
Well, I also think when you make these changes to be competitive, everything has to be considered. Like you said, time of being here, you know, we pay 100% health insurance. Does, do the other places pay 100% health insurance? Are they getting full dental? Are they getting, you know, what are they getting for benefits? Like DPWs, you know, the union, the five hours of overtime. Those kinds of things have to be looked at when you look at the salary number, to make sure that it's not just a salary number, because it's not. There's a lot that comes into play.
I would agree. And as you know, before I got here, the council made some of those changes with the unions. They went from 100% to 95%. That was the first step to do that. The other unions, and we've had this discussion as well, I'm telling you, you're looking at 5% and then 10% the year after that, you're gonna have to have more skin in the game. We cannot continue to be able to pay these increases the way they are.
And that was my point of this whole question. We can't, it's not sustainable.
Sure, I agree.
And I mean, it's not because I don't like somebody, or I don't think they're doing a good job, but we as a community have to figure out how we're gonna be able to afford this kind of living, cost of living for these people. And I'm not saying they shouldn't get paid a good amount. And my point is, but what's a good amount? How can we do that when we have people who are losing their houses or not even getting insurance because they're paying taxes? I mean, there are situations out there that are really critical, and I don't think we're looking at everything totally.
Well, I think we are, because I looked at what those other communities are paying competitively, and the level of service. Dave just told you how many years of service he has. These other people, one of them has three years of service, and he's making 155 in a neighboring community right beside us.
But is he getting, is he getting 100% health insurance?
I don't know what, I don't know what they pay for that.
We don't know. That comes at a cost.
He doesn't get 100% health insurance either.
Oh, what does he get, 90?
No, 95 now.
95. Well, I mean, we don't know what they're getting, whether it's 60, 70, 80, we don't know. So that's an unknown.
So when it comes to, why did I do that? As I just told you, I need to retain the quality people. If I lose one of these finance people, trying to make up for that, even the time it takes just to do that, we are at a significant loss. It's gonna cost a lot more money at the end of the day.
I understand what you're saying. I do.
Let me finish what I'm saying.
We're saying all of this, we have to raise all this money. How are we, as a town, and this is a question for all these counselors here and the budgeting, how are we going to be able to justify being able to do all of this, get everything we need, maintain all these buildings when we're falling behind right now? How? What are the plans to grow revenues?
So let me know when you're done, so I can...
Acting the heck out of people.
Let me know when you're done, so I can finish what I had to say.
Good.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, by me?
No, please.
Thank you. Okay, so as I indicated, we looked at each of these positions to see what other communities were paying, and also what level, how many years of service those people have. And again, the increases I made still don't put us where we need to be to be competitive. And if I lose one of those people, there's a significant cost in service reduction when I do that. So the incremental cost of paying them more money is a lot less than losing those people. And to your answer in terms of the long term, you may have less people doing this work. That's just the reality, and that's what other communities are facing as well. So that's, every community's dealing with this. Nobody has the ability to keep up with these insurance rates. And that's why we're making the changes we are, and I can't do it all in one day. Though, for instance, if I take a family plan and I go from 5% down to 10%, that's a $4,000 additional cost for that employee. The employees in the lower range, they're not gonna, they're gonna, that's more than what they're gonna get for an increase. So that's why that has to be done over a period of time. We were fortunate this year, the increases were relatively low, 3%, 2%, which almost never happens. Usually they're double digits, and you folks have seen that, everybody else has as well. So that's what we're faced with.
And I'm glad we're having this conversation, because it needs to be heard. Not just by, you know, one counselor, or two counselors, or department head. It needs to be heard what the state truly is of the town, and what actions we have to take. That was my point of bringing this whole thing up, was to have this brought out and put out here for everybody to hear where we stand. Sorry.
Well, one, I'll say is not one or two councils have heard this. All of us have been told about what the wages are and how hard it is to hire people, and where things are going employment-wise. It's not one or two of us have heard this. So that's just complete misnomer.
You heard the whole story he said to you, just now?
He has told us this.
He told you and maybe other people, but maybe not everybody.
He has told all five of us.
How do you know that, Ted? How do you know that? I'd like to know.
Well, we did, actually. We had...
No, but I wanna know, I mean...
Okay, let's...
Kinda weird.
Okay, go ahead, sir, and then we'll get back on the budget.
Yeah, let's get back to the budget.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think that's a good point.
Okay. Sean, I cut you off, you had a question?
Yeah, a couple follow-ups on this. So when we were going through the raises, there's a town manager raise in there?
Mm-hmm.
You gave yourself a raise?
No, you did.
We did?
We had this discussion, if you remember, when I presented the budget.
No, if I did, I'm forgetting.
So it's important, and I think this is, this is a good example, because this is...
Can I chime in real quick?
Wait, just before you do. So, the council made a decision. Your previous town manager, his contract was $140,000 a year.
Oh, okay.
Just let me finish, please. $140,000 a year. You went and advertised for a position in $180,000 a year. So, and credit to former Councilor Farrell, he negotiated that. In fact, Ted, you were with it...
Yeah, I understand where this came from. It isn't you gave yourself a raise. This was when we hired you.
Right.
That amount goes up in the budget, so that's why, no.
But my point is, you felt the need to do that, because you had to compete in the marketplace for someone to fill this job. So the council made that, so exactly what you did is the same thing that I am doing. So anyway, there's that, and then go ahead, Justin.
Okay.
I was just gonna emphasize that, at the time of the budget, there were several positions that show a significant increase there that weren't filled. So they came in lower, and the town manager being one, where we were able to somewhat account for it based on what was posted at, but we still were lower than what was initially budgeted.
Yes, it's, the confusion comes in when you're listed as things that have gone up. That's not something that's happened since, the list we had was since you've been here. So that's where I was confused, seeing that in there, going, oh, I understand what happened there.
I mean, it essentially is because what we had budgeted for this year was the 140, but yet we hired them at a different rate.
I fully get it.
And the request was for the whole department?
I understand.
So we just gave all positions.
I get it. Second question. So the town admin, did we hire at 70 and go up to 90 since we've hired her?
Yes.
So...
No, no.
Well, she has a salary increase, too, during the year. Go ahead.
We hired her closer to 72, 73.
Okay.
And the 90 you have to keep in mind is with Cora and Merritt from this year and next.
Okay. Okay, so that's, that's not an increase from the previous position. That's a, she's been in the position and got a raise since she's been in the position.
Correct.
So.
So for fiscal year '26, this current budget, it was budgeted at $67,038. That is not what we hired the individual at.
Okay. So if we hire someone and they take a job, I don't feel like they're, especially since it's been a couple of months, they're in danger of leaving or in danger of being unhappy with the position that they just took.
You, you don't?
No, I, I don't think people just, just start a new job and then go, you know what, I need a significant raise more to stay here. That, that seems strange to me.
Dave just had someone leave in two days.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. True, true. Okay.
So unfortunately, and again, you, you folks know this, it's to find trained qualified people is challenging. And you're going to lose them because what's going to happen is they're looking over their shoulder and someone says, I want to pay you a little bit more, come work for me.
Yes.
And they do. And then, then there's a significant degradation in service between the time, that happens when they leave us. We try to hire somebody else, get them up to speed. And as you know, Tanya is still trying to figure out the job. It's been, she's been on the job a couple of weeks more than I have, trying to figure it out. So all of that, you have to factor all that in, their ability to do that work, figure it out, make mistakes, do those sorts of things because they're new. And do we want to start that over again? I, I don't.
I guess never in my 20-plus years of managing have I generally thrown a raise out months after someone started. But I'll keep going. So like with finance, and I say that because they're visible, they've worked here for years. So I don't, I mean, yes, it's, and I think they do wonderful work and I do think they do deserve more, but it's just, I guess part of where my angst with this comes in is 132,000, as we're talking about 400,000 that is put into default that we have not seen. So we get to kick around old home day fireworks and things like that. But this happened to us. It didn't, we didn't decide this, we didn't go over painstakingly in this. We're, we've got $50 lines we're going over and we've got, this would be, you know, 25% of what we're looking for, a, a little over. And so that, it's just being in on those decisions that when we're, we're doing this, it's like we've made half the picture and half the picture is decided for us. And so I guess that's why I'm, I, I might, you know, I don't do it often, but I'm agreeing with Deb on when she brought up this point. It's, it, it doesn't sit right with me. And just, you know, yes, I get there's a market and there's other communities, but yep, we're London area. London area leads the way. We've done things a certain way. If we just come in and go, you know, in three months, I'm going to try to get everybody up to par around what I see the average, that's not a good evaluation, I feel like, of the entire situation. But, okay, that's all I've got on it.
Go ahead, Dan.
First of all, Justin, finance, I want to say thank you for what you guys do. I hear from my son all the time, don't know why you do it, because you can make more in the private sector. All right, you're doing a lot of time in here. I understand what town manager is saying. I've brought this up in the past. Why are we losing people? Okay, and we lose people and I'm looking at it differently now because I know when I was working here, 28 years, I stayed with, with this department. I saw a lot of people stay. This new generation, they don't do that. They look at what can we make down the road somewhere else? And they'll go somewhere, other place. So I understand trying to retain people. It's, it's a difficult situation, but it's also more expensive, I think. If we're going to lose people and we're going to start training people all over again, it's going to cost us more money. So I am one of the few up here that's saying, you know, we need to try to retain our people as much as we can. I know it's difficult. People go in and they vote these salaries in, they vote these benefits in. We've negotiated them. I mean, when I worked here, people would ask, say to me, my pay was, was really not that great, Sean. And they'd say, why do you stay? I mean, do better in your business. And I said, benefits, retirement. Benefits and retirement. And I stay because of that, you know? Unfortunately, this new generation, when I talk to the people, they're like, they couldn't care less about, you know, retirement. They're looking at tomorrow. What can we make tomorrow? I'll go to Massachusetts. We, we hear from the chief over there that says, we lose people to Massachusetts because they can make more, you know? So that's my two cents on that. And I got other things we want to talk about on the budget.
I just want to talk about what Dan's talking about.
Sure, yeah, go ahead.
So you're talking about police, which is different than the, the departments we're talking about that got the raises. These people have all been with us for a long time. I don't know if any of them were unhappy with their job. I don't know if any of them were thinking about leaving. The only two that I can see that are new is planning department head, which has been here three years, and Tara, who's only been here six months, like the manager and the town manager. Everybody else has been here for a bit. And if they were unhappy, why weren't they bringing this forward all along, year after year, asking for small raises, asking for more benefits? Why is it that all of a sudden it's this, like, we're not talking a little jump, you're talking 16%? That's a huge jump. And that also includes, you know, the full insurance and all of that other stuff. So that's my point. It's not the police. It's not a contracted union thing. It's separate. It's a, whatever they are, I forget the name already. But I, I just wish that it had been happening at a more manageable rate over years. So the question falls as to, are we talking to these people as a council? Maybe we have to do it as the manager? I don't know if the old managers did this or not. I don't know if they actually sat down with HR and these guys and say, are you happy in your job? What can we do? I mean, I have no idea if any of that was being done. And if it hasn't been, then there's a problem with that department.
So I agree with councillor Paul, this should have been done over the years, but it wasn't. That's why.
But I don't understand if it had been an emergency or not. Was it an emergency? Was Justin so unhappy that he was going to leave tomorrow, that he wouldn't be happy saying, okay, I understand the situation of the budget and I'm not meaning to speak to you, I'm just using you as an example. Sorry, Justin. Because I, Justin knows how I feel about him. He does an amazing job. He's been here for a long time and he's, he's responsive, he's due diligent, and I'm not saying he's not deserving of it. But where's happened, where'd the breakdown happen of, you know, why aren't, why isn't that happening? Who dropped the ball? What department dropped the ball?
So I don't know that because I wasn't here probably six months ago. So you'd have to answer.
The department runs that.
You'd have to answer that question because I wasn't here.
Yeah.
So the other thing is, I don't wait till emergency occurs. I deal with it before it becomes an emergency. That's what we should be doing and that's what I've done. I've taken a proactive step to do that and that's why I have done what I have done. And I don't have any questions about that it was the right thing to do.
I'm not saying it wasn't the right thing. I'm just wishing it was done.
I agree, it should have been.
In smaller bites rather than ramming the apple down the.
But it wasn't.
Down the throat.
But that doesn't mean, I guess, jump up and do it down. To Deb's point, like, nobody in this community has got a 16% raise pretty much in the last year probably. I think people are, as we're trying to help people out and people are struggling with some things, to jump it up that much, it could have been stepped, yep, people didn't do that before, but that doesn't mean it has to all be done at once this year. 132,000 is a lot and it's a visibility issue frankly. Like, we, again, we're debating all these other little things and we, we just get this unilateral decision.
The most important thing we have is our people. That is the most important resource that I have here to provide services to our citizens. Without that, we can't do anything. All the vehicles would sit there with no staff in them.
Yeah, they're all important. I understand that.
Right, so I made it.
That doesn't mean we pay them $500,000 each. Like, there's, there's a limit. There's a, there's a way to go about this, to do this in a manner that it, it spreads out the cost effectiveness for the town. We can't have everything we want in this budget. There's a lot of things we want in this budget. There's some things the firefighters want with, with new positions. There's a lot of other new things. And they're not all getting what they want right now. So on this, it seems like you got what you wanted right now.
Did I?
While everybody else doesn't. And that's troublesome to me.
So no one got a $500,000 raises you just didn't get?
No, no, I know. I'm being, I'm even over-exaggeratory to make a point because.
Well, you are exaggerating. That's, that's the issue.
With, with hiring people, you know, I, I've had, had some underpaid people. I've had some overpaid people. But there are people who will chase money and they'll go to the top of the line paying job. And those are people who don't stay for the culture. They don't stay because it's a good town. And the second they're paid $10,000 more, they move to the next position and that happens. You can't just always try to buy everybody. You got to create a good environment. You've got to have a place people want to work. And we have that in this town, which is why we retain great talent like Justin and Sarah over there. Because we have a great place to work and it's the intangibles of it. You can go chase money elsewhere and work in a less, less competitive environment. And I'm not even disagreeing with the raises. I'm just saying it's a big chunk at once.
Right, so I'm not trying to do it all at once. I've made changes, but this, as I told you before, it still doesn't put you in a competitive place. When we looked at the, the salaries of what other people in the similar positions with less years of service are making, we're still not there. So I didn't try to do it all at once.
But the best predictive behavior is predictive past behavior. And last year we were doing it and we were doing it for 16% less. Would we retain all those people? No. Would we have lost all of them? Probably not. Would we have lost 75% of them? Probably not. I don't know that this was a necessary step to retain all those people.
So Sean, can I add something to that? I look at the three of you who were involved in hiring the town manager. And you saw what the talent was out there, what, what you had out there. And it went from 140 to 170, all right? Because in order to attract the best that you wanted, you had to go up on per salary. Instead of saying to him, hey, it's 140. You probably wouldn't have gotten him for 140.
Actually, no, we, it didn't really go about that way. When we actually seen, saw his qualifications, that justified that to fill that position, which is a one-person position. The amount of town managers, it's a very rare position. It's a lot more rare than any other position in this town. So yes, that justified, and I'm not saying it doesn't for, on a case-by-case basis. I'm saying when we have this amount and it all adds together, I question that each and every one of those cases equaled that situation. Because it's a lot and 16% is a lot. He wasn't already employed here. That also makes a difference. Because when people are employed here, they're either generally happy or they're not speaking up, one of the two. And you, you can give people a 5, 6% raise, which is more than other people are getting, and they're going to be happy that you value them and moving them up. I don't have to give somebody a 16% raise to let them know their value. If, if generally if an employee is making 10% more than he's making last year, they are probably really happy with that amount. I don't think they're going to go, well, you know, I could get more on the open market and you just gave me a 10% raise amount. That, I've not really ran into that situation before and I've, I've done this a long time.
The thing I, I have an issue with Sean and it, it's just when you talk to people in business and they'll say, I lost employee X and he was making X amount of dollars. I had to go out and hire somebody at more than what I was paying that person. I'm paying more now than what I had and I had experience. I had, you know, good employee. That's, that's a concern I have. That's.
Yeah, I understand all that.
I worry about that stuff, you know?
And you should.
I think about that, so.
And you should. And that's why there needs to be a more vibrant way, a more, a better culture for the people who work here to be able to know what the steps are and where they're going and what they're getting. And I, I don't know if that exists in this town. There's not, I don't believe that culture exists.
But I think there's a communication that was broken for years on this and I think he's trying to correct it.
I understand that he's trying to correct it and I applaud him for correcting it, but I just wish it wasn't in such a big chunk because when I look at cutting and cutting and trying to figure things out, it's, you know, just kind of.
And it, it would be nice if we could step it up like we do with the rest of the budget. This seems off-kilter from the rest of the budget that we're spending. It seems like a, a lot more of correcting versus what we're doing to help out other departments in this town.
We told, he was told to go find $400,000 and that's what he did, all right? He might not like the 400.
I don't like the 400.
Okay, so, so to me, I, my thought would have been, would have been to go into each councillor and say, you want to cut 400? Bring a list and give it to him and, and let him think about it and see what, what he, what his thoughts are on it.
So Dan, and, and.
And that's just my thought.
No, I know, and, and I'm kind of going by what you've said before and I've had this feeling and I, I had the feeling and I, I've said it to the town manager himself. I feel like, as, as you said before, we've paid him a lot of money to do a job. We go through this budget season and we, last year, we were like, okay, how about 10,000 off this? How about that? We have all these questions and everything else. I thought, you know what, make it more simpler? Let's take a look at it, kind of figure out where we want to be. Ask the guy in charge to go, hey, why don't you come back with us to your recommendations? We can go over them and see where, where it lands and then do it that way. Instead of trying to piecemeal this, have some kind of together plan about it. So that's where this all came about, is to come back with the recommendations.
Are we going to continue on that part?
Yeah, we're going to continue. This is, this is budget discussion.
All right.
Do you have something, Justin? Justin?
Oh, my, my two requests.
Yeah, please.
So I have two information requests and if this could be disseminated to the budget committee and I guess any of the council wants them as well. So this would be a breakdown of the, of some of the lines in the budget for FY '25 actuals, FY '26 budgeted, FY '27 department budgeted, the FY '27 town manager budget and the FY '27 default. So just within the, throughout the entire budget, those that are listed at the account description of management services, supplies, general expenses, general expenses supplies, department expense supplies, office supplies. I know this next one's going to sound weird, but that's how it's listed. Office supplies, supplies.
Those are supplies for the supplies.
Yeah. Miscellaneous and any account description that contains miscellaneous in it. So I just want to see what those breakdowns have been over the past three years because there's, right, there's lots of money in those lines. And while we go department by department and, right, we ask you, you know, X amount is in this. I would like to see its change, one, it's changed over time and two, how it's allocated for this year's budget, how the town manager wants it allocated, how the department head wants it allocated and how the default, how it's allocated in the default budget. The second ask, oh, yes.
What department has an account line with miscellaneous in it?
Let me, maybe I was wrong and I just written that as a note for myself.
Okay, because I know we have one with revenue, but outside expenditure shows, I don't believe we do. And if so, I'd like to get rid of that.
Yeah. And then the second one, so again, this will be for FY '25 actuals. The FY '26 approved budget, department FY '27 budgeted, the town managers budget for FY '27 and then the default FY '27 budget. This would be for every single position in town, union or not, and just their position. And I'd like to see just how those have changed over the past three years. And I know you're taking notes too cheap, so did you have a question?
No, no, right now for us.
Okay, and again, I just want to see the changes, just for, right, because right, we're talking about both union and non-union. But I think for our purposes, and if other people had requested that, just how those have changed over the past, well, not the past three years, but you know, FY '25 to, for FY '27. So those are the, I guess, just, I mean, if you can, before the new year so we can take a look in the beginning of January and take a look at some of these lines and maybe there's room there within these lines. Because I know I, in the, when we talked about it in the past, last year and we're going through, that's, all we saw were these chunks and we're like, okay, well, let's take some from this chunk, some from that chunk, not knowing what we were subtracting from the budget. Exactly. So I think for, especially for the budget committee's identification, for us to be able to take a look and maybe there's something that we see. It might not be $400,000, but it might be something that we're able to pick up on and take a look at. Dan has a lot of questions.
Can I please go?
Yeah.
I've been waiting so long to say something.
Just wave your hand.
No, it's okay, it's not your fault, it's my fault. Okay, so to go, not to go back into the negative um atmosphere, but I do wanna ask um if there are significant increases in staffing or staff salaries, I would, we would love to know. We didn't find this out, we had to dig for this. So that's my request for next time, cuz apparently we're warned now that this will happen again. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, just flag me down or general questions? Before Dan, go ahead.
Well, Dan can go first then I'll. Dennis? Go ahead. No, no, I'd I'd love to hear what he has to say first.
Alright. Uh general government. Uh I have a concern, just as um he stated earlier, the reduction of heating oil services, electric services, gasoline services. These are markets that are volatile and prices go up more than down. I guess I would like to know, do we have an energy savings program in in town here? Uh years ago, the school district initiated that and the school district had an individual um that checked to make sure our buildings were ener- their buildings were energy efficient. They saved a lot of money throughout uh the school district. Some small things like um, I remember being at the school and Bob Lees was the person doing it. And he'd come out and he'd tell the teachers, you can't have those little refrigerators, they're not energy efficient, they use up a lot of electricity. Cut that out, cut this out, cut that out. Um better lighting, LED lighting, um sh- make sure the lights were off in buildings and stuff like that.
To answer that question, Dan, the utility committee um actually had ever so us come here and do do that in a a whole evaluation. And I believe that have have they had that proposal yet? And I don't know if they've developed yet, but I know they did it.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
So they've got the information from it, they're working on developing the proposal, it's kind of a longer term thing.
It it is in the process, Dan, just so you know.
So things I'm looking at, for example, is like this building's, I mean, this room's not being used. Now, the temperature should be down at a certain degree.
It it is, I can assure. We were in here working on Sunday, it was sixty-two degrees in here, a little chilly.
Things like that that I'm looking at. And and I think the PD does that, when we did the tour over there, uh they talked about making sure that, you know, lights were off in certain rooms that were not being utilized. So.
And then Dave has been changing the windows out, as you know, we heard here in town, all some of them had split. They don't have the the argon gas cuz they split, the seam was split and he replaced a number of those, so. Uh there is a program, uh i- i- it's not a place where you go look at, here's the program, it lists it all, but there's a whole number of things that have been done in all those areas in the past here and they continue to go on to reduce energy costs.
I I know that Paul Ramsey was working on the utility committee, so when that report does come out, I'm sure, yeah, absolutely.
And and when I was on the utility committee, um Dave came up and did a great presentation on how like the schools have this system that notifies you when things aren't working properly.
Yep.
And then they can come down and fix it immediately. Um it was a great software or system that they wanted to put in here. It tells you, oh, these lights aren't going off, this heat, this thermostat, this air conditioner is, you know, not cooling the way it's supposed to. And Dave, remember you did that presentation for us? It was really cool and I don't know if that's been implemented or not.
I know that last, was it last week, when we had the meeting, Patrick brought up the fact about uh PD saving X amount of dollars on on lighting.
You did it.
And so, you know, I you add all that nu- those numbers together and.
Yeah.
Alright, my next one is.
So this this just this one needs to be done, for instance, today, I was looking out my window and there's water dripping down outside, right? But it was twenty-one degrees outside, so we should not be melting snow on the roof. We should be, that heat should be staying in here, so that's one of those things that's gonna have to be looked at. This buil- I don't know what the age this building is, well, it's on the plaque out there, but it's it's been a while and it probably, the energy standards have changed. So that's something we need to take a look at because we're obviously losing heat out of the roof cuz it's melting the snow.
I I think Dave has it already.
Do you want Phil to?
I do.
Phil, do you mind coming up? Please, sir, uh.
It's fire department time.
Dan has. No. How are you, sir?
I'm good, how are you?
So Phil, you and in your overtime salaries, you have two lines. One is thirty-two thousand, six seventy-two, the other one is nine thousand, thirty. What is the difference between these two?
Those are two different, one is an administrative line, uh and one is the firefighting line. And so again, last year, we talked ad nauseam about overtime and how much it was and and so we're doing well right now, but I need two years' worth of of data to be able to tell you where it falls out with a full roster, right? So projecting based off of this and coming in at the default number, we think will be alright, but I don't have that. I don't have two years, I don't have two cycles worth of of a full roster to tell you exactly, so.
So when talking with uh Phil and Fred, the concern we had was if that number ends up being significantly under and the data shows that be, you know, it's under because of XYZ, but then next year we realize we need it. I- it's not fair to the taxpayers to be under this year, asking for more next year and then ask for more again the year after that. We wanna get a general consensus because of that big increase from last year, because of everything that occurred throughout the year. Um to to make the determination of whether or not going forward it needs to be increased or if that is a sustainable number to make sure that we stay at their staffing level that they request.
And and we've been fully staffed with the exception of the fire chief's position, which is a different line, but at the firefighting line for the for four out of the, I would say, six months of this fiscal year, right? But we have had, we've had injuries, we've had uh, you know, childbirth, things like that, so it is, it is covering those things like we thought it would. But again, we increased this last year and I've only got six months' worth of of data to show that.
I don't know if it's Justin's answer or your question.
Well, if it's not me, I'll defer to Justin.
If we're looking at a thirty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-two, seventy-two dollar reduction in overtime, how is that going to impact uh this community? My concern about that is um I recall when you guys were short on overtime and other departments have to.
Trust me, I remember. Trust me, I remember, it was just last year.
It works out in two different ways, Dan, right? One, one, it's it's, Kim, can you please give us money for overtime, right? That's that's one way that's happened in the past.
Right.
The other way is that we have to drop our staffing from thirteen to twelve, right? Um which is a reduction in our staffing, but there's there's no other way around that, right? I can, I can sideline fire trucks and not pay for the repairs on those, but that amount of money is so minimal in 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 those dollars and cents, it's not, it'll make up some of that. But now we're down fire apparatus or ambulances, right? So we have to pick and choose. But if if we don't have overtime dollars to fill positions and we don't have other budgets to take it from, then we're gonna have to lo- lower our staffing, right? And we've.
And and I mean, the other thing to keep in mind, this this decision wasn't made just willy-nilly.
Oh, I know.
I spoke with Fred and Phil regarding this and right now, we are at thirty-three percent of the budget when we're, you know, uh five out of the twelve months through, so they're trending in the right way. Granted, anything could happen at any point with them and all of a sudden you're dealing with it more, but currently they are they're under budget in terms of their overtime for this line item.
But we we have, we have two members that are 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 going to Nashua, right? Uh for pay reasons, but that's here nor there, they're going in, so that's gonna be two positions that we're gonna have to fill, right? So we're gonna be down two positions. Um and and those are the ones that we're project predict predicting, I can't, you know, I can't predict beyond that.
One thing I wanna thank you for, cuz I I've been hearing that there's been some some better management of it too. I think it's not just like circumstances, I think you guys have been doing a a better job at managing how this goes throughout the year too, so I just wanted to compliment you on that.
Thank you. And 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 again, we work with Ryan and and last year we had a a difference of of agreeance on dollars and cents, but at at the end of the day, we don't have the data to to know that yet and I I work off of data, so.
Could have sworn we were gonna revisit it.
Well, that's Ryan.
Which is why we're dropping it to default.
Thank you.
That's it?
Just uh I think I, I think I, between my two proposed cuts last year, between fire and police overtime, I think it was about four hundred fifty thousand dollars.
That sounds about right.
Just just saying. And we're trending twenty-five percent under budget.
We're we're trending very well under budget cuz this also doesn't take into the fact that um we have their contractually mandated overtime line that I have a pay code that I need to make sure does what it's supposed to, otherwise it makes life miserable for.
And and that's where the default comes in on on service contracts and things of those nature that we've already signed into that we need to maintain some of these things. I mean, we looked at, we we looked at at what I call what we operate on a day-to-day from and if we i- i- when we built our budget, we we increased some lines by small increments and we lessened some lines that we didn't use as much by small increments. Because again, my approach is that if I stay stagnant and I don't increase, then we play catch-up. So if I increase by small amounts, like for instance EMS supplies, if we increase that based on the cost of inflation, so it's about fifteen hundred or a thousand dollars a year, I'm not playing catch-up next year when it's two thousand dollars or twenty-five hundred dollars and they're things we need, right? They're 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 supplies that we use. If I don't increase fleet maintenance on an aging fleet with fire trucks that aren't coming in for three to five years, which we s- it's already not funded enough, but we're we're making it work, we're we're now downing apparatus, right? And 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 that just leads, that's, it's a cascading effect. If we don't have trucks for people to get in, even if we have the people, they can't get there, right? And so it's 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 part and parcel. Um but that's that's how we we built our budget, is that we we looked at the lines that weren't getting spent and we lessened those. And then we made small incremental changes to the ones that were over budget to try to increase them to account for that.
So in this budget, Phil, does that address the maintenance issues at these fire stations that we have to address?
Not, not totally, because those maintenance issues are much larger than my budget can withstand, right? Roofs and siding and fascia board on a station is is far more than my my facility's budget can withstand. Our facility's budget does a great job of maintaining the day-to-day and fixing smaller smaller issues and preventing issues from growing, but the ones that have grown are 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 larger than than our operating budget is. Or or any any departments, I mean, it would be the same as the PD or DPW can.
Mister town manager, how would we address these issues at these fire stations out of what budget line or?
So again, you know, the.
Looking at that or are we?
We're looking at it, but we're not funding it. There's no money in the budget to deal with those issues. If you look at station two, the paint is peeling off, you got wood that is rotting and you got issues with the roof. So I have no money in the proposed FY twenty-seven budget to deal with that. What we did do at the end of the year when I got here in June is they did fix the sta- stationary learning system. And there was also a garage door at station number two that I believe has been fixed by now, I don't know if it.
Station, the the door at Central that is a button topic with everyone. Uh it it is, it is supposedly being delivered at some point this month and will get installed.
But the one at station uh two though, I believe, was corrected, right?
Yes.
So I used money that was left over at the end of the year and I did take it from him and to do that so that that could get done. But it didn't address the fascia board, it didn't address the roof and there's no money planned for that. It's important that the next CIP deals with that, but if I have any funds, I'll deal with maybe one of those. If I have funds at the end of the year to deal with the peeling paint for the wood doesn't completely rot, that which is not already rotted, to try to make up for that, but I I can't fix all of this backlog of maintenance and I budget, I haven't budgeted for it this year.
Deb has a quick question.
Well, on what you were saying, Dan, so we made mention of, you know, when we're building the um the school over here, that we would look at the library roof, our roof, this roof. Is there um, I don't know, could we gather like some of the bigger things that can be coupled, like the siding? Cuz you might get a better price by saying to somebody, look, I got five roofs, they're this big of a job. This is the, you know, what can you do me on a deal? You're gonna get the 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 shingling stuff at a, or if we're looking at metal roofing, you're gonna get it at a lesser rate cuz you're buying such bulk. Um i- i- is that something like we could look at, like kinda put that all together? Like Kim would say, you know, this is what needs to be done at the police station that's really big and this, you'd look at, you know, what needs to be done. And the library looks at what they need and we look at the town and say, okay, well, we're gonna be building this building. We're gonna have windows, siding, roofing, I don't know, the major big thingies, I'm not talking the painting stuff, but whatever. But I mean, is that something to think about and to look at? I mean, to be able to buy in that big, I mean, what contract, that fills them for a year. That's, that's like.
So we would go to bid when we have actual money to be able to spend on those types of things.
Right.
So we would do that. But with whatever money I have to be able to get that done.
No, I'm just saying, would be good though if we could see if we can get a better price.
Sure, right, obviously if you have a bigger project, a lot of times you can get a better, more effective price in doing that. But again, I have to have the money that's there to be able to spend it.
I understand the money part, but I mean, it does help to know this and even if you say to the builder, we're gonna be building it in phases, this one, this one, this one, to be more cost-effective. In the first year, we're doing this and this, in the second year, we're doing this and this.
The problem with that is is they don't know what the prices of material's gonna be or their prices for labor. It's kinda hard cuz it's the construction market and you got Bob Slater here who's in that business can certainly tell you about how, you know, the challenges.
But I'm just trying to think of a way to be more cost-effective.
No, I I don't, certainly don't disagree with you.
More efficient, more effective, that's all.
I'm done with you.
Oh, you're done with, that's not nice.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Phil.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Phil.
Don't be rude, no. Who's next?
Building department. Cool, who wants to tackle that one? Don't all jump up.
So what about it?
So can you tell me where we have to pay overtime in this department? Is it, is it for meetings, uh like ZBA or?
It's mostly admin meetings, when I say admin, the two admin staff that are working there, that's part of the overtime that they would get or not.
Okay. Also, uh if we have to hire help on the outside to help with inspections or other things because we're down a s- uh staff, where does that money come from? So um God forbid one of our inspectors goes out and we've got a lot going on and um we have to hire somebody from out of town or an agency or whatever to help with the workload. Where does that money come from?
Well, it would come from, you would have to, obviously, whatever, you're gonna, so if if a a person's not filling the job, you're not gonna be paying that salary, right? You're not gonna be paying those benefits. So that line's gonna run under and management services, outside contracts is gonna go up and it'll probably go over that line. So wanna go under, one goes over, that's how we would have to do that.
Thank you. Police is next.
Chief, you wanna step up? Good evening, sir.
Very good evening to you folks, how are we doing today?
Good.
Outstanding.
Can you explain how does a twenty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollar reduction in overtime going to impact the services to this community?
So I believe the twenty-five thousand dollar uh overtime line we're referring to there, as the town manager mentioned earlier, that would be coming from the old home day patrol overtime. As you folks know, uh old home day is a week-long um celebration in this community. That timeframe, that dollar amount starts a week before that for the police department, sometimes two weeks before. As you guys know, you've heard us talk about this many times at uh town council meetings leading up to old home day. Uh we do security measures well in advance, we meet with the town, we do the planning ops. We have personnel out there doing sweeps of the parade route. Uh we staff it with the appropriate. Some people may think that there's not enough, some people may think that there's too many, but we we base that on what is going on in society. We do that based on what we feel the trend or the need is for our community at that timeframe. So that twenty-five thousand dollar amount is roughly what we've been spending the last couple of years on old home day. Um so obviously, to answer your question, Mr. Bouchard, what that would mean is that we would just have the minimum staffing that day or hire a couple extra, we would cut back twenty-five thousand dollars worth.
So it's coming all out of old home day?
That comes, well, that is twenty-five thousand dollars that we pay every year towards the old home day overtime cost.
Okay.
Can I ask a question about the old home day while we're on the subject? So you, I think you said before, we had established more or less the the new form of old home day because we were going to, like when you said the fireworks, we were looking for donations. Is that, is that the plan to solicit donations to make up for some of this? Or I guess what is the the plan with that structure? Now that I'm seeing the budget, I just wanna put all the pieces together for myself and for the people out there.
So we'll go right back to the beginning, my proposal was to fund old home day, like it is, that's my budget that I proposed. Yeah, I should accomplish the four hundred thousand dollars in cuts, this is one of the cuts that I proposed. So in order to do that, other communities have made up for that where they've made similar cuts that they do fundraising and you have a five oh one C three now, they can accept that and people can get a tax deduction for doing that. So it it allows businesses to get something back if they donate that money. So that's why that's part of that mechanism to do that. Which is what we should do anyway. So that's why that's part of that mechanism to do that, which is what we should do anyway, even if we weren't gonna make the budget cuts. To the extent that we can get donations and volunteers to cover some of that cost, instead of it all being on the backs of the taxpayer, we should try to do that. And the council has created that mechanism to allow that to actually occur now.
Okay, so I guess where I'm confused is then, then why is this in the budget if we're gonna pay for it that way?
Why is it in the budget? Because, well, you just created the 501(c)(3), right?
Okay, because it hasn't taken anything in yet.
Right. And you just created, well, you still showed a couple of people even beyond that.
Yeah, yeah.
We're already well into the year.
Okay.
And even, either way, you still have to show the expenditure, right? It's just a matter of where's the money coming from to pay for it, taxpayers or donations and those sorts of things.
Oh, good.
So what is the cost for a uniform and equipment for one officer to, to?
Do I know?
Put them all together.
Of course I do.
I knew I was gonna ask it, so.
I know everything you're gonna ask me. So right now, a duty uniform for one officer is four thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars. A Class A uniform is a thousand, twelve, and then all the other equipment is roughly eight thousand, one twenty-five. I think that's about right.
So roughly thirteen thousand dollars is what you're talking, right?
Give me a take.
So this gets back to my original thing about the airport. And I know you stated that you were not going to ask them to pay six hundred dollars for a gun, but it's a contract, and it's no different than a contract that I looked at today for a gentleman told me, he says, I'll do the work, time and materials. I said to him, I says, wow, I'll pay for the time, but I don't want to pay for the materials. He said, no, I can't do that. So I'm just bringing that out, because I think that's, that's similar, and that's, that's a place that thirteen thousand dollars per officer, if you're looking at money that we're looking to cut and, and stuff, that we're, we're losing quite a bit there.
Sure.
I know we get, I know we get an administrative fee.
Sure.
We've always had an administrative fee, and we've, and we've collected for that. So I think that's something that maybe you need to look at a little closer.
Can I, can I answer that question?
Absolutely.
So this was brought up two meetings ago.
Yep.
Where it was said that somewhere along the line, somebody dropped the ball on this. Nobody's dropped the ball. So the last, since two thousand and eight, I'm sure no one up here can tell me how much admin fee the town has received by the police department's work at the airport. I'm gonna tell you, one point eight million. In the airport contract, if we look at that, it talks about the negotiations and who facilitates these things. It's the Town Manager, it's the Director of the Airport, and the Police Chief. When I look at these things, I said last time, I'm gonna ask them for that when they pay us this. I think the town, with almost one point eight million dollars, has received the perk for a long time. It was mentioned by this side of the room at one of the last meetings, I forget who asked it, about equipment and things of that nature. We don't want to get into that. They paid for this piece, that can't be utilized townside. These decisions are made by me as the Police Chief in the best interest of the community, the taxpayer, and the police department. And one point seven five five eight six three is how much we received so far.
So we have what, fifteen officers up there, roughly?
Well, it depends during the time of the need for their contract.
By, by the contract, it's roughly fifteen.
So we have one captain, four and a half sergeants, and nine patrol officers right now.
Okay, so if I go by my fifteen at thirteen thousand, that's a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Great, you know, I mean, I can look at a hundred and ninety-five thousand since two thousand and eight, that apparently hasn't been collected, and that's a big hunk of change as well.
So I, I don't know if that's completely accurate, because we're not, we're not hiring thirteen cops a year and filling all that equipment.
Animal control slash conservation.
Yes.
I was in a meeting recently, and somebody said that they would like to have a conservation officer, a ranger officer.
Yep.
And I'm like, we have a ranger officer, and they said, no, we don't. Now I see it's combined. So in two thousand and nineteen, there was a warrant article. I don't know if you want me to read the warrant article, I can.
It's fine.
Okay, Article nineteen was a Conservation Land Stewart Ranger position to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate seventy-five thousand dollars for the purpose of adding a part-time Conservation Land Ranger Stewart to the police department staff. Funding for that position will be supported a hundred percent by the Conservation Fund in FY two, uh, twenty twenty, and fifty percent in twenty twenty-one. The general fund will support the position fifty percent in twenty twenty-one and a hundred percent in FY twenty-two and succeeding years, if passed this article, will require the town to raise the amount, whatever it was. And people voted that in, okay? And it was overwhelming how people wanted that position. It seems like that position's not being utilized.
That's not accurate.
Well, let me finish, okay? Because you're saying it's being utilized? So what, what, you're, you've got a conservation officer who's putting in the twenty-five hours a week?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four hours?
So.
So.
Can I answer the first question?
Yeah, go ahead.
So you asked me if it's being utilized, and I'm gonna revert to what I said earlier. I make the best decisions for the police department with the financial benefit, the safety of the community, and the resources that are given to me. That position there that we're talking about, Dan, was full-time, uh, part-time by Glenn April. Glenn took a job here in the Town Hall. Backstory and history, it's a covenant position, as you can imagine, it's a nice job. I have to balance the needs of the agency on a budgetary amount and the needs of the community on a daily occurrence. When this comes up, and we have to make cuts as being proposed to you folks tonight, I have to find what's in the best interest to create or have the least amount of cause to the citizens of this community. So to your point, it's, it's, it's budgeted, correct. So what I did was, I had three part-time employees, I have a, a fleet maintenance guy, he maintains all twenty-something vehicles, I have a part-time animal control officer, spend that way for about twelve years, it should be full-time, but we don't go to the taxpayers asking for that because we're managing on a part-time level. The ACO, uh, the Conservation Ranger, again, as you alluded, that was voted on. So when I had to shift, when Glenn retired from that, what am I gonna do with that position? What am I gonna do ACO? And then I have my fleet guy. So what I did is I merged, because I can and I should be creative, I merged the animal control in with the ACO, splitting the duties, because there are some parts of the year where the conservation job is not as busy as other parts of the year. I then took the vacancy from that position, we saved on healthcare, and that's not in there, but we saved on the healthcare benefit of a family plan. Obviously, that's not mentioned. What I did was, I took the vacancy from that part-time opening by merging and being creative and smart, merging those two positions, I created the traffic part-time guy, because to me, that was more important, that's a priority of the community, that's the things that I hear from counselors, traffic safety, citizens alike. That is the driving force of the complaints, is these concerns. I addressed that by having a part-time guy do twenty-four hours a week of traffic. So when, when I'm asked, where can I find seventy, my portion is eighteen point nine per seven, nineteen, eighteen and nine, seven percent of that money, seventy-five thousand, eight sixty-three is what's coming from us. I have to weigh that out. Am I gonna have a animal control guy part-time in the ACO? Or am I cutting a full-time person, going back until it's been said before? There's, there's no shock that the community's growing. When you first started your career in nineteen eighties, the population was like fourteen thousand people. Now we're closer to twenty-seven, twenty-eight thousand. So I believe that I am being financially responsible, I am meeting the needs of the community. It's just like the airport thing. I make the best decision for the organization at that present fiscal year, and I think I've done that. I just, I would ask that, when the budget cuts are asked of us, and we come up here with recommendations, you hear the concern, you hear the concerns that we are faced with. Deb had mentioned it earlier. What are we gonna do about this? What is the problem? How is it happening like this? This isn't anything new, and it shouldn't be a shock to Budget Committee, to council members, or the community. We were in default for almost thirteen years. We had no choice but to do some of these things, and here we are again. And if I'm forced to go ahead and do this, those are the cuts I'm gonna make. To come back to you folks later for more full-time cops, it's too much of a risk for me to lose that. I have them on the books, I need to fill them.
So I'm gonna continue here. Two thousand and nineteen, February nineteenth deliberative session, Town Manager Smith stated that, and I took this especially right out of the book, that this article appropriates funds for the addition of a part-time Conservation Land Ranger Stewart for the police department. Duties and responsibilities for the position has been coordinated with the police department and Conservation. Funding for the position is supported one hundred percent by the Conservation Commission in twenty, fifty percent each by the town in FY twenty-one, and a hundred percent by the town in fiscal year twenty-one and beyond. So I bring this up because when you say that you merge the positions, I look at it and go, all right, we, and I know you, and, and I think it's great what Randy's doing. I just have a hard time when we have a warrant article that comes in, and people vote for it, one thousand, six hundred and fifteen people voted for this, they wanted this, it was, you know, we needed it. Also, this was not your doing, but when this was proposed, there was no benefits, and it was made clear at hearings, all right? I questioned it, and I said, are there gonna be medical benefits? No, there will not be any medical benefits, okay? Well, lo and behold, you know, somebody decided to put medical benefits in there, because they said it was hard to get somebody to do it. The New Hampshire retirement limits a part-time employee to work thirteen hundred hours in a calendar year. So even if you merge the ACO, Animal Control, and the Conservation, can't work more than thirteen hundred hours.
That is correct, thirteen hundred and fifty-two.
Yep, okay. So when I looked at the town report, I went to twenty twenty-one, Dave Carver, which, which is the ACO, made forty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two, Glenn April made forty-one, seven, seven, nine. Twenty twenty-two, thirty-nine, four eighty for Carver, thirty-nine, four eighty-six for April. Twenty twenty-three, thirty-seven, one forty-eight for Carver, April forty thousand, four ninety-three. Twenty twenty-four, forty-one thousand, seven oh three, April forty-one thousand, fifty-two. So if each position was paying roughly forty-one thousand in wages, if you're proposing to reduce that, the reduction should be eighty-two thousand, seven fifty-five, because you're eliminating Conservation and ACO. FICA should be four hun, uh, four thousand, eight eighty-six, Medicare, one thousand, one forty-four. Include in that, and I haven't seen it, any numbers in your reduction for uniforms and training. So if voters voted in a warrant article to fund this, you made the decision to not do it. So what is being done with the equipment that the Conservation Commission paid for? They paid for a lot of equipment when they went into this partnership. That's what I'm trying to get at also. They went into this partnership, there was a pickup truck, a trailer, you know, all this equipment. And I asked for a breakdown a while back about all the vehicles that you have on the police department. That's one of them that's listed. So I guess my concern is where, where did all this stuff go? I appreciate, you know, dire doing the traffic, that's a great idea. I feel the money should have come from your open positions, not eliminating a Conservation Commission, uh, position. You state right now you have two open positions, correct?
I didn't state how many positions I have open, but I think I have four, maybe something like that, five.
I thought I heard two, Kim, because you.
I said on average, you have two positions that are open from any given time.
You just filled in four. So. To continue, we had a gentleman come in here, address the council, he was concerned that he saw officers working at Hampton, and there was a crew, police cruiser from London Dairy in Hampton. I can tell you, when I worked there, the chiefs were asked, you know, do you, can you send somebody up to Bike Week up in Laconia? Absolutely not, we're not gonna send anybody up there. And the reasoning back then, and I don't think it's, it's changed, but if an officer was hurt, they go out and work, man's calm. Well, if that person is hurt, out and work, man's calm. The town is now paying the overtime to fill that person's shift. So they said, no. And to have a vehicle out there, you know, you're exposing a vehicle and.
Can I ask you a quick question before we get beyond it?
Yeah.
So with this position that was funded by the Conservation Commission, it's not still funded by the Conservation Commission?
So I was gonna get back to all these things that I'm trying to circle back when I'm allowed, I'll, I'll address them.
I'll, yeah.
Sweet, thanks.
It was back in twenty, twenty-one, the town picked it up a hundred percent.
Okay.
And it was going to continue beyond that.
Yeah, gotcha.
It was, that was the agreement.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to clear that. Okay, you can keep going, I just want to get past that.
No, so, so that, that's another concern I have, is that we're not a, and I understand mutual aid, okay? I just know that we never did mutual aid up to Laconia and, and Hampton Beach because of those reasons. I'm looking out for the taxpayer of London Dairy saying, yeah, we, we can send somebody over there, and we can make a few bucks, all right? But is it really worth it? Because if Officer X gets hurt, and now he's not being able to fill his shift, all right? And now we have to fill that shift with overtime. It's actually costing the taxpayers more money than, so that's where I'm at right now, so go ahead.
All right, I'll start all over. So to answer the first part, yes, that wasn't a warrant article, it was proposed by members of the Conservation Commission due to the amount of issues that they were seeing on the town's land.
Yep.
Creative idea, it made sense at the time, it sure did. The part about the eighty-two thousand dollars, that's not accurate. So we still have three part-time positions. Dave Carver, who manages Animal Control and Conservation, because we have a need, and he filled both. When, when Glenn left, the forty-something thousand dollar family plan, or whatever it was for Glenn, went away. I don't know what was done or what was said that you're referring to. I wasn't a part of those negotiations about benefits for a part-time. I have no idea. It's been that way since I've known it, and that is it.
Well, just so you know, Kim, the council didn't even know about it, I brought it up to them.
Okay. So in reference to that, so it's not eighty-two thousand, so what I did was, I still have three part-time guys, I just have one person doing the job of two part-timers, so I merged that. So when, when you asked me that, it's not eighty-two, because what I would end up doing is telling Dave, we're, we're in a four hundred thousand dollar crisis here with the Budget Committee, the council's request, we're gonna be looking to make some adjustments here. At the end of the day, I'll always do the right thing, whatever is asked of me, I'm gonna do it. The part about the vehicles, Conservation paid for a truck, the PD paid for maybe a trailer or a four-wheeler, equipment, and a portion of that salary moving forward, that is true. I don't know what it was, who paid what, it was almost nine years ago, whatever it was, eight years ago. But what I can tell you, when I'm faced with these decisions here, do I take a part-time position, and I already saved on benefits, because they didn't hire another cop and paid them benefits, because there's a clause in there, and I'll share it for edification purposes. The only way that position gets filled and an employee gets the healthcare, it's quite. The only way that position gets filled and an employee gets the healthcare, it's quite simple. You have to work twenty years in Londonderry, here at the PD, twenty years. And we get to pick who that person gets to stay or who doesn't get the job. At that time, we had people leaving, retiring after twenty-four-plus years. Some people didn't wanna do it because some people don't wanna work out in the woods on the conservation trails when it's ten degrees outside. Some people don't wanna work as a part-time animal control officer for, as you were pointing out, forty-one, thirty-nine, thirty-seven, and so on, thousand dollars a year. Some people who retire, that doesn't mean anything to them. The part-time benefits meant something to them. That was an attract that we heard the town manager speak on these same things moments ago, hours ago, that these are the, some of the things that we have to do to retain people. The equipment, the trucks out back, Dave still uses that. We, PD Budget, we maintain it. We pay for all the services of that thing, all of it. The trailer, we maintain that. The four-wheeler, we maintain that. We still go out there and provide that service. These are the things that we talk about. These are the hard cuts that we have to look at. We know what the concerns are from the police department, we talked about them. We know it's traffic. The greatest complaint we have is traffic. You had mentioned to me, one of the first town council meetings that you were sitting up here, how am I gonna address these things? What am I gonna do about it? Why aren't I filling them? And we've, we've said this so many times up here. We were in default for twelve years. The best analogy I can give you was this. I can't respond to the prior chiefs. I can tell you what it feels like for me. Handcuff me from the front, put the handcuff key in my back pocket, and tell me to get it. That's hard. It's like we were kids and we had Silly Putty. You all remember Silly Putty, right? You would take that thing, you'd put on the cartoons or whatnot, and you would see what you'd get for an image on the back of that. It was fun. Then we also tried to roll that out. How many times you try to roll that out to see how long you can get it? Tried to jump rope and the thing would break because you could only stretch it so far before it falls apart. That's what we've been dealt with. And when we continuously ask to get cuts, we have to sometimes cut where it hurts. It's not fun. Not one of you folks up here would have to tell the animal control ACO guy, go home and let your wife know she needs to find insurance because you're out of a job. I have to do that. And it's not fun. You guys don't have to do that part. We have to find the four-hundred thousand. That's the best way I can give it to you. It's the best way I can give it to you. But respond to dog bites, sorry to Marge, I like Marge, you're a sweet lady. I like conservation, I like woods, just like everybody else. If I have to prioritize where I'm putting my people, it's not there. It's not.
When he gets to, I have a couple of questions, are you done yet?
Uh, I can, I can come back.
Okay.
Mine are really kinda easy peasy. Not, not as technical.
Okay.
Um, so, as we all know, the, the inspection sticker things have gone. Justin, how many vehicles do we have in the town that we used to pay, I don't know how much, for inspection stickers? Is gonna give us a few extra dollars?
So, are you, are you saying like, how many town vehicles do we own?
Yes, not just police, I mean, everything has to get inspected, correct? Or it used to have to get inspected?
So, that law is changing, correct. So, that law is changing. We still pay for inspections and we're, excuse me, we're still going to follow the inspection for us, for the town. We think it's important and prudent and reasonable to-
Well, I needed to ask, I don't know what you-
Correct, and it's a great question. Those are about fifty-five, I think about fifty-five dollars.
Well, fifty-five times sixty-four cars or whatever.
Well, for the PD, we have, I think it's twenty-seven vehicles total.
I meant everybody, like, I was just-
So, it's my understanding, commercial vehicles, that does not apply to.
Correct.
I'm sorry?
Commercial vehicles, that does not apply to.
Oh.
Yeah, you gotta have commercial vehicles inspected.
Okay, well, I'm a dummy, what can I-
It's okay, so, so we're, we're still gonna do that. So, there's really no cost savings there.
Okay, well, I was just trying to-
Nope, you said they were easy, that's easy.
So, the other thing was, Dan, you said trailer and something else, what was the other thing?
Dan mentioned a trailer, a four-wheeler, and a pickup truck that was purchased either by the town or the Conservation Commission eight, nine years ago.
How much of those things used, those three? How much do they use?
Well, a trailer's not used every day, that's, you know-
I mean, is it, is it something needed, I guess is my, I don't know where I'm going with it.
I do, so two parts to that. One, the truck is utilized twenty-something hours a week while the animal control slash conservation ranger is working. In other parts of the day when it's not being used, we do utilize vehicles that are sitting here to go do other things in town that we need. Barricades, picking up ammo, doing deliveries, things of that nature. We utilize the town vehicles for those purposes.
Okay, I was just wondering if anybody else had a trailer and it might be easier to-
Yeah, well-
Sell off the one trailer and we have one that we can all use at the spot all the time.
And again, I know you've asked this-
And I know it's pennies, I know it's-
That's okay, you've asked this question before in the past. You've asked, what do we do with vehicles when we go to get rid of them? Do we do auctions, do we get rid of them? We lease our stuff, things that aren't like that trailer. It was probably two grand maybe back then. So, it's really not worth anything to do that, but it's a good question. But we don't, we don't do that, we lease them.
I was just trying to find some pennies that might add up to a dollar, that's all.
Well, I'm gonna get to some of those in a little bit. I know where you're going. And then, if you have any of the easy ones, I'd happy to take them.
No, that was all my easy ones.
Okay. Now, to go back, if I can, to Counselor Bouchard's statement about when you worked at the PD and it wasn't allowed. Again, back in the eighties and early nineties, I was in school doing boy stuff. I don't know what you guys did over here back then. But what I can tell you is today's day and age, how we operate under mutual aid and also professional courtesy and responsibility, helping out Rockingham County towns. If an accident were to happen, accidents can happen here, we're gonna, people are gonna be injured. Doesn't matter if they're on a mutual aid call, working a detail, they're covered by the town. I mean, there's, I don't think there's any real way to, to limit that risk. Now, you're gonna say, well, if you didn't have them out there, then maybe they won't be injured. Maybe they won't. Maybe they will. But I can tell you, as you said that you, earlier, about making money for the town, like the airport admin fee, like the cruiser fee that we bill Comcast or construction companies paving crews when the cruiser is out there. We are so creative at generating revenue internally, cost savings annually. And I'm gonna say this out here, I don't know if anybody can tell me the last thirty years, how many times the police department went over budget?
Zero?
Let me say one. Thank you very much.
Well, you've got all these vacant positions, you should-
Well, what's that? I'm sorry.
I says you have a lot of vacant positions and shouldn't go over budget.
Correct, and I'm gonna revert back to why. Because the budget lines weren't accurate for twelve years. And had we filled up and be irresponsible, fill up the positions because I have them and then I fill up and then my maintenance line, like I had said before, was four thousand dollars for twenty-something cruisers, I'm over. When my overtime gets blown, I'm over. When I have, I have eleven female officers right now. You guys never had that in your twenty-something years working here. I have eleven patrol officers. They're having families, they're having babies, they're taking time away. I got a plan for that stuff. I had to buy a, a mama pod or something like that, a lactation pod for the PD. You know how I did that? By being smart all year long, using some surplus funds at the end of the year to provide for an unfunded mandate by the state that I had to have in my building before these women came back to work. These are things that we do. I manage the heck out of this stuff, year after year. You heard the town manager say, he took money from our budget to get these things accomplished. This has been going on since I was a patrolman back in two thousand and one. I, I don't know what more you could ask me to try to gotcha question on me or to find something-
Question, Justin, I mean, Kim-
Dan, I, I think that when I ask for this, it's either that or I cut full-time cops. And I can't do that. I can't do that. We know the direction that this town is going. It'd be completely irresponsible of me to sit there and say, cut three full-time cops in my budget. And then you're gonna say, well, you haven't filled them. And I'm gonna say, for the millionth time, we couldn't fill them. We couldn't. If we did, we'd been over. And then the, the conversation would be, the police chief went over, we should fire him. Because that's the only reason why I get fired, for blowing a budget or committing a crime, and I ain't doing either.
So, that was back then.
What was back then?
And I, you know, discussed that with you about, it was not on you that these line items were underfunded. And we've had this discussion, Kim, alright? And you've tried to fill those positions, okay? Now, these line items are not underfunded anymore. They're supposed to be properly funded, is what I've been told. So, moving forward, I'm looking at these positions that are vacant, and I know it takes a while to fill them.
Yep.
Alright, it's, it's a process. You said that Dave Carver does Animal Control and Ranger position.
Correct.
Okay? But he has a Animal Control van and he has a Ranger truck. One person should be able to, I don't know, maybe you can look at vehicles. I'm just, I'm just asking-
Sure.
To, to look at, to look at different things.
And I'm not, I, I wanna answer that because that's already been dealt with. So, when we make statements like that, I'm just gonna say this. If you have questions about that, you can just call me anytime and I'll tell you exactly what's up with these things rather than wasting everyone's time in here. But the answer to that question is-
I don't think we're wasting anybody's time, I think this is important, that people need to know this.
The question that I answered, Dan, was, we merged and we did the position, we put them in one vehicle. So, that vehicle is out there. And about five months ago, four months ago when I did this, I had talked to incoming town manager and the finance director that I don't need this vehicle. Does direct department need it?
Which vehicle are you talking about?
The one that you just referred to, the black one, the ACO van.
The ACO van?
So, we're already ahead of that one too. Like, I, I mean, we can do this for hours. We, we do this every single day next door. We find ways to, to, to come up with, with things like this, the vehicles, the purchasing, to contract. We do it all the time.
But it's good that you're saying this because the public needs to hear it. That's important. I mean, I know, you, you wouldn't wanna have twenty-seven thousand people calling you.
I get quite a bit, but-
I know, but twenty-seven is an awful lot.
That would be an awful lot, you're right.
But I'm just saying, it's good that it's getting out there and that it's being exercised and we look like we're doing what we're supposed to do to the public because we're trying.
Correct. And I would say this, in the last four years or three, I've done the police budget for four years. Have you folks had any concerns with how I operate or what we turn in at the end of the year? So, I think I'm doing a good job, I'll pat myself on the back. But it's not because of me, it's because of the leadership that we received from the town manager's office, the finance director, the budget committee, council members, and the men that sit over here every single day with me, every single week over there, when members ask about overtime, as you had mentioned before. Some of those things, we're, again, we're handcuffed in the front and the keys in the back. When the state makes mandated training, I gotta find that money somewhere for, for conversation. As you said, that people need to know these things. There's so many things that we have to think about well in advance. Now that we have eleven phenomenal female officers representing LPD, we have to try to figure out, of, of those women who are working here, when they talk about taking leave, okay? We think of ways, okay, how can we limit, we still have to cover those shifts. Can we be creative? Can we shift people around? Light duty, workers comp, all those things. We, we have command staff meetings every single week to go over these things.
I just wanna see them all get moved up.
Well, listen, listen, hey, Deb-
I mean, I'd like to see more-
I, I agree, right? And here's, here's- Correct, and here's where we're at with that. They're, they're all very young in their police careers and we do them a disservice to, to afford them so quickly. But we have, we have some great up-and-comers, there's, I hear you and I agree. And we're getting there. But some of these things that we take into consideration, I had a captain retire and I had a sergeant retire due to the, a medical disability. Just so you know, and we talk about these things, I have to come up with almost sixty thousand dollars out of my budget to cover for buyouts for sick and vacation. If I fill up all the way and I don't have it, again, I'm before you folks and I'm in trouble. So, all these things I think about at nauseam, I sit up at night and I think about all these things. So, these are the proposed cuts. I mean, they're not fun, they're not great. And as the last part that you mentioned, Dan, yes, that, that budget just got fixed thanks to the Budget Committee, last year's work and council support. It finally, it finally got fixed. Twelve years and it took, the finance director and I, obviously Sarah too. It, it took us, you know, as we said, we had a plan. We weren't gonna do it all at once because we were, we were conscientious of you folks. We knew that we, we had to find five or six hundred thousand dollars and to do it all once is sticker shock. We broke it down. We broke it down from a three to a five-year window, we got it done in three and a half. You know, those positions will get filled, but I'm not gonna waiver on standards. We've talked about this before. I am not doing that either. Those create lawsuits and then the town's line and Primex isn't big enough to cover those checks. So, we're not gonna do that. So, we're, we're gonna get there.
So, Kim, I just wanna give you a little history, alright?
I love history.
Maybe-
I failed it in, in high school, but we'll take it anyway.
History was my favorite subject, that's why I remember a lot of stuff.
Alright, let's hear it.
Alright. When you, when, when you go to budget hearings like this, alright? My biggest issue that I've had in this community is that whenever departments have been asked to cut, alright? They target things that are sensitive to the public. Give you an example, alright? When I worked there, the big thing was, well, if you ask us to cut, we're gonna cut the school resource officer. And then, it was just a tactic to get people to not cut the budget. When I retired, you were a little, you were a patrolman back then.
Sure was.
I was sitting at home, watching this budget process, alright? And there were two gentlemen standing where you were and they were asked about cutting personnel. And they're, you know, cutting their budget. And they said, the only way we can cut this budget is cut personnel, alright? So, we're gonna lay off the two people that were just hired. They're out, okay? You know me, I'm not shy. So, I draw, got in my vehicle, my wife says, she says, you're going down there. I said, yep. I came down there and I addressed the council, the selectmen at the time, and I told them that I was retiring. Shocked, they didn't know that. And I said, you know what? Instead of filling my position, alright, save those two guys. And that's what they did, alright? But people before you didn't wanna do that. They wanted the extra money to have in the budget, alright? Been there, seen it, lived it. So, when I'm asking you these questions, alright? I want the public to know, alright, where we're at with stuff, alright? That's, that's what it is. It's not a, a cut-you thing, like you, like you keep saying, a got-you one, but no, it's not. It's just, I want the public to know. Are there places you can cut? I asked about the fleet. I don't know, is there something in the fleet that you can cut to save some money rather than give up old home day overtime? I don't know. That, that, that's your department, that's what I'm asking you, you know, to look at.
Sure.
And it's, it's a conversation I think that everybody needs to hear.
I think an issue when you come in with a right-sized budget is, and then being asked for cuts. After spent, I, I've watched, since you become the chief, just getting the police department to budget into somewhere that's reasonable, somewhere that meets the needs and, right? This for FY twenty-seven, you'll be able to hire up a hundred percent, you know, all of your filled positions, fill them up and not have to worry about, you know, your overtime line going up or, you know, going up there and having to put off filling a position or one of these other, you know, contracted mandated lines. You've already built it into the budget so that we can have, be staffed up at a hundred percent at the police department if you'd want to. And that's something, I wonder when's the last time a chief's come in here and has been able to say that to the Budget Committee, the council, that all these open positions, I'll actually be able to fill them and not be forced to use it as a slush fund for either other lines in your department or for other departments.
Correct, thanks for recognizing that. And, and this is one of those things, right? As Dan mentioned, years ago when he worked here, there, there was a time when we took over the airport. And we, I, I think the max back then, we had to have a total of seventy-eight or eighty cops. It was something like that back in twenty, two thousand and eight. What ended up happening back then, for, for your knowledge too, is when the airport hit a deficit, a crisis, that was around the same time in two thousand and eleven that the town first went into default. I could be wrong by a year or so, but again, as Dan, Dan said, back then I was just a young fella, just trying to get by.
Back then I was at the elementary school.
So, back then though, we, we were full-staffed. Obviously, we're meeting the needs. But then it was probably FY twenty thirteen, so it was in year twenty-twelve, where the town had said, we have to cut back. And there was like a town-wide ten percent reduction. So, what did that mean? What the airport's lost, our loss, we had to absorb those. People, we didn't fill them through attrition. When people left, we started shrinking down. Because the moment we stop, or the moment that we get rid of people, good luck to our reputation, it's gone. No one's gonna risk coming here. And what was said earlier today by you folks about why are people leaving? It's a simple one from the police side. One, no one wants to do this job because where are we right now? Here, right? And that's several nights a week. The other part that people don't wanna do is they can make a heck of a lot more money than eighty or ninety thousand dollars working midnights, having a job that doesn't require you to walk up a car at two AM. The other part that's really- The other part that's really the, the, the concern here is several years ago when they changed the pension system. So the best part about this job and public safety back in the day when people say, well, you get a pension, you have this, yeah, I chose that. Because I wasn't smart enough to do anything else. So what I did, said, okay, I, I'd like to be a cop. And then that was said to you that 20 years of service, you can retire at age 45 and you can collect the pension. At 19 years old, 20 years old, I didn't know what that meant. I know what it means now. The end is near. So for the younger generation, we talk about that. They have to do 25 years, age 50 or age 52, depending when they get started. It's a big, it's a, the whole job is different today than it was in the 80s and 90s. It's not the same job. So these are the things that we track. These are the things that we recognize. These are the things that we forecast. And, you know, when, when the next time I'm asked to come up here, I can, I can look at other lines. And I can tell you what I told the town manager and the finance director. I can take three grand from here, two grand from there, couple of $10,000 here and there. What's that going to do when I, when I haven't even been able to work at a full line yet for one fiscal season? What's that going to do? I can tell you what it's going to do. Wasting all of our time to come back here and then ask you guys next year to increase some lines again. I think that's wrong. I think it's irresponsible of me to do that. So.
Well, I think you have to understand also that you're the biggest budget.
We are.
So when we look at budgets, you know, we try to make sure there's, you know, it's being spent.
We, we are the biggest budget and it will probably always will be.
Yeah.
We have the largest amount of staff. Also, the greatest liability friendly municipality is your police department. And that comes with training, education and risk liability. And that's the way it is. Police departments are expensive.
That's it for now.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, great.
There's probably a question for both of you and Justin. I see for capital leases, property, we went down by 50,000 compared to the prior budget. Curious upon why, I don't, you probably said, I don't remember why.
So thank you for bringing that up. As Councilor Bouchard mentioned that, you know, do something with the fleet. This past rollover, I worked closely, Sarah and I worked closely with the police department to make sure that we were getting the best deals possible, turning in what we could, where we could and saving money. And between that, as well as the drop in the interest rate and our current practice of grouping kind of all of our leases into one big one, we were able to decrease the request by 50,000.
Oh, so we're paying $50,000 less for all our leased vehicles. That's huge.
Correct.
Nice job.
And one of the things with that is what, what these lovely Ford Explorers cost now, it's almost, it's $49,000 for Ford Explorer.
Isn't that crazy?
You know, we used to buy the Crown Vix back in the day for 20 grand, 21,000. So you look at these things, what are they going to be in 10 years? You know, it's like, you have to plan for these. We talk about, you've mentioned it, strategic budgeting. We talked about the capital room. We talked about the strategic plan. We talked about the master plan. All these things are going to be a lot more money today if we don't start fixing them. I mean, tomorrow if we don't start fixing them today.
So Kim, what do you get out of one vehicle? How many years?
So we do a three-year rotation. So that's a great question. We've been doing this now since I believe the late 90s, early 2000s is when the PD first started doing that.
And you move them from patrol to.
So yeah, so our fleet manager, again, utilizing our staff to save the taxpayers money. What we do is they, they monitor the mileage per car. So as you folks know, these cars are generally run 24/7 depending how many staffing you have on. So what we try to do is say, okay, these five vehicles have been the main patrol cars for the last year and the mileage is 55,000. The fleet guy will take those five out and those become detail cars where they're going to be utilized to make us more money. But obviously they're, they're being run less by idle time, not mileage. So they do that. They do that with my cars. They do the detective cars. We swap these things out. I mean, there's no other way to, to do it other than to rotate them. Because if, if we run these things up and we're having cars with over 100,000 miles on them, we're not getting anything for a trade-in. So when we utilize the way that we operate and manage the fleet, we've, we've been maximizing the return. When we go to trade them back in for the new fleet, we're seeing some great returns that we wouldn't normally get if we didn't properly manage the fleet. That includes us detailing them, right, paying to have that done. We make sure that they're in top shape, tires and rotors, all those things get looked at, just like any one of you would turn in your car, a lease or, or to buy a new one. They go through that and they'll say, we'll give you X amount of dollars for these things. So we, we've taken every single step to maximize that lease turn-in, too.
So roughly three years, you said?
That's what we do, a three-year lease, yeah. There's a couple of cars that we own outright, like the, the SRO cars, those are older. I think they're 18s or 19s. But again, those have lower mileage. Those weren't part of the original fleet. We had to do cuts and I think it was in 2020, I believe, we had to do cuts to the fleet line. So those cars had the lowest amount of mileage on them. So we kept them rather than turning them back in because the cost to buy those four new cars was going to be astronomical and put us over that line. So we did that. Like you see the trucks out back here, like the big F-250, that's really shiny and beautiful white one, we don't own it. That's part of that NIBIN program that we get funded for. But we have a couple of cars. We have, we have a Camry. I'm not going to tell you the license plate, but we have a Camry that we use for detective things. We own that outright. We own the Cruiser, one of the Cruisers outright. That van, the little van that we're willing to give up to rack if they need it or wherever else the finance director thinks, the town manager thinks that can go. So there's probably six vehicles, I think, total that we own outright.
Good. We good with chief? All right. Thank you, sir.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Dan?
Not to correct him, the NIBIN's van, we do own, we're being reimbursed by NIBIN's for it.
Thank you.
Later I have something.
Well.
I have a suggestion.
Okay. So, so what I'll do for everybody is the ones that we had listed here today, I'll go one by one and see if anyone has any more questions. So fire department, any more questions for fire? We're good with fire? Any questions for town clerk, tech collector?
I had one question.
Okay.
Because we were talking about reducing the voting booths.
Yep.
How many voting booths do we have total?
Sherry, do you mind coming up?
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to figure out, Sherry, the total you have. Because if we're going to do 25 per year, if we're going to do 20, if we're going to do 25 per year, I'm just trying to see what we're looking at for timeframe.
We have about 140 and then we have the ones that you notice on the table toppers, as we call them. So if we reduce it down to 25, the ones that are in really poor condition, that'll help. As I stated before, I'm not thrilled with any Counselor Bouchard that are out there for me to pick from. But out of necessity, I'm going to have to do something for safety and we've checked with the head custodian about that, too. So 25 is a really good, Justin had, you know, had suggested that and I think it's a great one, great idea.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Any other questions for Sherry? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions for library? From anybody, no? Okay. Any questions for senior affairs?
She's raising her hand, Aaron.
Okay.
Sorry, I just wanted to have an answer for the.
Oh, sure, yeah, come on, yeah. That's why, I didn't see you, so I.
No, I was kind of like, oh, wait, I can answer that question. So for Hoopla subscribers, you would ask, we have about 1,830 people that subscribe to Hoopla. And that's just London Dairy patrons. That's not available to the G-Milks Consortium because we pay for it in-house. Like we pay for it out of our budget. We have, just as, sorry, as reference, we have about over, about 10,530 registered patrons. So about over 10,000 of our community have library cards. And with the, going back to Hoopla, with the 1,830 registered users or borrowers, there's been over 12,000, 12,600 circs in the last 12 months. That's up 17.1% from the prior year. So it will be a, a cut in service in that case.
Yeah, it's almost 20% of.
Yeah. So.
Thank you.
Sure, of course. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for senior affairs? Any questions for recreation? I've been very patiently waiting. Good, all right. Any questions for cable?
My only question on cable, Justin, on these cuts, I thought, isn't cable self-funding? From our fees?
So we receive the revenue from it, but it's not a revolving fund where it's self-funding.
Okay.
The revenue does cover the costs of it, but it's not a revolving fund in that regard.
Okay, so it can be used for other things or, thank you.
Any other questions for cable? Okay. All right. So then I will just open it up to general budget issues before we wrap up the budget. Does anyone else have any?
So Justin, how much does the IT director position cost with benefits?
We need one second. We dream about this.
Don't I always?
You're looking at around 217,795 and that's with a two-person family plan.
So I guess we're taking a look at services here and there's, there's a lot of services. We've, we've heard a lot of angst from a lot of people here on cutting stuff. And, you know, to what Ted said, I would rather cut into new spending in a new position. My suggestion to be for this is we take that position off and we come up with the rest within here. But we, this way we can preserve a significant amount of the services and we stop some new spending. And that spending also will go up exponential, not only this year, but next year when benefits rise and other things or raises happen. I, I think that's a good way to get a good chunk of this without diving into all these services, hitting old home day, hitting the police who've, who've budgeted, you know, really quickly. And since Ted's coming in, I'll repeat that quickly for him. So the IT director position costs 217. My suggestion would be that since, instead of diving into services, we dive into new spending. And this would get us a good chunk of the way there so we don't have to look at so many other things and we can come back and take a look at the rest. But that would may not be my suggestion and we, that's something we should do.
Is that a warrant article or something?
Where is that? Is that a warrant article or is that put into the budget?
That's in the operating budget.
Where and how? I don't see that specifically laid out.
So if you go to the IT department, you'll see that there is a regular salaries and in default, there's zero. Because the contract is currently in the default, however, the new positions for IT are in the operating budget request. And that's for two positions in there.
So you're paying for two positions right now, two contracted positions.
Yeah.
And you want to go down to one? Just want to make sure I understand what you're saying.
So aren't we hiring a new person?
No, you're going to have the same amount of positions you had before. The difference is they're going to be employees and not contractors because you've been doing that illegally.
Is someone leaving?
No. So right now you have two contractors that you pay to do that. It's illegal to do that.
I understand. You've already gone over that.
Right.
But you've been emailing us saying that we're hiring a new IT director. So is someone leaving to take this new position of IT director?
Those two people are not employees that presently work here, right? They have to become employees. So they have to, they have to have a title. What's their position? And that person's going to be, right now you call him, his, his job is the IT director.
Okay.
Now it's going to be the cyber services director, same thing. So basically what you're taking is two positions that were contracted and now those two positions become employees. So we're not adding any positions.
Okay, that's not really how what you've been emailing it had been implying. It made it sound like a new person was being hired.
A new person is being hired.
That's not, no, you're just, you're just twisting words.
No, I'm not.
These two.
We are in the hiring process right now to hire an employee. It may be one of the existing people who's under contract or it could be somebody else. So we're doing that. We're hiring an employee. We don't have an employee right now. We have a contract.
Right, but your goal is to make these two people full-time employees.
To make those two positions that are contracted.
The two positions, whoever they may be.
To make them full-time, just, yeah. I'm trading them out from contracted to employees.
Whether one of them stays or does not stay.
Right.
Right, that's what I'm trying to say is that it's still the same two people, but the way that you've been applying in your weekly emails to us, it makes it seem like it's a third new person. That's what it sounded like to us.
What did I say, a third new person?
It was something to the degree of the, well, I don't, I don't know if that gives into personnel issues, so I.
Well, it doesn't get into, no, that's, these are appropriate questions.
Okay. Well, I, I think it said that, you know, our applicants weren't up to snuff. And so that's where I was, I, I don't remember it exactly correctly. That's where I got the impression it was a new full.
So if you, if you remember, the PD has a full-time IT position.
Yep.
We have two contracted positions, so there's a total of three across the town. So the two that are contracted, we're going to do just like the PD did, make them employees like we should have a long time ago.
Yes, we understand that part.
So you're going to have the same number of people that you had before.
Okay.
Same number of bodies are going to be in the building. There'll be no new bodies. They're going to, they may be different people because we have to advertise that and whoever we get, we get.
Okay.
It may be the same two people and maybe somebody else.
So certainly how, at least your weekly emails to us that you've been writing to us for updates.
Yep.
It made it imply and seem like we're adding on a new staff member that would be a new IT director. That's how that implied to at least myself and maybe to Sean as well.
That, that's true. I can't, how many times I got to tell you this?
Not really, because if it's the same positions, they're just becoming internal, it's not, it's just twisting of words.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, could I ask one question?
Absolutely, yeah.
To this point, just for my own clarification, what I see is that we're getting rid, there's a negative change on the contracted services line there of 254,678 and instead plus 267,5 without the extra for these positions. So is that that trade-off?
Right.
Two contractors are becoming, okay. So fully loaded, we're trading away 254,678 for 267,5 plus FICA, et cetera. Is that correct?
Plus, the only thing not included there would be insurance. So FICA would be included there.
Okay, so.
And this is the question that Ryan had asked. And, and I told him, public employees are more.
Yeah, they're just in different lines, but they're there. The insurance is in a different department.
Okay, so 267,5 plus 57K replacing 254,678. So we're actually spending more.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And that's what. That's what Ryan had asked and that's why I made that clear, that yes, public employees are more expensive than contracted and that's why the contracting is illegal.
I was just making sure I understood the numbers correctly. So, so this isn't 217 for a new position. This is 217 for what this would become. It would take out some other, it'd take out the contractor line. I guess what is the total new spend for this is more what I'm looking for.
So that 217 number we gave you was just for the cyber service director.
Okay.
Which is what I believe you asked, just for IT director.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So you're asking for what the difference is?
Well, so this is where it gets confusing on if this is a new hire, isn't this a new hire? So who are we, who are we getting rid of if we hire this person?
The contractors. So we would no longer pay a contract.
And how much is that?
That contract will be 25, well, 262,319.
That was the default budget, yeah.
And that's for both of the IT people right now?
Correct. For FY '27, that's what they're.
And we'd be paying one person 217.
Correct, fully loaded.
So.
But then we're going to be going down a whole person then. So we're going to pay one IT.
No, because the contract covers both of them. So they invoice us monthly.
Say again?
Budget's going up $130,000. It's what we covered.
Exactly. I understand that.
The contract covers two people.
Right.
So when they invoice us, their company, the owner of that company then pays the other person. So we're not paying, we're only paying one contractor.
So I guess.
That covers two, that has two employees within the contract.
That was kind of the point I was getting at. We're paying a company.
Yes.
I'm, I'm sure that company is not goodwill and they're taking a piece of that, but we're paying them. Fair to say. So the two contracted employees are not getting paid the 260-some-odd thousand dollars. They, they do because it's just the two of them. It's, it's, it's a sole proprietor operation. He has one person. So then it's not like a bigger company, more employees. It's just the two of them and they create a company to be able to do this. They're paying payroll taxes. Yeah, they're paying all their own expenses and whatever they're paying for insurance, however, they do that on their own.
It still feels-
So how does the police IT guy factor into this?
He's paid as an employee.
Okay, but does he, is there a change there in salary, like, I'm, I'm trying to understand this whole situation.
Well, there is, and he can certainly go with that, there's the, in, in terms of the percentage increase, there's the COLA that he'll get next year, and the merit he'll get next year.
I saw that in the-
The police-
So if you'll get the police department, they have an IT division, and that is where you'll find his impact.
Yeah.
He's part of a union.
Okay.
So he's governed by that union's merit and COLA.
So then there's not gonna be a, a change with the personnel on that front? It's just a change, a change in cost, but not a change in people?
Right.
Okay.
We hope there's not a change of people.
Okay. I guess still, I mean, you know, we're looking for stuff, we're looking for stuff to not cut services, and, okay, if this is illegal with these contractors, let's find a different contracting agency and hire two contractors that, where it is legal, and it's just, this is a-
And do it again?
Huh?
And do it the same thing again?
No, no, find a, it's not illegal to hire contractors, period. You said that this was because they don't work for any other towns.
Right, the thing is, they literally are embedded here. They, their office is here, their sole job is here. That's the problem when you do that. You can't get around the IRS, and they, they go after you.
Yeah, I'm not asking us to go around the IRS, nor am I asking anything illegal, nor am I even asking, like, I realize we may, may not be employing them. We may be employing two other contracts. What I'm saying is, when I look down and I see old home day, and police departments, and other things that have a great need, we gotta pick something. And, you know, th, this is a hundred and thirty thousand dollar new cost, that's a big chunk of this, and it would help us really go back to the drawing board. And so I ask, you know, if not this, what? And I do have a secondary idea that we could go down if we don't want to do the one thirty, but I just, this seems like a good chunk, but I, I don't know, what are, what are the people?
So just, I, if I could answer that, the reason why, you're not, it's not a new cost, it's a cost you've been avoiding because you've been doing it illegally. So this would have been what you had to pay all along. That's the point I'm trying to get to.
Either or, it's still new. It, it doesn't, like, maybe we should've or we didn't have, it's still a new, it's a new spend. And it's a spend that we don't necessarily have to do. We can get around doing it another way with new contractors who are legally hired. So that's a possibility, and it would save us a hundred and thirty thousand dollars rather than cutting the library and cutting some of these other places.
Joseph, you have a question? So real quick, budget fails to default passes, with how it's budgeted right now, where the, the monies are allocated for them to be contractors, what does the town do? Right, because that's, you, you're paying them, the, you're paying them because what we're doing now is illegal.
Correct.
That, those monies do not appear in the default budget.
Correct.
Default budget passes, what's-
I'll make cuts elsewhere in the budget to be able to fund that, because that's critical.
Okay.
Patrick, you had a question, or?
Again, this is only my own ignorance. I assume that, to come up with this conclusion, that what we're, I mean, I'm familiar with the IRS tests for contractor versus employee. By any chance, were there some of those tests that we failed specifically that we might be able to mitigate by having these two contractors, if they stayed contractors, go and maybe have an office elsewhere, or do other things that are non-monetary? But, I mean, are there, is there any wiggle room there?
The, normally, you would hope that there would be, and we did look at that. The reality of it is, every day, they're in here because someone needs this computer fixed. I only have two people for this whole operation, which is not enough. That's the biggest part of the problem. If we're gonna meet future demands in there, I'd like to have a hybrid approach, where we are bringing contractors in. And I did that where I was before. We looked at, are we gonna add more people? No, because we have specific projects. We'll contract with a company to come in and do those specific projects, and that was the approach we chose, because public employees, as we indicate with Ryan, are expensive, and there are better ways to do this. So that combination of full-time employees and the hybrid piece by using contractors does make a whole lot of sense to do that. Especially those one-off projects. But when you got people that are in the maintenance business every day in here, managing that server, they're embedded here. And I can't, they can't go off-site to do something else. That's the fundamental problem with that issue.
Thank you.
Ron?
Yeah, cool.
Justin and Sarah, can you please clarify for me? I'm hearing, is it the salary for the IT director, is that two seventeen? Or is that all in with all the other benefits?
Even with health insurance.
So what is the salary for that position?
The salary, just the salary?
Just the salary.
Is one fifty-four, three fifteen.
So then what's the second salary if we have two IT?
So, what, one seventeen-ish?
One thirteen, one eighty-five.
And so with, with benefits, those-
With bene- Are you asking for the second one or the last?
Yeah, second person's the benefits, sorry, I have the first.
Um, I believe we budgeted the second person at a-
So that would be a total of one seventy-two. The total of these two is four oh seven.
Four oh seven?
Four oh seven, six thirty-one.
Fully loaded.
Yeah. So, yeah, that, so it goes back to Ryan's, like, that this equals one thirty more with the two of them at full-time salaries versus what we're paying them contractually.
Correct. I do think you might be making an assumption, though, about what it would cost contracted from another co, company, right? That was a suggestion that you were making. It might be, I mean, I think if you're gonna go down that path, it would be worth understanding, like, is that a reasonable cost, what we're paying now, if we took, made that sort of move? I don't know.
I do hire IT contractors, so I am familiar with that, that's in that range. I think we, we may not be able to get these exact ones, but I think we can get some contractors for that.
Ryan, were you all set with your questions?
I still don't feel like it's answered, but it doesn't sound-
Ask it, please.
Please.
This is what we're here for. I've been asking it for the last, the last three meetings, and it, these people are, are receiving a wage. My assumption would be that their wage is the same with comparative increase as everyone else, maybe not sixteen percent, but five or six percent more than what they're currently getting. We're paying a company who has to pay payroll taxes, who has to offer insurance, who has to have ins, insure their, their business, operating costs. We're paying top-line salary now for what we're paying for that service altogether before. There's, there's a disconnect that I'm just not, I'm not comfortable or happy with the answer I'm getting.
I would agree with you on that, because, you know, if we're paying a total of the, uh, we're paying the, you know, before amount of money, why is, you know, their actual salary is basically equal to that, and then plus benefits on top of that, and all the FICA, and short-term, long-term disabilities and all of that? Given that already been built into their contract already?
Yeah.
Justin, could you or Tom explain Ted's question?
I can do that.
All right, please.
So, if I'm, if I'm gonna go and I'm gonna create a position, right? The way I'm gonna do that is, I'm gonna look at, what does the market pay for those types of positions, and that's exactly what we did. We looked at that range of market. This position pays between a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, the cyber services director. We also looked at the same thing for the systems administrator. That's what we looked at. What a comparative community's paying for these same positions, because we're in that same marketplace, that competition that they're in. That's why we did what we did. That's where those numbers come out to be.
How long have we been working with these two contractors?
Tom has been here for fourteen years, and Doug has been here for five.
Yeah, so this is where it gets a little more tricky, is they worked under a previous, um, or, Tom has worked under a previous LLC, which has since become the police department's IT person. And because he had his own LLC, we can't maintain him, so then they had to go and establish, he had to go and establish his own LLC. But those years are roughly about accurate, just between the two different LLCs.
Tim, you got a follow-up?
Yeah, so this also didn't sit well with me. So I went and I looked at the school and what they have for IT, because they've got seven hundred and fifty employees, and they have a lot of priority information in the school that can't get out. So their security has to be somewhat high. I looked at their budget, and I really strongly suggest that each one of you, call Amity, email her, I did it. Um, I looked at it, I don't have the numbers, because I, I don't know, I just didn't bring it with me. But, um, they have like six, it's, it's six, seven, six little workers, then like, same as we have, like, IT, and the director, and the, the next, the cyber sec, they have one, two, three, six, so that's seven, eight. They have like seven or eight people in that department, and it costs the exact same as what we have. So you need to look at what they're doing, and to me, as I brought up a long time ago at council meetings, to me, you know, there is no state law that I can find that says you can't have a joint things that the town and school do together. In other words, like a company's right up here is the town of Londonderry, right? And you've got the school, and the, the town, and the library, and there's no reason that it says that certain things can be all three, or just two. And it, it, it seems to me that, you know, the police is playing for IT, the library pays for IT, I don't know who else, the school's paying for IT. You have all these individuals all doing the same thing. I don't, you're shaking your head.
The library doesn't pay for IT.
Okay, so, all right, the library doesn't pay, excuse me, I misspoke. So, but my point is, we, we have this same department and all over, and it would be, I don't know, advantageous for us to really look at how they're all operating, and where the overlays are, and if it can have one solid director, with maybe two other people, to be a better financial, but I strongly, strongly encourage you to look at what the school's doing. Now, I don't know the ins and outs of IT. I think that's like your thing, Sean, and, I don't know.
No, it's a good point on the pricing of them, though, because it's, they're employing people for, you know, you said six people, for what?
Well, it's six, it's, it's six, like, workers, I don't know what you call them, for like data entry and, and maintenance and stuff. And then they had the same two that we have, like, right here, the, I forget, but whatever.
So if I remember correctly from last year, I should look at the one that we'll look at tomorrow, the IT budget anyway. Did you speak up a little bit? Oh, I'm, sorry, I'm, I'm trying. So the total budget last year, I think, for IT in school was like a million dollars.
One point one million.
Right, and a lot of that was software. That's what I recall.
Well, I'm just talking the employee part of it.
I totally get it, but that's including employees, so.
Yeah, and, and I, I just think we need, really need to look and compare.
Yeah, I agree.
I, I do have another question that just came up. So this has been brought up, that this is illegal for over a month now. If this is illegal, why are they still employed, and we're having them work illegally here?
So I could shut the town down if you'd like me to.
Well, no, I'm, I'm just-
That's why I'm hiring people. I'm going through the hiring process to fix that very issue. I can't stop IT for the town tomorrow. I could.
No, but we, we could go out and hire a con, like, for me, I would, I guess, I'd go look for a contractor and try to get out of this ASAP as fast as possible, and, and so-
So hire two contractors, put them in the building we have now, and do the same exact thing, which would be illegal once again.
Well, all contractors aren't illegal. That's not-
If you take somebody and you put them in here, and their sole job is to operate in here-
Yes, I understand that.
And they opt, this is what, that, so how are you gonna do that otherwise? You're gonna have five or six different people coming and going out?
There are, there are contractors who do work for municipalities. All contractors are not illegal who are working for municipalities. This situation, I understand what it is. That's why I'm saying there are other contractors who do work for municipalities legally. We can hire them. We don't need to change this budget line to do that. And if we're looking for cuts, I'd rather have a cut in this IT line than have a cut in all the things that I've seen outlined. And that's, that's just a product of, I mean, I know you, you, you did, you know, you, you worked hard at this. This were your best recommendations. I think this recommendation is better than, than a hundred and thirty in there. And so that's why I'm proposing that to the council here.
We need to get the data, and maybe, you know, you come back next week, or we have the actual, a list of some contractors that do it, what they cost, what they give, what they do. Maybe we look at the, what the school does. There's all types of things of looking at, and that's all.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm happy with getting more information, and we can carry on this conversation about this four hundred thousand next time.
Can you answer your question, Ryan? Do you feel, you want more?
At least I have a-
I don't want you to leave here tonight, you know, this is all for this.
I feel better that people now understand the point I was trying to make a few meetings ago, so.
Yeah, because when you pay for a contractor, you're paying for the, their insurance and everything else, they pay that, yes, they pass that cost on. And so there's not anything they're not passing on, but they are taking a profit. If it is a self-proprietor thing, and they are just keeping the money, then, okay, there is no profit to pass on. But it, it shouldn't be a hundred and thirty more, and that, good point.
Now, I believe our town assessor is a contract employee, and he primarily only works here, is that correct?
Nope.
No.
No?
He works very little here.
Very little here, okay, good stuff.
So our Whitney assessors are not in here every day. The majority of the work is done by our two full-time assessing department members. So there's two people in that department full-time. Sorry, Justin can speak to it better, it's his department.
Um, so we have three positions that we will be filling. However, Whitney, they are assessors for a lot of communities within the state of New Hampshire, including Derry next door.
Okay.
They have quite a few municipalities that they operate for.
Okay, going back to what you and Sarah had said about the total combined of these two IT positions, you had said it was four oh seven. What I'm com, uh, doing the math here, of the salaries of two sixty-seven, five hundred-
They're missing insurance.
So the insurance is in a different part of it, so.
So the insurance is in the insurance department, so that way-
So the insurance is eighty thousand dollars for the two employees? Because I combine these two with the benefits lines, comes to three twenty-four, five forty-eight.
So we budgeted one at a family and one at a two-person. So forty-eight and thirty-six.
Wow.
So if you put those two at a family, it'd be even more, because potentially, we don't know that that's gonna be at a two-person.
Correct, and the reason why it's in a different line is so we can kind of play that game of, let's hope that if, you know, this person takes, they both take a family, one of the other open positions doesn't.
Gotcha.
Where if it's in each department, that department now suffers. So by putting them all together, we're able to kind of, you know, hedge that aspect and have a lower request in the operating budget for the insurance.
I, I will say, if we, we put this to, to the next meeting, I would ask that we, we'd have to at least freeze non, non-already-budgeted positions. I think this is the only one. I don't know if there's any other ones, but just, because I, it'd be, if we make an offer to this guy next time, and then we're having this discussion next time, that doesn't make any sense. So I think we have to at least pause on, on, on those things, because when we're in the budget discussions and we're trying to move numbers around, I just don't want to see a new position, the ones we already have budgeted for, I have no problem, but I just don't want to see a new position jump in here.
Have we given any thought to increasing the amount we pay for the buyout to try to reduce some of the town's expense on the, on the insurance?
Uh, yes, in terms of the contract negotiations. You did some of that.
Yeah.
Some of the other contracts don't have that, they're really low.
Yeah.
But we're gonna, we're gonna mention those negotiations with the police patrolman's unit, as well as the fire union. Those are the two that are coming up next.
Just wonder if that could help us reduce some of this expense that we have on, on the insurance.
So I just, I guess I need some further guidance, because we're in a hiring process right now. If we're gonna stop that hiring process, then there is no end in sight of the continued illegal activity. So I got a couple of choices. I either shut down IT, or I continue with the hiring process. So I need to get some real good guidance from the council, because I'm not gonna continue to perpetuate that which is illegal.
Well, then you're gonna have to elongate the hiring process a lot longer than this week, and then if that's the only thing that makes this not illegal, then you'll be just fine.
No, I, I'm not gonna do that. What I just told you is, I have a plan to correct something that's illegal, and I, and I have, let me finish what I'm saying, please. I'm gonna finish correcting that problem. If you want to stop that problem, then I don't have any other choice. I'm doing this as quickly as I possibly can, but I'm not gonna continue to perpetuate something that violates the law, because you pay me to follow the law, and that's what I'm doing.
So then feel free to hire other contractors at that price that aren't these people who are legally hired. If you must do that, and you will not let us have a week to even discuss this, that's what you'll have to do, unfortunately.
So that's why I've asked for the guidance as to whether or not I'm gonna stop the hiring process. I've got interviews scheduled for next week. Or am I gonna continue to do that?
I, I think, my, my opinion is, continue doing what you're supposed to be doing. Get us the information, and we can make a decision next week.
He's not giving us the information. He's gonna hire, and it doesn't matter what we talk about next week, so there's not a-
I don't think, he said he's gonna hire next week.
No, we're gonna be doing interviews next week.
That's what all I was asking in the first place.
He didn't say he was gonna hire next week.
Right, but you don't, you don't think these applicants are watching this right now, and saying, why should I apply for a job that I'm not even gonna get? Because they don't know what they want to do.
So either they're guaranteed a job, or they're not. So either we have a choice, or we don't. So either, what you're telling us is, we have to make up our mind tonight. You're, you're telling me that you can't delay this because it's illegal, but you don't necessarily have to hire- You're, you're telling me that you can't delay this because it's illegal, but you don't necessarily have to hire. This is ridiculous.
So I'll, I'll do what you asked me to do. I will go out and I'll put out a bid for this service. And I'll discontinue the present contractor right now, because again, if that's what we're gonna do, and I don't know what, how long that's gonna take or what that's gonna cost at the end of the day, but I can't keep doing that which is wrong.
I don't, I'm fine with you not doing that which is wrong. I'm saying we need time to evaluate this decision and it can't be suddenly gun to our head, sorry, you've gotta decide this tonight. You can't wait a week. This situation has been going on for a long time.
Exactly.
Suddenly just go, you don't have a week to think about it? That's, that's unacceptable.
So this is not new, because I brought this up to you long before.
You did.
Yes.
But this, this situation where we're talking about the budget lines, we do not have to spend this amount.
That's right. So tell me what you want me to pay the people, and I'll make sure these applicants know this is what we're gonna pay. If you don't want the job, that's fine. But then when I release the contractors and if you can't fill up positions, then we don't provide the service.
So let's.
That's all.
Let's do this. Is it possible for us to come back as a budget committee, as a town council, with a proposal in one week from now, which is what I think you're trying to say?
Yes.
And not make any hasty decisions, because it seems like when we make a hasty decision, it's not always correct. So let's have some room for discussion and just. Is that what you think?
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm asking for. I just want time so we can actually discuss this.
And I think that's what you said, Dan. I think you guys are on the same page.
We're on the same page, but, you know, we gotta give him guidance. Does he continue the process? Or, and, and get rid of our IT people?
No.
So, I mean, that's, that's what he needs to know.
While you're thinking, may I give you some context on the school's budget? I'm sorry, I was just looking up their budget for the next fiscal year. So the information technology, no salaries, their budget, no salaries, is one, their superintendent's proposed budget is one million, one hundred and seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, no salaries. Their proposed salary line for their eight-person department is eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So that is the, that is, that eight hundred and thirty thousand is their proposed budget for salaries.
For eight people.
For, let me get back to that.
I mean, anim, anim, oh my god. Miss Small sent me the information.
Right now. So I'm looking at the school documents at this moment. And let me get the exact number of people in the department that that pays for.
There's also temporary staff that I see. That's eighty grand as well.
Eighty grand for tech, and those are those contractors that we were referencing. So, just wanted to give you that information.
Do you guys have access to that?
Can I just make a quick comment?
You can. This is what we're talking.
I just think we need to be really careful when it comes to the IT topic, right? Because this is how things run, like how everything runs. And so even just swapping out people would have a, a pretty impactful, a significant impact, I would say. I'm not saying don't swap out people. Do, do whatever you want, right? But I don't know. I don't know if, if, I personally don't think that IT is a great place to try to be cutting.
Is there a better one?
When we don't necess, well, I don't think we need fireworks for old home day. I, I think old home day across the board is like, by way of example,
just, just so you know.
Is just a want, not a need.
All the fireworks were donated no more than five years ago.
But I'm just saying, like, I mean, I've, like, that's an example of something I've heard come up a few times, old home day, old time. And I get it. People love it and it's great in our town and, you know, I get, I get that. I go to old home day. But is that in need? Definitely not, like IT or salaries for people or fire chiefs, fire departments or police or whatever, right? Like, so I just think you should, you should tread carefully on the IT topic, because I know the town manager's talked about wanting to soup up the, the software that we're using to make sure that we're more efficient, right? Like better IT should ultimately equate savings in the long run, but you have to get there, so. Again, I'm not saying don't look at that. I mean, of course, look at it, but I would just be careful.
So. So I guess one of my problems I have is we're paying these people out for twelve thousand dollars more than what the current contract is and an additional thirty-four thousand, one hundred dollars in retirement money that they were probably already putting into their retirement accounts from what they were already contracted at. So why are we paying them their salaries at the contracted rate and then another thirty-four thousand dollars on top of that? I think that's what Ryan was trying to get at a couple of weeks ago, right, Ryan?
Yep.
Why are we paying them that salary and the benefits and the healthcare? Right.
Once they become employees, we are obligated to pay NHRS on them. So it's the percentage that NHRS states as employers that we have to pay for that group. We have to pay. We don't have a choice on that.
Right, so then why are we putting the salary rate at the same, uh, twelve thousand dollars more than what the contracted rate was before? So couldn't we have just put the?
Cause I heard you bring up the thirty-four thousand. That's not a choice for us.
No, I agree with that. So then why didn't we just reduce the salary rates by thirty-four thousand dollars then?
So you can make, you tell me what you want me to pay these people and that's what I'll advertise for. It's as simple as that. Cause I, I really don't wanna argue this, cause I've told you the reason why I've done it. Because I wanna be competitive in the marketplace to be able to get qualified people to do the job. If you wanna pay them something less, just tell me what you wanna pay them and that's what I'll advertise for. And then we'll get what we get.
Ryan, you and Sean are more experienced in this area than.
Yeah, give me a number. Tell me what you want.
In the end of the day, because where we're at and if we don't have time to discuss it, I guess I just have to say I'd like the line to say the same. And we, we figured out, if we don't find people, then we'll have to up it or we'll have to do something. But that at least gives us time to discuss this as a council.
What's your opinion, Ryan? Like you, you were one of the first people to bring it up, that why are we paying them more in salary and benefits and?
Yeah, I think you've got twenty percent to play with.
Yeah.
Just.
Do you guys have any thoughts?
Roughly.
Anybody, anybody?
I mean, I'm in line with thinking where, because where Sean and Ryan are at. I'm, I'm in line with them.
Okay.
Because, right, they are, you know, they, they were getting paid that much because as contractors, because there's a lot that they had to take on, off on their own. I, that's, and they were still here. They're still working here with us.
Well, they probably have a lot of benefits also though from having an LLC. There are some tax benefits for them that they're probably capitalizing on it that will lose when they're not doing it also.
You know, but I, but does it equate to this much of an increase? And that's, and that's the, the essence of, I, what you've been trying to ask, trying to get at for three, oh, more than, it's been more than three meetings.
Patrick, you're kinda more of an expert too. Do you have any thoughts? You kinda do it for a living, so.
Unlike Sean, I have not, I, I have hired many, many technologists in the past, but it's been a bit. So with all due respect, I would have to go myself to the market. So I think somebody like Sean or Ryan are better gauges of the actual numbers.
Okay.
That said, I don't have any disagreement with everything that's been said about salaried and all the benefits on top of that versus the fully loaded contractor rate that you would usually take. I mean, the only negative I can think of to Nicole's comment is that you're paying both sides of the employment tax when you're self-employed or when you're a contractor. Right? But that's another seven percent or so, right? We are on the public record here, and I wanna be sensitive to the fact that these folks have worked for the town for a long time and have done great work. That said, I think we can make a reasoned argument strictly from a numbers and taxpayer perspective that we may be able to go back and, and see what we can do a little bit.
Okay.
Maybe since you guys were talking about, maybe Sean, since you were mentioning keeping the line the same. I mean, maybe it's worth backing up from that, backing out from that number and saying, okay, if I were going to fund this and keep it the same number, what, you know, with benefits and whatever else needs to be added, what, what does that look like? Is that even feasible?
I think it's feasible, but part of me is, I mean, and where this comes from is we've got hard choices to make and I, and I agree, there is some in there and, and, you know, you, you made some good points about old home day and other things. I think this allows us to get there and have, you know, over a quarter of it taken out. And that makes that number a lot easier. We can go down line by line and we can redo some stuff. I'm sure, you know, Deb and maybe Dan have some ideas on some other things that we can, we can do that might be, you know, go towards this and we can get to a better result. I just didn't like what I saw with the four hundred, and so I'm trying to come up with a way to get a good chunk out of it. And for me, this seems more, this is where, yep, we might not get the exact result we want, but that's, nobody does in any of this budget. It's, we, we all have wants and needs and left wanting at the end of the day, and I guess this is an area I'd rather see as wanting than some other area. And I think we end up with these in the same dollar amount.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, please.
One, one more, one more.
Yeah, please, this is.
Um, I appreciate what Counselor Paul said earlier, but maybe looking for synergies that we don't have now, if they're not forbidden. Another thing, and not to come in at the last second, but you had mentioned, I think, Mr. Town Manager, that in the future, we would need more IT capability essentially. So I wonder, back to the earlier question, what if there were a way to keep them as contractors? It just occurs to me that as there are multiple technology services companies in the state of New Hampshire that serve other municipalities and police agencies, what if we thought about a creative scenario of having these two folks, having their LLC join one of those existing ones? They bring a guaranteed line of revenue to one of those other companies, pick up a new client. You in turn begin using maybe four of their, their contractors, including these two. That would be contractually stipulated. That way we all get what we want. We don't need to put this on the, on our menu. You get more IT firepower and these guys get to join a company where they don't just have a sole client, namely the town of Londonderry.
Yeah, so they'd have to be out of here a certain number of hours a day, working someplace else to be able to justify that. And that's the problem you're gonna have with the level of continuity. We're, we're not a small town. I worked in a small town. It was all contracted out.
Yeah.
But that was a town of five thousand people. We're a town of twenty-seven thousand people. It's a bit different. You need to have two, at least two dedicated people here. And then, like I said, contracting out for specific projects makes sense going forward. But right now, I mean, every day they're running around, you know, working on this computer upstairs or that computer. And you want some degree of continuity with that as well? That's, that's the fundamental issue here.
Can I just say Patrick for president?
Let me throw in another option here. If I remember correctly, when you were talking about salary ranges, you brought in the IT director kinda at the top of the range, at fifty-four, hundred and fifty-four thousand, three fifteen.
That's what it's budgeted for.
Right. What if we were to bring that down to say one forty? You know, take some off. You know, I don't, I don't, you guys know more than I do what, as far as what. What, I'm thinking, what if? You know, we bring it down a little bit to, you know, they're not getting a full boat, as you had said, Ryan, with it, but they're still getting a good salary.
So, so taking some off still leaves us with a big hole. I'm more concerned about that sheet and how to try to fill in those holes that we're gonna probably take out.
But like we had discussed before, if we took, I don't know, twenty grand off and we took maybe ten grand off the other one, that's thirty grand. That basically makes up for the retirement money that we're giving them. Yeah. I mean, I don't get retirement, uh, benefits at my company. I know, I know what the town manager's looking for and I know what you're looking for. You're looking for, is there somewhere in the middle where we can meet and not?
So that compromises on this, I don't know that it helps us on the other, the overall exercise, and this is why I brought it up.
If we, I don't know, if we take off, you know, thirty thousand here, we take off the fireworks, as Deb suggested, we get someone to fund that for us. You know, we go line by line, then we don't have to cut.
I, I, I'm okay with that as a, I'm okay with that as a compromise. Does that satisfy our legal requirement?
Yeah, as long as I can get someone at that price range, yeah. I mean, that's what I'll do. That's why I'm saying if, and I'll have to tell these people next week, it's, it's, they're gonna be up to a hundred and fifty, we're up to a hundred and forty, up to. Because if I get somebody else who's lesser qualified, I'm not gonna pay them the hundred and forty, because it's one twenty to one fifty-four.
I'm just trying to see if, Ryan, would that make sense to you? Cause you, you were kinda the first one to bring up the fact that it didn't seem right. Would that, would that make sense if we lowered the salary down?
No, that's exactly what I was suggesting, is, is lower the salary. One thirty, one thirty-five in mine, but one forty sounds good.
Would that make sense to you guys?
I'd like to hear from Patrick. What do you think, one forty for the market?
One fifty down to one forty?
Yeah.
We, we all like saving money. That said, I'm sensitive to the town manager's concerns, but honestly, if we were actually sitting at a business conference table right here, what I would tell you is I would wanna see this person's actual job description and resume and what are they actually doing? With all due respect, I've never spoken to this person. I don't know what they do. So to ask me, is it justified to cut it by ten thousand? Let me, let me see more details first.
Okay.
And, and to Patrick's point, you know, you saying, you know, one forty to one fifty, right? So you get this guy in and you say this is a, a girl, whatever, person, hopefully not a robot. We get this person in. My, my point being is you say your first year, while we work all of this out, cause who knows, we see how they perform. You say to them, this is a, you know, to see how you do. And if they come up with ideas and they're great and it starts flourishing and the department's doing well, you, I am all for paying every dime of what somebody is worth that's doing the job. But if they're just doing the job adequation, like they're just adequate at it, why are we paying for somebody who's supposed to be sufficient, more than sufficient at it? You, you have to look at how they perform. If they perform great, then you say, okay, this is the, like a condition, I don't know. You have to write it into the thingy, but this is a, you know, for the first year to see how you do. And the next year, you could get the one fifty to one sixty. I don't know. That's something is, is up to him. That's not up to me. It's not my job.
One other thing I wanna say here, because when I'm asked, you know, one fifty down to one forty, the thing I think about is when I heard our town manager say that this person is always off fixing this PC or that PC and so on. I mean, that's where, again, from a, and Sean will completely get this too. That's where I start thinking, well, do we have old creaky PCs that are just very high maintenance? Is it time to look at cloud-based PCs that have controlled configurations, where you just can't constantly corrupt them with viruses and whatnot? I mean, there are ways to think outside the box about this, but they're not gonna happen within a week. You actually need to come up with a future technology strategy.
And to your point, we're not supporting on-prem stuff anymore like we used to in the past, which I think was a big, nice move.
I heard our town manager say there's servers here that need maintenance.
But we do, we still have servers here, yes.
Okay. Didn't we move away like with the website and some of that other stuff? We did some of the.
The three six five is, is a virtual platform.
Okay, so we're not fully, but we have moved some off of that.
And the idea is to try to get off that, I think, is, servers are a major maintenance issue. Patch, you know, and patches and that sort of thing, that's to be done.
Exactly. So, so rather than think one fifty to one forty for one year, maybe it's time to think about what, what, what are we going to continue to the town manager's point doing over the next three years and where are we gonna wind up? Right? In fact, um, case in point, I just did a business review for someone who I was asked to do this and they were being quoted very, very expensive antivirus software. And I said, why? And it turns out all they were gonna do on these computers that were being quoted is exactly go on Microsoft three sixty-five in a web browser. Do you really need to be spending thousands of dollars for three people on antivirus software per year? No. You just have to think future.
And that, and we already have a good suite of software that we're not even using, like SharePoint. I mean, we already pay for that. You've been paying for it for years. But it's gotta be built out and that's what needs to happen.
I'm, I, so my thought was just to get to Ryan's point, because I think you had a very good point, that if we took some out of the salary, it could make it all palatable for everybody here.
Yeah.
And still get what the town manager's looking for.
If we've had this software for years, why hasn't this IT guy been updating it, putting it, I'm sorry. Why, if we've had this software for years, I didn't realize we had it for years. Why hasn't it been put on and being used? I mean, what happened?
It's not what happened, it's what didn't happen, right?
What didn't happen, you know.
So you got two guys that run around managing servers and helping people set up on all these departments, not just this building. And that's all they really have time for. Trying to think ahead and be able to work through, they don't have the, the resources to be able to do that. So right now, we're doing the SharePoint buildup, but it's a slow process, very slow process. They've had a start and stop and start, and there's a team of people actually doing it, not just one. So we, the other IT person that we have and Kirsten have been helping them build that out. But that's delayed now because again, they're dealing with other emergent issues. Computers that are broken down, those sorts of things and all kinds of.
How old are our computers?
What's that?
How old are?
It depends. Some are older than others, as, you know, this.
A ballpark, like two thou, like I, I work off of a two thousand and three to a two thousand and eight computer for my business. So, I mean, are you talking like that? Are you talking two thousand nineteen?
We would not be able to function like you do.
Well, I'm a little whackadoodle. We all know that. But that, I'm just saying, you know, I mean, a ballpark, is it two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-three?
Again, I, I don't have the breakdown of every piece of equipment, because we just started building out an asset management system where we can. Again, I, I don't have the breakdown of every piece of equipment, because we just started building out an asset management system where we can track all that. So we know what, what we own and what needs to be maintained and replaced. So that's, that's what I'm trying to get at here.
I understand. I'm sorry.
I guess, I'm just trying to ask if, is, can we come to consensus here that if we have him lower the salaries a little bit, does that at least help alleviate Ryan's issue, Ted's issue, your issue? And Patrick's issue and kinda get us at least a little bit of what we want, but not everything? And still have the town manager continue what he's doing?
I guess my issue is we're trying to get to a big number in there and that's a small, that would be a small percentage of that, but I guess.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be like thirty thousand.
Yeah, so I guess that would help towards that.
What do you guys think? Deb's hiding your face.
I'm just thinking.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking that.
I mean, that, that's.
We're looking at, we're looking at a thirty thousand dollar reduction.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Um, and we're trying to get to four hundred.
It's somewhere, Dan.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but I, I'm thinking differently from, from you. Uh, I, to me, I would like this, have us all come in next week and say this, this and this, and then we can discuss it and, and see if.
The point you keep missing is this is an open position out there.
Right, so we need to decide now.
We have to decide now.
Have him continue.
And I, I think it's a, it's a reasonable.
I think a reasonable thing, Ty, is to say, hey, drop the salaries down by thirty thousand. You continue what you're doing, so he continues the hiring process. He's doing what he needs to do, and then we can still come back next Monday with cuts that we wanna make. But at least he's continuing what he wants to do.
Oh, I agree.
And I feel like at least, we, we made some of, I felt like, you know, Ryan did ask us many times about this. And at least we're making some progress towards what his suggestion is, and we're making some progress to what you want and what Ted wants. And kinda getting a compromise here.
But I would ask that, if you do this, um, and I wanna, I wanna see him continue the process. But if he has an issue with trying to find a person, please, please, please come to us and, and say, hey, this, this number is not gonna work. Well, I have candidate X and it's gone, you know, I, I need to get to this point.
I mean, most companies, if you're a contractor and it's pretty well known, you're gonna be paid at a higher rate of pay if you're a contractor. Then when you go full-time,
Yep.
it's gonna go down, your, your salary rate of pay, because you're probably gonna have benefits from the company of either a 401K match or potential bonus or something else. So for them to just have the same exact rate of pay that they're getting now, and then retirement money on top, it doesn't sit well with me.
And you agree? Um, I'm looking at Joseph. You, you agree?
Without logic, yes.
I think it's a reasonable ask and in that way, if we can continue.
Just, the only thing I want, wanna add, Ted, is that if, as a contractor, I know what it's like to, you know, work as a contractor. And, um, if I had a choice between being a contractor and going and work for Dave, uh, on DPW, all right, doing, doing the same work, all right? I look at it and go, as a contractor, I got tons of this, uh, things I can, um, take advantage of tax-wise.
Not always. It depends upon the type of work that you do.
Okay.
If it's an office-type of job, you can't do that.
No, uh, no, I wouldn't, because. Because working for Dave, granted, you know, I, I'd have benefits, like you said, all right? But I also have, um, a lot of things I can use tax-wise to offset what Dave would pay me. Which I wouldn't have with Dave.
He wouldn't have Dave yet.
Yeah.
All right, so, just so we can.
Sorry, Dave, I'm just.
As a consensus here, as a council, we all feel, why don't we just do that, sir? Right, you continue what you're doing and, uh, and we'll still move on with the cuts we're doing for next week, but we don't want you to stop doing what you're doing.
Okay.
All right?
Um, this is just a request, because we've, we've talked about it a ton. I just wanna get it in front of everybody, cause people keep questioning it. And I, I just wanna get to the bottom of it. Can we see the IRS code so we all have it and we all can just?
Yes, there's a whole memo and on that from legal counsel and all that, yes.
Anything else? Are you good?
I'm good.
Dan, you had something and then, right?
Oh, on the budget?
I know, you just, yeah, cause I was, this is like miscellaneous budget stuff, we kinda got off on a tangent, but now we're back. Any more budget issues?
Yeah, my only.
Oh, good.
Just a very quick question.
Sorry.
Only if it's appropriate, would it be okay to share that legal memo with the budget committee also?
I, I think it should be a legal document. It's not to the council, it's to me. So that can be available to the general public. There's no reason not to do that.
Okay, perfect.
So yes, your interest is yes.
Advice on the IRS, some differences.
Right, but again, uh, I'm not the council, right? So that's not confidential information and I can release that and I will release that.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I, yeah.
So then we'll, we'll, we'll come back to this next week.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. Do you have one more thing, Dan?
The only thing I wanna add is that when we're discussing the budget.
I'll wait till then.
Okay? Um, we're looking at the budget and we're looking at trying to cut the budget, uh, to reduce it. The other thing that impacts us, our taxes, are all these warrant articles.
Yep.
And, you know. A lot of times, a lot of times, it's like, um, you know, we look at the budget and then we say, okay, these people voted in these warrant articles and that's why the taxes go up. Um, I'll give you a little history, is that we didn't used to put positions as warrant articles. We put positions in the budget and people looked at it in the budget. Um, cause I've heard through the years, when positions get voted in, the response from the elected officials are, well, people voted for it. Okay? But if you start adding all this, is, is, what I'm getting at, Sean, is we have to look at the big picture here.
Yeah, total picture.
Before we start cutting, you know, because the other thing I wanna know, uh, and I don't know if we can get this for the next meeting, if we're looking at a four hundred thousand dollar cut, right? If default passes.
Three seventy now, but.
Okay. All right, so, so let's see, you know, he came up with a four hundred.
Yeah, if default passes, the voters ask for more of a cut.
Right, so now, now we're gonna have to come up with another five hundred roughly?
Five hundred and six thousand.
Five hundred and six thousand. So if we're gonna come up with another five hundred and six thousand, I, as one counselor, would like to know, from the town manager, if we went to default, where is this five hundred and six thousand coming from? I think as a counselor, I need to know that. I think as a voter that's going in, I need to know that as well, because it's important. Uh, if he comes back and says, these are the services that we're going to be cutting, if it goes to default, um, I think it makes an, an impact on whether people vote for the default or vote for the, the budget. So, I don't know how you guys feel about trying to get, trying to get that information from him.
And all the information's in the documents that we've been given, correct?
But it's not really, Joe. So that's just, so what would happen is I would have to move things around in that line. So I wouldn't actually change the line. Some would be under, some would be over. But I would move the authorization for those funds to different places.
So what I'm looking at, Joe, is if he comes back and says, okay, we're gonna have to, uh, you know, reduce our firefighters by, from thirteen to, to twelve.
Right.
Um, that's what I, I wanna know.
Right.
I'm fine with that.
So we can get that?
I don't have an objection to that, yeah.
Mr. Town?
Yeah, I don't, does anyone have?
I just don't know if I can have it done by next Monday.
Yeah.
That's the only thing. We have been working on that, cause we have to have a contingency anyway.
Looking forward to next year when we start this stuff early, so we're not stuffing it down our throat like a turkey.
I, I don't care if it's not next week, but I, I wanna get that to us.
Joseph, you want a question?
To decisions.
No, I'm good.
I was just taking a look, just confirming the budget calendar for the rest of the month, you know, next week, now the budget works out.
Christmas Eve.
We don't have a lot left, so I'll just try to, um, go through here. Uh, approval of consent items.
So, do we dismiss the budget committee then?
All right, that's, I was just trying to get through it quick, cause we don't have much left, but okay, whatever you wanna do, it's fine.
Yeah.
And it's just.
They've suffered long enough with this.
Before the budget committee.
Hopefully it'll be five minutes.
You guys go on to a meeting?
I think Justin has to put out.
Hey, before the budget committee leaves, after talking with our bond counsel, we'll have to have a public hearing on January twelfth as well.
Okay.
Just so you guys are aware.
All right. Thank you, Justin.
So Justin, you're saying we're gonna need three meetings in January?
Yes.
That would've been good to know.
Oh, I'm sorry. All done?
All good.
All right. See you next week.
All right, I'll accept a motion to accept the consent items.
Second.
Motion by Sean, second by Ted, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes in the affirmative. Any liaison reports tonight?
I got none.
Okay? Okay? Town manager report.
Uh, so there's a couple of things in here. I did place a report in there regarding the ethics complaint that was filed on November sixteenth of this year, uh, regarding allegations against Counselor Paul that occurred allegedly on November tenth. Uh, I placed a finding and I've determined those to be unfounded and it's well detailed in the document. I could certainly go into that if you'd like me to, but it's available for public review. It's part of the packet.
I'm good with it. Anyone else?
It's unfounded.
Yeah, I'm good with it. Anything else?
Well, I, so I've given you a report. You need to make that determination. I don't get to make that.
Oh, I'm.
I filed a report with you, so that's now you would, you would vote to act on that, to make that determination. Um, that's my recommendation.
I will accept the motion to accept the report from the town manager on the Deb-Paul ethics complaint.
So move.
Second.
Motion from Sean, second from Ted. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes in the affirmative. Let the record show that Deb abstained.
I, I have a question here. I don't know if this is the appropriate, um, place to put it. Um, I was hoping that we could make a motion that would, um, take that legal document that goes with the land use tax and make it public, because there's been so much rumor and hearsay and cuckoo-ness about it. I, it's, it's public information, really.
I think it is a public document already.
I, I just wanna make sure that that part, the findings of the lawyer and what the lawyer deemed it to be should be out in the public.
We just let him finish.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Uh, so I just have, I just have three other items.
Yep.
So I, I talked to some of you. I don't think I've talked to Ted yet about the special assessment district. There was an issue when the statute was changed in two thousand fifteen. So prior to two thousand fifteen, the town council had unilateral authority to create a special assessment district. In two thousand fifteen, they changed that law to allow, uh, towns that have Board of Selectmen be able to create special assessment districts. So when they changed that, there are two different types of town councils, and maybe you probably didn't know this, that is what's called a pure town council. DARE is one of those, Derm is one of those, and there's a couple of others. And then there are a hybrid town council, where you have a budgetary town meeting like we have. So they did not carry over the, the paragraph for that section for us. The only for us to create a special assessment district is, is a petition process that the property owners petition the council. So we're actually going through that process right now to be able to do that for the special assessment district. It's just gonna take a little bit more time, uh, to be able to get that done.
And what situations would we need to have a special assessment district?
Uh, so like what we're gonna have with the, the water that we talked about, the curb stop to the house.
Uh-huh.
That's one that you would do that. The other types of special assessment district you might have is, let's say you're gonna create industrial park and you're gonna put a sewer line in a road and you're gonna charge all the budding property owners the cost of that public improvement instead of the taxpayers. That's another use.
Compared to doing a TIF.
Right, a, a TIF's one option. This is another way in which you would do that.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Um, and then, uh, in the case where I just did, I did, I know it up there in Lebanon, we had a roundabout that had to be created. And it really impacted the hospital. They were creating the traffic, the colleges creating the traffic, and then developments around that. So we did a special assessment to determine what the impact was in the intersection from those various usage. And ninety-three percent of that is paid for with a special assessment district, seven percent's paid for by the taxpayers. That's how the numbers worked out. So that's another example of how they would work. They, they're not used all that often, but they are an effective tool by which you would consider doing that.
Well, I think our system with the water makes sense.
Right, I, and, and this is a very different one, because the people in that, it's voluntary, whether they choose to participate or not.
Right.
If I, that special assessment district I create, we created in Lebanon, that's not voluntary. That is an additional assessment on their taxes. The hospital doesn't pay taxes, but it is required to pay a special assessment. So just an example about how that changes a little bit. I, I talked to Ron and I talked to Sean about this. We should consider asking the legislature to make the fix on that, so we had the same power, the council has the same power that it once had before. Uh, and that's something we could ask the speaker to do, to add that into an existing bill that's already out there, cause it's too late to submit bills on right now, to make that one correction over there, so.
Already working on it.
Right, so you're gonna take care of it then.
I'm working on it already.
You'll ask for assistance from me as you deal.
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah. We're gonna have a meeting. The speaker.
All right. Um, I sent out, we, we, uh, received a concern that was submitted and it was regards to the library. I, we don't need to talk about that, but it's important in there. I sent you a link in there and it referenced the town of Seabrook case, in which the town of Seabrook had a recall provision in its charter. And the court made this, the most recent decision on this issue was made in March of this year. It said that a recall provision is illegal in New Hampshire, and we have a very similar statute, uh, charter provision. And the court required the town of Seabrook to take the steps to change their charter, which is kind of odd for the court to tell a legislative body, you need to go make this change. Normally, they don't do that. They would just say it's invalid, you can't use it. The court, in that case, took the extra step on that, to make the town go through the process of removing that provision in there. So I wanted to make sure you're aware of that, cause we have the same provision here. And I don't think it's a problem for us unless somebody tries to exercise it.
And that's in the charter?
It's in our charter.
And that would require a charter change to remove.
It would, and we're kinda late for that, the season to do that now, uh, cause of the timelines on that. So we can't do it this year, but something we should think about. I was, I knew about this for a long time, that you couldn't do that, but I was a little bit concerned when the court actually made the town go and change it, which is really kind of odd.
Sean, when is the time that we can make small changes to the charter? When does that happen?
Um, so, I, you wanna talk about the timeline you put together for that?
So the Deb, there's really strict deadlines as for where you have to get it to the state. Um, generally, you have to get it to the state at least forty-five days before the end of your budget process for approval. So, for example, they, the ones that we were working on went to the state in November.
Okay.
Um, and they have, they're with the state right now and we'll have them back in time for the January fifth meeting. So you can move them to the warrant. So we started the process of writing them last year in probably September, and that was even a little tight. So really.
June, July?
I would say probably July, as soon as the fiscal year starts, that's when you make the decision. And so right now, we're just waiting for the state's response on that. Again, these are very small ones that don't change the substance, so we're not anticipating a lot. But for something that might be a little bit more legalistic, you will get letters back and feedback back from the state from that.
So the plan was to do what I call housekeeping changes, and again, that's what we're doing this year. It doesn't change anybody's power or authority. This is a change in authority, so I was, my plan was to avoid those and just focus on the house cleaning stuff. And doing more than one or two of the year, because otherwise you get, you get a ballot with a ton of stuff on there. People get confused as to what it is.
Right, right. No, I understand it.
Now, we're gonna have to take a more proactive approach based on that decision to deal with that. All right, um, South Road, I sent you out on the email. You probably haven't had a chance to read it yet. So there's a water line being built along South Road. We have no part in that process. Um, and there's a development down there that's paying for a part of that cost and they're working directly with the state. So when they're building that water line down South Road, um, they're not paying for curb stops for those properties along the way. So we get that water line down there. Normally, when you put a water line, you put all the curb stops in when you build it. So they're there. Even vacant pieces of land, that, so when people need to tie in, it's already there and you're not cutting into an active water line.
Yeah, that's odd. It's just odd that they're not doing it.
Well, the people in, what's the name of the development there?
So this is Old Country Village.
Old Country Village.
They applied to DES. Their homeowners association applied to DES and so it wasn't part of the original funding package. It was just getting it from South School down to the back of the parcel.
Yeah, so they're paying what the minimum they have to pay. So the state reached out to us and said, look, this is going on. We think it may be enough in that budget to do it, but if there isn't, is that something the towns willing to pay for? Like, we don't have an appropriation for that. But we should be thinking about what we want to do with that, especially when it comes to the funds we have for the other part of High Range Road. And the warrant article that we are developing, do we want to allow for, do we want to ask the voters for the flexibility to be able to use that to construct those curb stops if they end up being over budget? Because now is the time to do that. Because you don't want to cut into an active water line because you create contamination issues and metal gets put in there, right, and it has to go someplace.
How much does a curb stop usually cost?
It depends on how far, oh, the curb stop just goes to the corner. You have the information on that.
So there's about thirty-five residences that it'll pass by, thirty-five addresses on South Road.
Uh huh.
And it's, the estimated cost is about three hundred thousand dollars for the curb stops, the services, which is the water main to the curb.
So it's about ten grand each-ish.
Yeah, for the whole sum total because there's also slightly, if there's additional ledge, there's the, there's the engineering to figure out where the best spot is. So yeah, sum total for the whole thing, about three hundred thousand dollars. They might have enough funding.
Right.
But they can't get any, they can't go back and get any more funding from the state for it. So what they have is it.
Is that something we want to add to the warrant article?
That's what I'm suggesting. I kind of need to know soon here to.
And is there a way to have DRA approve that? Because I know when we had the two thousand twenty-three warrant article, it was a fight with to get the wording right so he would understand it.
Twenty-one hasn't gone to DRA yet. We're just, it's, it's legal right now and so it hasn't gone to DRA and we were actually just talking about that one today.
Okay.
This is kind of related to all of this. So I was on the committee, the groundwater drinking committee, when this came forward. And we presented it and talked about it and it did get pushed through. My thing is, is if we either, you know, somebody from the council with Mr. Malholland maybe, or somebody from the town hall goes to the groundwater drinking trial, it's not a huge, like, grand amount of money. It's a small thing that we could ask them for because it's a project they've already committed to.
So this actually came from them asking us to pay for it. It came from them. They were, they said that they do, they did go, so the state did go to them. Actually, this came from Mike Ungar at the state. So they did go to them and they said no.
I, I know. Can I tell you how many times they said no to that whole development, getting groundwater drink? It, 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 you have to keep reapplying with, you know, information, explaining reasons, and it always does better when you have somebody from the town, representatives from the town saying, look, you know, we're creating this fund, we got it on the war, it's a little too late, but we, we don't want to, you know, and we're going to be working with you on many projects and you have to kind of do a whole presentation and, you know, and even if it's a loan and then apply for seventy-five percent back, which you can do.
No, forgive this, absolutely, yeah.
So I'm just saying, I don't think just taking Mike's, no offense, I mean, Mike's a nice guy, but I've seen him do presentations and I think that we could do an even better presentation, um, a compelling presentation because of where we are, where we sit, what's going on with Cobain and this and that and, you know, this is a really important thing. I, I don't know. I just think you should take that extra step. The worst they can say to you is no.
I, I think Councilor Paul is absolutely correct. Why they, there's six of those houses, five or six that have PFAS contamination along that stretch. Why didn't they do that in the first place? It's, they know the level of problem we have in the town, right? So to, to her, I, I don't know why they didn't approve it, because normally you do that, right? Why didn't they do that in the first place?
Right.
I, I don't know.
I know, but that's why. You want to know why? I'm telling you why. We don't have a representative.
So, yes, if we want to construct that warrant article, please do make it as ambiguous as possible as they'll allow us to, Justin. I don't know. I know you.
Or as clear as possible to allow that.
Right, 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 yes.
But at the same time.
Depends on how you want to make it.
But at the same time, we're going to be in Concord next week.
Yes.
And that's one of the things we should bring up to Councilor Paul's point because
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't know why they allowed that in the first place. They're going to go by all these houses and you know the issue that you, when you try to cut into a water line, it's in the ground afterwards. And then, I know we have PFAS in the area and they've got the, the test results of the ones that are on their website.
I, I support it.
I, I just think we should do this.
I agree with you, Tim.
I mean, obviously we can try to fight for more money, but also getting this special assessment change along with the warrant article, these citizens could then apply for the money to use to hook in, correct?
So just to be clear on the spe, the, the legislative change, that would not become effective in, in time to affect this, nor do I think we need necessarily that.
We don't, because we're just going to use the mechanism that allows that. Um, but it's a good tool to have and it's an easier process to do it that way. Because you can move that around as you need to. Every time we add it one more house, we have to go back and do the whole process all over again. It really is bureaucratic because we want to have that flexibility. These folks say, you know what, I'm all set. I don't want to do it. These other folks, you know, because we already counted on so many.
Right.
Now they can't do it. You can easily do that here. You have a public hearing and then you go and say, we're going to change the district. We're going to add these two properties over here. You can't do that now. Now you'd have to go out and repetition everybody in the property, in the, in the special assessment district, however we define it, every time we make a change. Then you're going to have multiple hearings and it really is bureaucratic.
Yeah, that'd be annoying.
And the legislative change wouldn't happen until June.
That's unfortunate. Well.
Yeah, it'd be like July or August before it took effect. Anyway, but we can, we're going to move forward.
Our warrant articles won't go into effect until July anyways.
This is on this water subject. Mr. Mr. Malholland, I don't know. Um, I know that London Dairy should have a representation on this water board. Maybe, um, they don't want the council. They know they don't want me, but, um, maybe we could get someone from the utility. I know Ray goes to those meetings anyway, already, almost every single Tuesday, um, that they have them. And I know Martha used to go too, because the three of us used to carpool up there to go to those meetings every sing, once a month. And I really think we're doing a, uh, we're, we're, we're not doing what's right for the community by not having any representation on that board and we're allowed it. And the fact that they don't want to appoint me, which is fine. Um, Ron asked, they didn't want to appoint Ron, but maybe the utility, two other different people, is there a way to rebroach this? To kind of get somebody, some representation on this board?
So that's a, I believe, a governor and council appointment.
Yeah.
Is that the same water board that John's on?
No, 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 it's different. Um, so there's different appointments. So some of the appointments are appointed by the governor and some of the appointments are appointed specifically by the town, for example, by that. So I can look into that and I, I think there's only one opening right now.
But what, anybody, I mean, it's just something. We need something there.
You, you and I agree. We, we agree. Hundred percent. So.
I'm sorry, Dan's turn.
I will come back to you with an answer on that.
So Kirsten just looked it up and there used to be a vacant slot for a town selectman.
Yeah, there's one opening.
Yep.
I have. My name is out there, but it hasn't been acted on yet.
Too busy, Paul.
Too busy. Go ahead, Dan.
Kirsten, that three hundred thousand.
Yes.
Is that just putting the curb stop or is that putting the curb stop connecting it to the house?
No, it's just the curb stop. So it's the service. So from the main to the curb stop, yes. So, and just, I wanted to clarify something. Ted, you said earlier, um, the special assessment is going to help from the curb stop to the house. For all the wa, all the other lines we're putting in, the curb, the, um, service, which is the water main to the curb stop, is included in it. This is the only weird one where it's not. It's just a strange one because of the timing and the way that it went through. But yes, so that's the other, the houses would have to go through the process to connect to the curb stop. I can talk water all night, but you don't want to be here all night? It's, it's late already.
Those are the four items that I had.
Okay. Kirsten, I'm running out of water.
Don't lie, it's barking. Go ahead.
You had something you wanted to say real quick or?
I said it. I talked about the legal documents.
Okay.
I think that like legal documents like that, that, you know, help the residents, it should be full transparency. Um, that help the residents understand why things are said up here.
Okay.
That it's not affecting anyone. It's not, it's what they said. I mean, and it really has an impact on decision.
Oh, you're saying you want to put it on a future agenda?
I'd make a motion right now to do it.
Yeah. To allow legal.
I'll make a motion.
So, so wait, wait, let's have the discussion first. I, I want to understand what she's asking for. So you're asking for something that wasn't on the agenda, that's not listed. So let's discuss it here. So what do you want to do?
I am saying that, it, I've got a lot of phone calls
Yep.
and a lot of emails about the land use, um, tax documents that were mentioned up here. And there was a lot of rumors and hearsays and, you know, whatever. And people said this and that. And my thing is, is that all of the documents should be out there publicly to be fully transparent to the people so they understand why we up here say and do the things we do. It's, it's, it's a disservice to them to not know why we feel or do things a certain way because they can't see that document. And there's nothing in there that hurts anybody. It doesn't, you know, call out any names. It doesn't do anything. It just says, this is what the, the lawyers found on this particular case.
But that's not, I mean, you cannot.
I'm sorry, Ted.
You cannot give out legal advice that is in an attorney-client privileged meeting. You cannot do that.
Well, that's why, um, we're looking at releasing that document so that it's very clear.
Then what's the point of having an attorney-client privileged meeting?
To protect people when there's an active case, when you have names and stuff in it. This is not an active case. It's not a case at all really because it's past, what do you call that? When you go past the time.
Before we move forward, I'd want to get advice from our attorney.
What's that?
I'd want to have the advice from our attorney.
I mean, it, it's just being transparent. I mean.
I'll be transparent if we're following the law. I'll be transparent if we follow the law.
You are following the law. It can be done. And the thing is, you don't want it to be transparent. God knows for what reason.
That's not why. I want to make sure we're following the law.
What I'm saying, Ted, is the taxpayers paid for
The lawyers.
lawyers to look at this, to have the, the legal advice. So, I mean.
Their advice.
If the people have questions about it, it's a legal document. They can look at it and they can read it. That's, so that's my only thing. Instead of everybody going out there and throwing these innuendos out there and saying, oh my goodness, this was a, this was not a legal, uh, I mean, a public document and, um, you know.
So what specifically exactly do you want released? I just want to know. Oh, yeah, please, please. I just want to know.
Legal findings.
I want to know what.
And I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to be rude about this, but I think, you know, you threw out the innuendos, but it's, when it comes to this, I really worry about precedent in this aspect of it because attorney client privilege exists for a reason. There, you know, uh, we, we definitely do things, especially when things are dealing with other entities than just the town, which this does. Those things, they have their, their side too with their attorneys. So the public doesn't get the whole picture in the first place. They get whatever our attorney said. It also gets dicey because other entities could potentially bring something, as Ted brought up. There could be some legal issues with releasing something that affects other entities. So I just don't want to get, oh, we're not transparent because we don't release every client privileged document we have in existence. That's not true. In this particular case, as long as it's specific to what I think you're saying.
It's just a land use thing. It's past, it can't even, it, there's nothing to it.
In this particular one, I don't, I don't.
So I just want to be clarification. What, what do you want released?
No, I understand what you're saying. If something is active and something could sue us, then that's.
I'm not necessarily disagreeing with you. I just want to know what exactly you want released.
Let him read it and then maybe you'll understand it.
All I'm looking is for all the legal documents that reviewed the land use change tax agreement of June sixth, two thousand seventeen between the town of London Dairy and Pillsbury Realty Development. That's all I'm asking.
Can you say that one more time?
Yes.
That all legal documents that re, were reviewed. Wait a minute.
Attorney client privilege.
To release all legal documents that reviewed the land use change tax agreement of June sa, June sixth, two thousand seventeen between the town of London Dairy and Pillsbury Realty Development. Okay, that was the tax.
So, so I'll say two things, Dan.
Yeah.
I fully support disclosure and I, I agree with you and actually kind of lean towards what Sean's saying. It would support this. The thing, thing I have trouble with is the message we're sending to the rest of the people is if, if we vote no on this, then they're going to say out there, you know, oh, we're hiding something. We're not hiding anything. You guys know that.
I don't want to hide anything. I want it transparent.
But at the same time, the attorney-client privilege then is always going to be in question. So someone that comes to us and says, hey, you know, I want to talk to you in, in front of an attorney, they have to think in the back of their head, this could be released.
That's an active case. This is not an active case. The sta, limit of statute, statute of limitations. I just wanted to say this. It's passed and it's a, you know, per, what do you call it? Per individual case. I'm trying to say.
There, there's no, there's no statute of limitations on this because there's no crime. Also, there, some things do not have statutes of limitations. The other thing is, there are things that even when you close or sign a contract, you still want the negotiations of that contract for various reasons to remain attorney-client privileged. And somebody could see damages for it. Those are possibilities regardless of how old it may or may not be. These are just like all various things. This is a, a very tricky particular thing.
And if, if we're going that specific, I'm probably okay with it, but I'm worried.
Just going specifically to that document. That's it.
Because, but it says all documents. That's where I'm.
Pertaining to this one.
That's still all documents.
Pertaining to this, Sean.
That's still all documents.
There's one document.
No, no, you're, no, you're, you're saying all documents. We cannot do that.
So, so then, yeah, one at a time. So, so it's one document that you guys want released?
It's that one, we only got one, didn't we?
Okay.
No, you're saying, you were all, you're both saying down there that you want the opinions from the attorney. That's not one document.
Well, yeah, it's going to be specified to one document.
Yeah.
Wait a minute. Wait, wait, wait. Did you get more? Because I only saw one document.
Yeah, that's all we got.
And that, that's why I want to be.
So why is Ted saying there's?
Are you asking for the form that was signed by the council?
One at a time.
That's already public, Ted.
That's what I thought you were referring to. But if you're asking for the opinion from the attorney, then that is a
The opinion from the attorney.
Then that is something I want, a judgment from our attorney, if she's willing to have us release that.
I don't think you need.
It's ours. We own it. We paid for it.
The taxpayer's.
We also pay for the attorney to protect us when we need to.
And it's, it's also fine, I think, for the attorney to look at it. I don't see any problem. Like, that's just.
This is why we have an attorney. So. No, this is why we have an attorney to protect us so that we're not doing something wrong.
It'd be a big waste of taxpayer money if we didn't use the attorney and we got a job too.
And you're correct. So let's just, Mr. Malholland knows some of this legal stuff.
He's not our attorney.
I understand that, Sean. I'm just looking for some advice and some input from Mr., from Mr. Malholland. In your opinion, I know you're not an attorney. Do, is, should we have the attorney look at this before we let it loose or? I mean, I don't know what the process is. I don't know, whatever.
That's within your discretion to do that, if you choose to do that. The attorney climate privilege is for you to waive. If you vote to release that one document, that's the confidential document, then you can do that. That's a discretionary piece on your end. So if you want to seek legal counsel and ask them whether, what are the risks of releasing this or not? You are perfectly within your authority to do that. But ultimately you make the decision as to whether or not it gets released or not.
If it's that one document, I don't think.
So. The rest of the documents are public documents.
I would propose that we release.
But to Ted's point, I also don't see a problem with double checking it.
I mean, I, I would say that we release the legal documents that legal, legal reviewed the land use change tax agreement of June sixth, two thousand seventeen between the town of London Dairy and Pillsbury Realty Development. That's what I'm, that's what I'm looking for.
And it's that one document?
It's that one.
And I still maintain that I think we should have the opinion from our attorney if that is the right thing for us to do or not. We pay our attorneys to give us good advice.
We just put this off a week.
Okay, um, I mean, you can, you can invoke council privilege. I mean, I'm just saying.
Council privilege that we contact our attorneys to have them review this item.
But if, if Ted wants to have.
I want to keep us out of trouble. I don't want to cause more trouble by releasing something that would be detrimental to the town and the council.
We don't have a choice in that.
Yeah, no, so I'm just saying, so let's do that then. If you, we'll reach out to Megan. We'll get an answer from her. And then we'll bring it back.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm okay with it. I don't got a problem releasing it because if we don't release it, it's going to go crazy.
What I would, what I will request is how much that costs us.
Yes, I'd like to know that cost.
Okay.
To have her give that opinion on if we should do that or not?
Yes, Ted. Yes.
To keep us out of potential trouble?
You can laugh all you want at me. It's a point. It's a principle. You find it funny. Ha, ha, ha.
I do find it funny when you're potentially kind of create another legal problem for us.
Yeah.
Just one, one last statement on that and if I can, please not be talked over. Yes, that will cost money, but that's part of the process when we bring these things up. It's like when someone files an ethics, like, that's part of the process. Yep, it costs money. By, by requesting this, it is going to cost money. And you can argue it's not Ted that caused the request. It's, could be the request that caused the request. We have to do our due diligence and legally. I don't oppose this request, but I also think it is good to be sure because we could be millions down because we didn't spend four hundred. And that's a, a bad route to just go out and gamble with it.
Well, that, I'm glad you brought that up because it brings up the point that Mr. Douglas made earlier with these complaints that we're allowing to be anonymous and whatever. How much are these going to be costing the town on a regular basis for each one to have to go? Because we don't see them. Manager doesn't see them. They go to the lawyer.
No, 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 they, they go to me. So the lawyer doesn't get those.
All of them?
The only ones that go to the, to the lawyer are complaints against me. So the lawyer gets those and then contacts the chairman directly. So I'm not involved and I don't know anything about it.
So the complaint about Dan went to you?
Yes.
And then you took whatever actions you felt necessary?
Well, I brought it to your attention.
Okay. And then the council?
You need to tell me what to do. I don't have the, I don't conduct unilateral investigations of town councils.
I'm just trying to.
No, 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 I know, but I'm telling you, there's a process in ADM one-two-six. It's on. No, no, I know, but I'm telling you, there's a process in ADM 126, it's on our website, it outlines this process. And it's very detailed for this reason. So I will not conduct unilateral investigations of.
I just feel bad that we're wasting your time, the taxpayers' money to do this stuff.
I don't know if it's a waste of time, because there needs to be an outlet when people are concerned about what their government is doing that it'd be properly investigated, which you folks have done. And you already pay me, I don't get paid overtime, so when I do that work, there's no cost on that. The only one you face a cost was if someone files a complaint about me, then you've got some legal costs involved with that. We're trying to keep those down to a minimum.
I thought everything went to the lawyer.
It did not.
So my misunderstanding, I apologize, I was wrong.
No, it's okay.
No, it's not.
So, all right, so we'll bring that back, we'll put that on the agenda at the next meeting. All right. I won't public comment. Come on up. You waited a long meeting, so you deserve to talk.
I'm asleep. Jan McLaughlin. So I just want you to, as you're going forward beyond this, to make sure that the cuts that you have to make or the decisions you have to make are proportional. The police department has the largest part of our budget and they were asked to cut 78,000. The library has 1.7 million dollars out of the budget and we were asked to cut 51,000. Now, I'm sure there were reasons for that, that that number was the case, but proportionately, we're paying a larger amount. So just as you're going forward and adding additional cuts, please make sure that it's proportional so that we're cutting, you know, we're not affecting some areas more than others.
Can I respond to that?
Oh, yes.
I do appreciate the sentiment. There is like one factor to it, as Chief Renard outlined before, the police department's always going to be the biggest. So you could go by pure mathematics and go, well, they're the biggest, they get the biggest cut. But I think that doesn't always necessarily line up. And there becomes, that's, and no offense to art, that's more a necessary service than like, say, something like rec or something like that. So as much as it'd be nice to just go on that, I think they have different weightings to them. And that's, that's just the nature of it, unfortunately. But thank you for that. And thank you for your statement before, I loved that about.
So it's, you know, it's like, we're 3% of the budget, but we're, you know, we're being asked to produce a lot. Take a bigger cut, that's all.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else to public comment? You were also very patient, so thank you.
Good evening or good morning, I'm not sure. Beth Morocco for Westwood Drive. As somebody who's on a board with the library, who is also facing very long meetings, I personally want to just advocate as a stickler for efficiency. Please consider as if you were writing a telegram and every character cost you money. I urge you, because I do it with my own board meetings that run five hours long. I urge you to go home one of these nights and read the, watch the entire proceeding. Do not read the transcripts, sit through every hour and listen for your voice. How many characters are we paying for as a community? Are you consolidating your thoughts? Are you consolidating your line of questioning? Are you doing your homework in advance to ask about how is money spent X, Y, Z? Because when I look around the room, I see all of these professionals who have significant jobs within our community, sitting here for five hours. My own library director is not getting paid compensation for any time that she goes above her 40 hours. I would urge that we put her at the front of the agendas, because she spent hours here tonight uncompensated. And we have our own meetings, sometimes four in a month, and they often go four and five hours long. So I'd really like us to consider all of the paid professionals and those who are not being compensated. And I'd like you to calculate in your head, what is the dollar value or what is the dollar that we're putting out for their participation in these meetings? They are not efficient. We can do better and we really should. I sat here for so long and listened to this committee hem and ha over a $30,000 salary for IT. Without IT, a good IT, our community simply does not run. It is wild to me that we are prepared to disregard the need to pay a professional to do this job and to stay here. Attraction retention, I can tell you at the library, we cannot attract people, because the board has made this space not safe. When I listen to the community runners of this, you know, of our town, and I know that they're watching and they're wondering, is this a place that I want to invest my family? Do I want my family to rely on me to be an employee here? Do I have the ability to stay? Or am I going to be badgered and nickled and dimed? Like, you really want to think about attracting and retaining. I can tell you that our retention at the library is going to be seriously fractured. And that's a choice, like, the board has a choice. Every week we go to a meeting, we have a choice on how to conduct ourselves. I really want to urge you to think about the time that you're using, to think about how long. We talked about a $30,000 income. When you think about what that $30,000 costs 27,000 people in town, it's literally change, pocket change. So just really bottom line yourself, because we're just nickeling, diming every department. But you aren't even thinking about the cost that all of this, this banter and this just wasted talk and these figures of speech that are just thrown around. Like, really, like, watch the video, listen for your voice and check off how many times you're saying something that really could have just been cut out with an edit. So just being aware, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else to public comment?
Good evening, sir. I had a whole list of stuff, but I'm not going to mention any of it, because it's way too late. This banter and wasting time, if the public were allowed to ask questions, because I was sitting back there trying to figure out how to follow that ping pong ball, exactly what's going on, and I had a list of questions about this long. We're supposed to just cut out everything and make it really quick and just rubber stamp everything and not have the public involved? Because I heard they, well, I guess we need to explain it to them. The public's not sitting out here, because I think I'm one of the only members of the public, they're not here because they can't get any questions answered. This is not a waste of time. I remember, I'm sure Dan remembers, sitting at council meetings till 1, 2 o'clock in the morning. You need to explain to people what is going on. And this client account privilege, we are the people that pay these bills. There are all kinds of accusations being flown by rather prominent people. And I know there's a petition going around, because I saw it being signed tonight, and I'm sure they're going to be back. Because they don't like what was being said. And honestly, I don't even know who signed the land use thing, because you can't figure out any of the signatures. I actually went back to the town annual reports to compare the signatures and they don't even compare. So hopefully going forward, we have a little thing that says signed by, so you know who signed it. And if you signed it, maybe you shouldn't even be allowed to talk about not releasing it, because four of you didn't sign it.
Thank you. Anybody else to public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment. I will accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Motion by Sean.
Second.
Second by Ted, I was in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Location and it's something we've had the opportunity.
It's a little sensitive.
I'm sorry, I'll give it a moment, it's got a little infestor. We had the opportunity to review that with the fire department, had the opportunity to review that with DPW. The reality is we need a conditional use permit for access, because our frontage is substandard. We have the benefit of being able to look back in time and look at those recorded subdivision plans that said, we all agree, this is where, how this lot was to be accessed. And that the intention was that it was going to be an extension of the ecological park. It's really just some great planning coming to fruition, that we now have the opportunity.
Well, something ecological there.
Yeah. It's just the opportunity to tie these different uses together, where we're basically using residuals, byproducts to create something else.
And this is all food byproducts?
Yeah, so let me tell you a little bit about that. So what exactly are we doing? So we're reducing waste streams to New Hampshire landfills and producing renewable biogas that can then be injected into the local network of gas. So how do we do that exactly? Now, we had put together a little bit of cover letter here with the help of Purpose Energy that kind of gives us a little of the backstory. So forgive me, but I'm just going to read a little bit from it. So it's really, it's with two connected resource recovery facilities. The first, which is Recycle Works, will receive food waste that normally goes to landfill, including food that has passed sell-by date or is out of specification when it's wrapped in glass, plastic or metal packaging. Recycle Works will remove the organic waste from the packaging and send it to the second facility on the campus, which is Purpose Energy. These are the folks that are actually developing the lot. Purpose Energy will pump the food waste into tanks, digest it and a similar process to the human stomach. The tanks will also receive dairy waste directly piped from a local business, Stonyfield Yogurt. The digester tanks will produce renewable biogas that will then be cleaned to pipeline quality and injected into the local natural gas network. So a couple of fun facts that I thought it'd be good to share, but left in packaging this waste would not only add dramatically to the tonnage of waste reaching New Hampshire landfills, but the composition of the organic matter in a landfill would release methane, one of the most harmful greenhouse gases we have for our planet.
Do they also work with breweries in the area too?
It's one of the biggest ones they do.
Yeah.
One of the other facilities is actually in South Burlington. And the reality is.
That magic hat.
Yep, they look to partner with facilities that have a byproduct that could otherwise be harmful to the communities in which they exist and then turn that byproduct into a positive. So it's cool to see the synergy that they're able to create here. Yes, sir.
Are there any oils involved?
Any oil.
Vegetable oils, any byproduct like that?
No, so, great segue, that's actually my next note here, is what our byproducts are. The Green Energy Campus is not a landfill, all the material that comes into the campus will leave it either as recycled material. So this is the packaging or otherwise it's getting recycled. Renewable.